Franklin County County Commission is now in session for our regular meeting here Tuesday, March 21st, 2023. It's good to see you all here this morning. We have a lot of business to take care of today, so we're going to get started. True Wood, let's stand for invocation and pleasure of allegiance. Father, we thank you today for this good day you've given to each and every one of us. We thank you today for understanding. We thank you today for the ability to hear, Lord, and also the ability to make decisions and to compromise. Father, be with us in everything we do today, every discussion that's had. Lord, help us to seek peace and pursue it. We thank you for everything that you mean to us and all that these citizens and the residents mean to this county, along with this commission. We live together, not apart. Thank you, Lord, in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. So first action items this morning is approval of the county bills and approval of the minutes.
If some move, Mr. Chairman.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Sanders. We have a second by Commissioner Anderson. Any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? That's unanimous. All right. Next, we have awards and recognitions today. Clark Maxwell.
Good morning. Michelle Maxwell, Clerk of Court. I am here today to get the support and the approval of the proclamation that I'm about to enter. Government Finance Professionals Week, March 20th through 24th, 2023. Whereas the Florida Government Finance Officers Association is a professional association founded in 1937 and serves more than 3,300 professionals from state, county, and city governments, school districts, colleges, and universities, special districts, and private firms. And whereas the FGFOA is dedicated to being your professional resource by providing opportunities through education, networking, leadership, and information. And whereas this Government Finance Professionals Week, sponsored by the FGFOA and all of its member government organizations, is a week-long series of activities aimed at recognizing government finance professionals and the vital services that they provide for our state and our community. Whereas during this week, government finance professionals throughout the state of Florida will be acknowledged for their hard work, dedication, and leadership. Now therefore, I'm Michelle Maxwell, Franklin County Clerk of Court, on behalf of Commissioner Jones, Commissioner Amison, Commissioner Loughley, Commissioner Sanders, and Commissioner Ward, do hereby proclaim, March 20th through 24th, 2023, as Government Finance Professionals Week in the County of Franklin, and extend our appreciation to all government finance professionals throughout the state and here in Franklin County for all of their hard work, dedication, and leadership, dated this 21st day of March 2023. And, oh yeah, I'm sorry. Well, at this time, I just wanted to recognize my office, too.
Do we need to accept this proclamation by vote?
Motion to vote.
Motion to vote, okay. Pleasure of the board.
Second.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Loughley, a second by Commissioner Ward. Any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? That's unanimous. Please proceed.
I just wanted to recognize my office, if you wouldn't mind standing. I've got Linda Phillips, she's my finance director. Amber Stegory, she does payroll. Deborah Moses-Pence, she handles billing. And Danny Gay is my assistant finance director. I just can't thank you guys enough for all of your hard work, your dedication, not only to my office but to Franklin County. It does not go unnoticed, and I appreciate you very much. This is the backbone of Franklin County.
Is there anyone else to be recognized? I'm sure there are. Go ahead, sir. Come forward, please.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Morning.
On behalf of the Sheriff's Office, we have a plaque we'd like to present to Ginger. She's the number one person you don't want to upset at the office because she controls your paycheck. So we want to present this to you, Ginger, for all your hard work.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Good morning. Supervisor Elections Office, Heather Riley. This is our finance director, Jennifer Duncan. Finance is only one of the hats that she wears. She's also our candidate person, our Form 6 person. She wears many, many hats, and I'm so grateful and so thankful that she keeps us all in line and keeps our office running smoothly.
Good morning, Commissioners. Rhonda Skipper, property appraiser. This is my finance director, Megan Dempsey-Shauber. She's been with me since 2015, and she's also my TPP specialist. And out of 39 applications for this position, when I hired her, I definitely hired the best one. She is definitely what keeps us going. As all of the elected officials will agree, the staff makes us look good. Thank you, Megan.
Is there anyone else in the room that are constitutional, is there? I think that's it, isn't it?
I see Rick.
All right. Okay. So now it's our turn, right?
It sure is.
For Ms. Erin Griffin. Well, I was just going to say, just as Ms. Skipper said, staff makes you look good. If we can put any good foot forward here in Franklin County, it's usually coming through the desk, the mind, and the fingertips of Ms. Erin Griffin. We have a lot going on, sometimes more than people realize, because until we actually get something to happen, there's a lot of work that goes into getting to that point. Ms. Griffin has been instrumental in helping us. She's served in the clerk's office for many, many years. We're happy to have her on this side. I assure you. All right. Anyone else, sir? That's it, right?
That's it. But, Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry. I apologize. I think I missed the approval of the agenda section. I'm so sorry. So I was out the room. I'm getting an argument for someone. Couple of changes that I do have, and, you know, again, we can move on. One is on my report, HHRP. To let you guys know, the program is over. It's informational only, no action items, so nothing there. The next, we have Ms. Jennifer Daniels, our EOC director. We've been hearing a scary story of the seaweed is coming to kill Florida. She would like to give you an update on that. And I'd one more thing, and I'd like to change the timing on something on the agenda since we have, is Ginger still here? Yes, she is. Since we have Ginger here, there's two grants for the Sheriff's Department. In case you guys have any questions, I'd like you to take advantage of Ginger being here from this morning.
Before public comments, or after?
No, we could do that after public comments. And, you know, we'll go from there. Actually, I could get to Ginger right after I do Howard, because both of them are items on my report, and then we could go to Jennifer, if that works for the board.
Okay, sounds good to me. I will say that I did ask Ms. Daniels to make sure and come and present that to the board. Not so much that I'm afraid that it's going to affect us. I just want the public to know that our EOC offices are already working on what we would do if it does come our way. So that's, I asked her to do that. So is the board okay with these additions to the agenda or these late add-on items?
I'm good with it. Make a motion to approve the new items.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Ward, a second by Commissioner Amison. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. All oppose? That's unanimous. All right. So next is public comments, and I'm just taking these up in order. I have them laying here.
And, Mr. Chairman, before you start, I explained to the crowd before, the audience, before the meeting started, that if they're here for the public hearing itself, they do not need a speaker card, and they don't have to speak at public comments. Public comments is to speak mostly about stuff that's not on the agenda, for the most part. Or something is just an informational item where no action will be taken, but they want to speak on it, that this is their opportunity to do that. And with that, I'll turn it back to you, sir.
Okay. So the first one I have here is Mr. Rudy Meehan for public comment.
Good morning, Commissioners. Pleasure to see you all. Beautiful day at Alligator Point. Putting on my fire department hat first. I'm part of the volunteer fire department out there. We did start breaking ground for the new fire department building. You're all invited. We're going to have a little groundbreaking ceremony on April 8th at 1:30, if that's possible. That's Easter weekend on Saturday. And would look forward to seeing you out there. We're very excited to have it. The old building looks worse by day as pieces keep falling off of it. On another note, the boat ramps in the area are in pretty pitiful shape. If you all hadn't been out there, it's difficult to launch a boat. And really, from a safety perspective, somebody's going to get injured if somebody jumps out of their boat to maneuver something. The one at the third beach access is just broken cement, basically. At the marina, it's not that special either. But if you all are boaters and have tried to launch boats, if you do take a look at those while you're out there on April 8th, that would be fabulous, because they really are in terrible condition. We do have a nice crowd today from Alligator Point covering some other issues that are coming up. But again, appreciated. You all have a great one. Come see us April 8th.
Thank you, Rudy.
Ms. Nandaming.
Good morning, Commissioners. Nandaming, full-time resident at Alligator Point. I have two items today. First, I want to say a huge thank you to A.J. Smith and his department for keeping parking and speeding under control these last few weeks. We have seen a huge difference, and we really, really appreciate our sheriff's office and the officers that come out. The second item that I have, it's a huge concern for me as a parent and soon-to-be grandmother. The crosswalks can, somehow, we can look at our crosswalks for all three beach accesses on the point. The white markings are fading, and as Rudy and I saw personally this last week, there is a lot of confusion from both the car drivers and the visitors on where to cross safely on Alligator Drive to get to the beach. One suggestion, maybe re-stripe the crosswalks to make them easier to see for both the car drivers and our visitors to help them know where they should cross. So I think it's just a huge concern. Safety, safety concern. Again, we thank you for your dedication and your time. Thank you so much. Have a great day.
And I have, I do have several here that have item 18 on the agenda. So I'm unsure, and I'll ask, do you want to speak in public comments, or do you want to wait and speak when we get to that item on the agenda? There are several that are that way. Mr. Danny Long, are you wishing to speak now, or are you wanting to speak when that comes up on the agenda?
Well, it was my understanding that what I want to speak specifically to, that I had to do it under the item 18.
Well, so-
But it's basically a comment.
Well, hold on just a second. All I'm trying to clarify, sir, is, so usually, if you want to speak in public comments, they say that that's what they want to do. Usually, if you identify an item on the agenda, you're wanting to speak when that item comes up on the agenda. But I value your time. We're going to be here a long time today. So either way, is good with me. I just want to clarify before we force you into one.
And I prefer the public comment.
Okay, cool. That's all I'm trying to clarify.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Yes, sir.
My name's Danny Long. I live at 1443 Bayfront, Alligator Point. Alligator Point has become what I would consider a residential area. It's a destination-type community now, and what I want to address specifically is the speed limit. I think most residential areas, their speed limit in them are 25 miles an hour. I would like to see a 25 mile an hour speed limit on Alligator Point, not only from the safety, but just as the comment was just made about the crosswalks. We have cars doing 35 miles an hour, which is a low speed. Most of the cars coming down there, particularly some of these trucks and stuff, are driving 50 miles an hour. And when it comes to these crosswalks, they don't walk all the way down the right-of-way to get to the crosswalk. They walk down the middle of the road to go on to the beach. So my specific comment is that I'd like to see 25 mile an hour speed limit on our residential section in Alligator Point. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And Edwin Lott, again, same question. It could be now or later.
Hi. Thank you for letting me speak today. So my name's Edwin Lott. I'm a resident of Alligator Point since 2000, and I'm here today to voice my support for a golf cart ordinance for Alligator Point. I'm requesting a hearing to be, to obtain public input for the safe operation of golf carts in our community through the creation of an Alligator Point golf cart ordinance. I appreciate your consideration on that request. There's a lot of us that, for many years, have used our golf carts, and we don't want to be at odds with the county's ordinances and put the sheriff in a bad position to where he's having to issue tickets to people who don't want to get tickets but would like to have the opportunity to drive their golf carts, like several of the golf carts that we saw along the road as we were driving in today here in town. You know, it's a, it's a great, it's a great asset to be able to have that, to get to the beach at our public access areas where we no longer can easily drive down there and park because we have so many people coming to Alligator Point, to those public parking areas to get to those access points, that what we're seeing is, is a lot of traffic at 35 miles an hour. I agree with what Danny has said. It's worth considering dropping that to 25 across a longer stretch of the road, and you'll see that there's already signage that has the speed limit at 25 miles an hour that goes all the way back to where the construction of the new road is. And along the, when I'm speaking of the new road, I'd like to thank you all for a fantastic road and all the support that you all gave us so that we can have that now. We're not worried about storms and whatnot. But again, back to the golf cart ordinance request, we'd like to be able to have a way to drive our families down to the beach, drop off all of our stuff to be able to get through those public access points, because a lot of us don't have the beach access that have lived here for years. So again, I appreciate your support. And Mr. Schuler, it's nice to put a face and name and all that. I'm the guy that's been emailing you requesting, you know, reports and stuff like that, and I appreciate your support, too. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lott. Frederick Hagan.
Thank you, guys. I appreciate you.
Yes, sir.
But I'm Frederick Hagan. I've lived, had a house at Alligator Point since 1985. I think that we very seriously need to have a golf cart ordinance that would reduce the traffic. Since the enforcement of the golf cart no drive, the traffic has got tremendously terrible because of the kids driving their parents' cars and trucks around on the point. And it would be very nice if we had the ordinance that we could drive our carts again. Thank you.
Thank you. Sutton Webb. It might be. We'll have to wait for Mr. Maron to come back, because I couldn't access that. I think the next one is someone that's online.
Yeah, I would end up cutting them off or handing them out, so I will touch it.
Mr. Maron, I think the last one is somebody that's attended by Zoom.
Okay, Ms. Sutton, as she is there, I will, Ms. Sutton, if she's unmuted, Mr. Chairman.
Can you hear me?
Yep. Yes.
My name is Sutton Webb. I live at 50, 60, 5. I would also like to support lowering the speed limit to 25 miles per hour on Alligator Drive. In addition to the golf cart ordinance, I agree with the other gentleman that spoke, that it'll reduce- that it'll reduce, I think it'll reduce traffic, vehicular traffic on the roads, allowing golf carts. I think golf carts are safe because they don't go as fast. They're, they're smaller. I think it just lowers the impact of vehicular traffic on Alligator Drive, adding to, you know, pedestrian safety. And I agree with Mr. Lott. We don't have beach access, and it's nice to use golf carts to park at the beach access points. They take up less room than parking, and I just, just want to voice my, my, you know, concern that, you know, we got a lot of kids down there, and I think that, you know, pulling some of them off out of parents' cars, of course, 16 and older, but pulling them, pulling the cars off the road and putting golf carts on the road, I think it's just a little bit better. I just want to voice my support for both lowering the speed limit to 25 and pushing for the golf cart ordinance for Alligator Point.
Thank you, sir.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman. I had someone that submitted a speaker card, two minutes to nine, so that before time. I think we're going to address that, too, when we come to our meeting procedures and stuff. But let me bring, let me, Ms. Sutton, I'm going to, let's do this and bring up that-
Is it somebody online?
Yes, it's somebody online. I apologize, sir. And there we go. I think it's Ms. Debbie Jordan. Ms. Jordan, if you were on mute, okay, she's unmuted, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you so much. Good morning, everybody. This is Debbie Jordan in Lanark Village. I'm coming to you this morning with some gratitude, hope, and concern. The gratitude is for how quickly Howard Neighbors got his crews out here to Lanark Village to take care of some trimming of some precariously hanging limbs and dead trees within the village which needed attention. Thank you so much, Mr. Neighbors. The hope is for parks and rest that you heard and will strongly work to possibly assist us in getting a porta potty at Sewell Park. Yes, I brought it up, but there is no public restroom in Lanark Village, and we really do need one. So my next is concern to have the county revisit the S-4 district and so-called nuisance ordinances for Lanark Village. If you haven't read them or are not familiar with them, it really is time. It's time to let people speak out in favor or against the archaic and equated restrictions affecting our quality of life here. We really need some help from you county commissioners. We really do to revisit these ordinances. There's issues with right-of-way parking and that, where cars can't get towed, and now the Lanark Village Association Board member has put in the paper to remind everybody that you can't park on the county right-of-way, but they will rent you a space, and that concerns me because that really rings a solicitation for my interpretation of it. So that's important to me that, that that gets looked at. The privacy fences, we should not be restricted to having 50% permeable light. Nobody else in the county has that. And one last note is that there is a bit of a conundrum. It's important that our EMS and first responders can get in and out of some of these units, these center units where they've got sidewalks on both sides and houses, units on both sides. It's tight, man, and those gurneys could have a heck of a time, which could cost a life if it takes them too long to get that gurney out of that unit. So maybe we need, maybe we need more attention from the county on the sidewalk area there. I don't know. I just would like you to look into it, take a walk through, and see what we can do to make it work more efficiently. That's all I got, because I know you've got a busy day. Thank you so much, Commissioners. I appreciate all you do.
Thank you, Ms. Jordan. All right, I believe that does it for public comments. Mr. Maron, do you want to go ahead and, is Ms. Daniels on the line?
Well, yes, let's go to Ms. Daniels first, and then we'll go to Howard and Ginger.
Good morning, Commissioners. It was brought to my attention by Chairman Jones that there's a possibility of some seaweed coming into Franklin County. We wanted to be proactive, and so we went ahead and checked with NOAA. Right now, NOAA states that resources indicate that the threat is primarily to the Yucatan Peninsula of Mexico and the Florida Keys. Since the blooms drift on ocean currents, it seems unlikely that they would inundate Florida Big Bend and Panhandle beaches as the eastern Gulf of Mexico Loop current would likely steer them back south before they would drift this far north. So right now, we, we should be in the good, but we will most definitely be monitoring this regularly.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Jenny. I appreciate that. I had several residents in my district asking about it. That's why I called you, because I thought it was like the seaweed. But when I started looking into it, they said this island of floating seaweed is about 5,000 miles wide.
It is.
Yeah, that's a little bit of seaweed. So-
Yes.
There was respiratory issues and other things. There are sightings of going to be problems wherever it lands, so.
Yes, sir. When it does get on the beaches and starts to decompose, that's where the issues, that's where, when they start happening.
Right. Well, thank you for that update. I just wanted the residents of the counties to know that we are monitoring it at least and are coming up with a plan should we have to deal with it instead of trying to react or trying to be proactive. That's the only reason I brought it to you.
Absolutely. Yes, sir.
You want to have any questions from Ms. Daniels?
Any red tide with it?
Is there any red tide, Jenny?
Not that I'm being told about at this time. No, sir.
Yeah, there was a little bit of red tide in Gulf County, Jenny, last week, FWC-
But not, but not with this specific-
No, I would say it was a separate, two separate, yes, a separate report we get from FWC, yes.
Yes.
But not enough of concern. It's just a slight, slight amount of red tide they saw.
Yes.
All right, thank you, Ms. Jenny. We appreciate it.
My pleasure. Thank you.
Miss, ma'am. All right, sir, please proceed.
Okay, if you would turn to page 10 of my report, item number one, and I have Howard there sitting, waiting. So the previous meeting, Commissioners, the board directed me to meet with Howard and with Aaron to discuss options that would address the need for additional labor to assist the road department with ditch maintenance and other related projects during the summer months. During our conversation, Mr. Neighbors proposed that the current road department staff is allowed to work overtime during the summer months, on Fridays with inmate assistance and on Saturdays without, to perform the needed additional maintenance on the county ditches and the other locations that comes up during the summer. I support Mr. Neighbors' recommendation, Commissioners, as the process to advertise for, create an appealing pay scale, and supervise a temporary workforce could turn out to be more trouble than it's worth. Mr. Neighbors is here this morning to answer any questions regarding this proposal.
Mr. Chairman, I was going to say, you know, back, I don't know how long ago this was, but I was, you know, we've been having issues with getting inmates, and it was posing an issue for our road department to get staff to adequately maintain the ditches and the mowing of the grass. So, you know, I think we all obviously agreed to make sure that Mr. Howard Neighbors could get some more additional staffing, and I think that if the overtime pay is going to be less or equal to the amount of money that we would have to pay this, this, whatever you call it, the temporary workforce, in addition to Mr. Howard's probably going to have to train them on how to do it the right way or how it's used to being done, I mean, I'm okay with that, as long as everybody else is okay with that.
I'm good with that. I do believe that, number one, we do have an issue, so we are trying to address the issue. And I think instead of retraining staff or retraining a workforce to help us and knowing it's only going to be a temporary thing, so you'd be trying to hire somebody to work for four or five months, and then that'd be the end of their job. I think you're running into problems with that. But I think if you do it with county staff, it's, it's going to be, it's going to flow more smoothly. I just, you know, it's, it's something that needs to be kept up with, and I think this is the quickest way to do it with the least impact on, on our budgets.
Do we need to vote on this?
Yes, we'd like a motion to-
Or if anybody's in questions for Mr. Neighbors, he is live with us on Zoom now.
Good morning, Commissioners. How y'all doing?
Doing good.
Yeah, I talked to Michael in there about that, and the dude, he tried to keep up some, we'd have to hire four or five people. And then on top of that, we would have to have a couple more vehicles. So it would kind of be, and probably get more weed eaters and different stuff like that, too. So I think that would be the cheapest way to try to do that. We could try it, you know, so. I have talked to the prison about Fridays and stuff, and they said that, you know, that, you know, we'd be getting inmates like we are now, but, and it is picking up a little bit. We had 10 inmates this morning, so.
Good.
That's good. Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Howard, you got staff that would be willing to work the weekends?
Yes, ma'am. I talked to the crew, and they said that they would, they would, they would work, so.
Okay.
And it wouldn't be, you know, if we worked the weekends, it would be grass cutting on it and weed eating, you know, round signs, cupboards, and different stuff like that.
Keep in mind, they have that, I'm going to embarrass myself, that used piece of equipment that they have that will help them also with the maintenance. I can't remember what it's called. It just escaped me, but yes.
Ditch digger.
It's a ditch digger? That's all it is? See? I knew I would embarrass myself, but yes.
A ditch digger.
I don't think that's what we first do with that, but anyway, yeah.
I'm taping with you now, ma'am.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, is there a cap on how much overtime these individuals can get?
Howard does currently have $14,000 budgeted this year for overtime.
For overtime? Okay. Yeah, me personally, I, I think that this is just going to work better because you don't have to retrain, and you said you'd have to get additional vehicles for this temporary workforce, that that's going to cost money. I think in the long run, this will save us money, if not even out the same. So I'm going to make a motion to approve this, because we need to get it done. We can't, we can't go another year and getting one inmate here, zero inmates here, and causing Mr. Howard to get behind or his crew to get behind and having them more work on their hands, so.
I second. Commissioner Ward with the motion.
All right, so we have a motion to approve the authorization of road department during the summertime to work on Fridays and our Saturdays where it's needed to address our grass cutting issues and other issues. And that's a motion made by Commissioner Ward and seconded by Commissioner Sanders. Any discussion before we vote?
I've got, if you'll remember, DeWitt Polis was in here the other day about the mosquitoes. The thing about it is with DeWitt's has a problem because he only has like two employees.
Yeah.
And so, you know, I was, I was talking about the main ditch in Caravelle, that if that thing doesn't get anything, any kind of maintenance or anything, and the city of Caravelle does not have the equipment to do that, but if you don't, if you don't maintain that, that main ditch in Caravelle, it's going to back up all the way through Caravelle, all the, through the city port. So that's the reason why I did a second on that, because it's needed. The mosquitoes, it will get ahead on the mosquitoes, maybe they won't be so bad, so hopefully.
Any other discussion? All in favor? All opposed? That's unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, I got something real quick from Mr. Howard before he goes, and I don't want to make the board aware as well. I wasn't aware that Robertson Roberts is in our area mobilized, and speaking of the striping issues that came up with the public comment portion of the meeting, they're going to be mobilizing the county for a good little bit. So I've reached out to Andy Bailey of Robertson Roberts, and I've got some roads in my district that I'm going to try to get with him, and we're going to ride around and see, because I've wanted certain roads resurfaced, but then they striped them. So I'm like, there was some confusion. So obviously, if you guys want to reach out, Mr. Bailey, I just want to let y'all know he is here. They are in, in the area mobilized. If y'all have any areas in your district that you want them to look at for striping and/or resurfacing, so.
I know the Alligator Point, I brought that up at the last meeting about the fog and how bad it was. They couldn't see the road, so we'll be taking that up for consideration.
Anything else before we move on? Mr. Howard, thank you for being here with us this morning. We appreciate it.
Yes, sir. Thank y'all, Commissioner.
All right, Commissioners, if we go to item three on my report, bottom of that same page, the sheriff's office is asking for board approval and a chairman's signature on two grants. The first is a $37,194 JAG grant for drug, for the drug investigation officer. There's no required county match. The other, also a JAG grant. That one is for $2,278, and that's for traffic enforcement. These are normal JAG grants that we approve often. I don't know if they're annually or not. Ginger could answer that, but, you know, I bring it to you guys for your approval and your, and the chairman's signature.
No, pleasure the board.
That may.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Sanders.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Ward. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That's unanimous.
That's it for me, sir. Thank you.
And that takes care of the add-ons, correct?
Yes.
Yep. Informational, okay. All right. Ms. Kim Bowden, you're here with us this morning. Good to see you.
Hey, Kim, you're muted? Oh, there you go.
There we go. Good morning, Commissioners. I'm happy to be here this morning. I have before you a couple of items. Michael asked me to report out on the consolidation realignment process that many of you have been involved with. I want to thank all of you for supporting Career Source Golf Coast during that lengthy process, and especially Chairman Jones and Commissioner Ward, who spoke out on our behalf on some calls that were hosted by Ernst &amp; Young through Career Source Florida and also at the delegation meeting. I think that, you know, we went into the process not really knowing if speaking out would, would help us, because we kind of felt like maybe there was a plan already in place. But I believe that because of the strong support that we received across Northwest Florida for all of the workforce boards, none of our Northwest Florida boards were consolidated or realigned in any way. And so I do believe that speaking up and talking about the work we do and that we have strong relationships, not only in our community, but with our elected officials, helped us. And so we were very happy to get through that process without having to consolidate into very large regions. We were working as a team between the directors in Northwest Florida, should that happen, and we were making plans for it, but we knew that we could make it work, but it was going to be a lot, a lot of work, and, and it was going to be very difficult. So I, I just want, I can't tell you enough how, how appreciative I am for your support of us during that process. And that, so the board, the state board voted to, on a realignment and consolidation, the areas that were consolidated were over in, let's see, it was Region 7, which is, I want to say that's Madison Perry area, if that, if my, if it doesn't escape me, and then Alachua Bradford, which is known for Gainesville. So Lake City is in, in Region 7. That's Dixie, Columbia, Gilchrist and Union Counties, and they got combined with Alachua and Bradford Counties. I know that, that the Dixie County Gilchrist and Union, they're opposed to this action, but, but the state board voted to do that anyway. And then Region 14, Hillsborough County, and Region 15, which was Pinellas County, which is sort of where a lot of trouble started about five years ago, and I think helped to get us on the path that we were on for consolidation. Those two areas were consolidated. Region Pinellas is fighting that position. I'm not sure how that will, how that will go for them. And then Regions 6 was consolidated. One, one, they lost one of their regions, which was Jefferson County, and it was going to go over to the Capital Region. Jefferson County is actively opposing that. They don't want to go into the Capital Region. They feel like because they're a smaller county and that they're doing a lot of work with their workforce board, that that work will be lost. And so they continue to meet with state officials. One of their commissioners actually spoke, showed up and spoke at the state board meeting where the vote was held. And so we're, we're watching that to see, see how that goes for them. And then in Region 23, which is the Miami region, Miami Day, they have Monroe County, and Monroe County has been very unhappy in that region. They have been very vocal about that, and so they moved Monroe County into the Southwest Florida region, which is Region 24. It's difficult because that's the Keys, and so for that new workforce board director, it's a five and a half hour drive for her to get from her region down to Monroe County. So, but I believe that they're going to stay put. I believe they will stay in that region. So those were the changes that occurred. Along the Space Coast, Flagler-Villusia, which is Daytona Beach, was merged with Rivas County, which is, you know, the Cape Canaveral area. And so there were actually six regions that were affected by a complete consolidation- And so there were actually six regions that were affected by a complete consolidation, and then the two that had a realignment where one of their counties was moved into another region. And so that, that action was taken at the state board meeting, February twenty-third, and it will go for the governor for approval in June, and a request will be sent to USDOL or, or a notification letting them know that this is Florida's intent to realign those boards to, to back up that action. And so they are working actively already and helping those boards, giving them next steps with their local elected officials about how this moves forward as they wait for the governor to sign off on it. And I'll, I'll take any questions about the process or, or this final outcome. I know that several of you sat in on calls with Ernst &amp; Young. I myself probably sat in on fifteen different calls, and really largely across the state of Florida, they heard from over seven hundred people, and there was almost unanimous opposition to the consolidation of workforce boards.
So, thank you for that presentation, Ms. Kim. So the result of what they're looking at was they went from twenty-four regions to twenty-one.
Yes, sir. So we didn't know, I mean, we'd heard all kinds of things, and there were three, there were three options listed in the Board Agenda Packet. One of them was twenty-one, one of them was nineteen regions, and one was sixteen regions. And in the makeup that I believe had the sixteen regions, they would have consolidated Bay and Gulf with Okaloosa-Walton, and Franklin County would have been put over into Region Number Three. He has five counties now, so that would have, you would have been in a six-county area with Washington, Liberty, Calhoun, Jackson, and Holmes. So we were very pleased that we were able just to maintain what we have. We think that the way that we're structured right now, we have a good working history, and so we were, we were very pleased that we did not get torn apart splitting the region.
Anyone have any questions for Ms. Kim? Ms. Kim, thank you for the update today, we really appreciate it.
Yes, and I'll keep you apprised as the governor signs or does anything different with the proposal from the state board.
All right, thank you so much.
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry, point of order, do we, do we need, so here there's a motion, action, do we need to tell?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, she's doing two things, one was the update, the other is to get the board to approve the subsequent local area designation for local workforce development boards. That's an action item.
I also move to approve that.
Sorry, I didn't really see that in the wording. So a motion to approve this local area designation request by Commissioner Ward, seconded by Commissioner Sanders, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That's unanimous. Anything else, Commissioners? Thank you, Ms. Kim. All right, up next, Mr. Jim Ward for Consolidated Communications.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman.
Good morning.
Just wanna give a short presentation on upcoming program here. Can you share?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Can everyone see my screen?
Not yet, sir.
Not yet, okay. Okay, is that, can everyone see that one?
No, sir.
Not yet.
Now we're doing good.
Okay, there we go, okay. All right, just wanna take in a sort of an update that we had last January the seventeenth. I gave a short overview of what Consolidated is in Franklin County, and we have going forward a new program I'd like to highlight. But I'll go through the other presentations. We, we are seeking a private-public partnership, which is very important to this upcoming program. We also are, I'll explain in more detail what the, what the program is, but it's an absolute great opportunity. Right now, there's two hundred and forty-seven point seven million dollars available to underprivileged and economically challenged, challenged communities. Just another update, this is no difference, different than what I had before. This is what we've done in, in Pennsylvania, I mean, excuse me, I'm in Pennsylvania, I'm talking about Florida right now. What we've done in Florida, not specific to Franklin County. However, we have met with the LTPT, gave an update, showed them our, our maps, our fiber maps. Every feedback I got, they didn't realize that we had so much fiber deployed already. Also, we also gave them costing for exchanges in, or areas in Franklin County for build-outs. So we looked at overlay costs, we provided that at, for, for Franklin County. At no cost, and these are expensive to do, and we did in a short period of time. Let me get back here. Okay, I'll just go over the program right now, it's the Capital Projects Fund, Broadband Infrastructure Program. This is in addition to the NTIA program that was done two years ago when I worked for a consulting firm, and we did it for, we did a, the application for Windstream at the time. We made eleven applications and won three of them. Over two hundred were, were submitted, and only eleven were granted, and Windstream got three of them. So we have a background, I have a background in how to get these things done. Also know people within the, in the organizations.
Mr. Jim.
Yes.
Excuse me, are you showing slides right now, because all we're seeing is a solid, like a...
You're not seeing my slide?
No, we're seeing backgrounds, sir, Consolidated Communications.
Oh, you're not seeing the slide, well, let me...
Sorry about that.
Showing a shared, oh, no wonder, that's not helping me. Okay, there we go.
Okay.
All right, sorry about that, let me go back and show the other slides I had, this was the original one. It's the data today, these are the background of the company that we've discussed before. And I'll just go over the Capital Projects Fund, Broadband Infrastructure Fund, it is a federal program, and monies were given to the state to do the program. It's administered by the Florida Broadband Office. NOFO was, was provided, was sent out the twenty-eighth of February, we've been working on it since then. We've looked at two counties in Florida, one Gulf County, one in Franklin County. The reason why we chose Franklin County is because we've done a lot of work with the LTPT, presented before in, on the, in this forum, and we have people that live in Franklin County and have been there. So we're looking at opportunities to, to build out. This was a great program, and it has no limit to the amount of applications, the dollar amount, so we can put out whatever, we can apply for, how much is, I mean, how much is necessary, how much we can build out. We can have multiple submissions if we so choose to. We have the underserved and served as defined as one hundred to twenty or less, so there's a high bar with that. We meet that because we only do fiber, and we only provide gig service once we overbuild. Like I said, the public-private partnerships are highly encouraged. Now, the most important thing here is you have to demonstrate that work has been done back and forth with the county, and we can do that. We, we're looking forward to really developing with the county and moving things forward. The goal of, of eliminating the digital divide is something we've, we've taken internally wherever we are. Franklin County is, is very desirable to, to us, as I spoke with the chairman last time. I had worked on the fifth chorus county, he said, and I was told that Franklin County is the sixth fourth. So I get two times in my life to do it right, and I'll, I'll take that opportunity. We have to demonstrate county, community involvement, and we will, we will do that. Demonstrate sustainability and technology, future-proofing, and that's what fiber is. Once you put fiber in, the only thing you need to do is upgrade the, the electronics with it, which is a small hurdle to jump. Obviously, when something goes wrong or when fiber is cut, we'll have to repair it. But other than that, we're future-proofed. Participating in the Affordable Connectivity Program, which we do, and we promoted, we provided pamphlets to the LTPT to hand out in community events. If they need more, be more than happy to provide those to them. Provide a low-cost option, which we do, and the applications are due April fourteenth, twenty-twenty-three. And I appreciate Mr. Moran for getting me on the, this agenda because this is the last opportunity to, to present before the county prior to the application. And as far as the application, we will do all the work. The only thing we would need is data from the LTPT or in, or any information that we might need. I can't think of any right now, but that's what we're looking for. Are there any questions specific to that program?
No, but I'm, I'm hoping some questions are answered with the rest of your presentation.
Okay, good, sure. This is a slide, it's the same as what I did before. You know, we, we've been the highlight for Franklin, Franklin County for decades, and we're a part of the community. We employ full-time, forty-three people within, in the state, they, they service each other. And keep in mind, we only provide gig service, one gig service, nothing less. And there are options, you don't need to take the gig service, but there are options based upon speed. Our minimum is a hundred hundred, and there's two, one other option prior to that. We only have problems with supply chain issues, that has been a big concern with other, other companies in the past. We have, we have two board members on our consolidating board that have connections with another, another company where we can have all the fiber we need. That has never been a problem. And we have, we have developed and worked with public-private partnerships in other states. So we have a, a strong, solid track record of how to do these things. And that's my contact information. So that's the end of my presentation, if you have any specific questions, I'm more than happy to take those today.
Mr. Ward, I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
Yes, I did talk with you a couple of weeks ago about this, and we talked about things that are way more specific than what we're looking at today. I, I don't think the county is adversarial to partner with anybody, we realize we're not gonna be able to do this by ourselves. But we talked specifically about three metrics that have been the forefront of what our LTPT has brought to us, and that is, it needs to be available, reliable, and affordable. So there's been no mention here this morning of what percentage of the county your, the plan for your company would cover. There's, there's been no mention of if we're able to secure funds, and it's gonna mean that a, the, what kind of speeds are gonna be available for every home, and what's gonna be the affordability factor. None of that's mentioned, I, I'm, I'm good, and I'm not opposed to supporting and having a partnership with someone, but we have to have a lot more upfront knowledge to know what we're supporting. And, you know, so, because there's a lot going on right now, and honestly, it's not your fault, it's not our fault. At DEO and with the state, they're constantly changing the language, and we have to stay up to that. And you did reference talking to the, our local technology planning team, but so far, this commission has not gotten an endorsement from that team for us to move forward and partner with Consolidated. I just wanna make sure you're aware of that.
Sure, yeah, I completely understand that, yes.
Because we're, when we're looking at a presentation, that's good, but usually if we enter into some kind of public-private partnership, there's paperwork to look at, there's something written down, something that's, can be referred to and say, well, this is what we said we would do, and this is what you said you would do. Doesn't necessarily have to be a legally binding contract, but there's nothing written down here this morning.
Right, I understand that. As I said, this program opened up on the twenty-eighth of February. We're putting together areas that we think makes sense to us and would provide the most coverage to the county. As I said before, we've worked before with LPTT on, the, your LPTT on the Rural Infrastructure Program, which is, they're trying to get a grant for three hundred million, three hundred thousand dollars to do the planning for it. We provided our maps to fill them to see, we provided the costing for all of our areas prior to this. We haven't chosen those, those areas for this program because, like I said, we've, we only, this thing only opened up this, the, the twenty-eighth of February. So we're working within our, our engineering group and our facilities group to put those areas together. And as far as where they are, I don't know yet, but this is a question I have for the county. If we put one together and it covers, I say, five hundred locations at no cost to the county, what harm is there?
There's no harm, there's no harm whatsoever. However, we still, if we're looking at it from our side, if we as a commissioner are trying to tell residents we're partnering with Consolidated, which is one of the biggest providers in the county, it's the only real ISP in the county, and we tell them the outcome of this partnership is five hundred connections, so I don't think it's gonna cover very well.
I understand that, and like I said, I use the generic number with that. But with any program we have, and there's, there are two within the state right now, there'll be another one, the B program, that will come later on this year. Each one of these programs we would use and be, take the advantage of the county to build out in, in different areas. We can't cover everything with one, and that's our plan. You know, we looked at the original Broadband Opportunity Program, the LTP, LT, Franklin County, LTPT had not been established yet, there's a second round going around, there are four hundred million dollars was available, they gave out a hundred and forty-four million, which allows more money out there. They confirmed there'd be a second round, we would look at that going forward. And as I spoke to the LPT, this is incremental, it can't be done in one big step, it just can't. It's sort of impossible for us to think that you would, that they would fund, the Broadband Office would fund a hundred percent of all of, all of Franklin County is a big step. And I've spoken back and forth with Franklin County about, I mean, excuse me, about the Broadband Office, good connections in there, and I got a sense of what they're looking for. They're not looking for anything gigantic because they have to dole this money out to many different places within, within the city, within the state. We just have to be judicious in how we do this, and I don't want to put a big application out there and have them reject it because we're asking for fifty, fifty or sixty million dollars. So we have to think, sort of have to think through this incrementally.
Yes, sir, I understand, the other side of that is, I do think it would be helpful for us, and I understand there's a time crunch, that just is what it is, there's nothing we can do to control that. However, if we have to call a special meeting to be able to do something to help a deadline, then we can do that, we have that opportunity, we just have to notice it forty-eight hours in advance, that's not an issue. But we do need to know is if we're, and I just think it's part of being open and transparent about it. If this is gonna help ten percent of the population of the county, then so be it, but we need to know that going into it, in my mind, and I'm just one of five, before we can start saying we support what you're doing, because we don't even know what you're doing. I mean, did I miss something, I mean, that's, I'm not trying to be difficult.
Oh, no.
But you, you, in other words, so far, there's not been a delineation of how many residents this is actually gonna help, how many businesses, and again, they change the language constantly. So now the language from DEO is not just underserved or, you know, that, it also has language of a minimum of a hundred up and a hundred down. So they change that language, not us.
Sure, yeah, I get that, and...
You know, we gotta, we have to know as a commission it's going to address all those issues, so that, that's all I'm saying.
Sure, well, the hundred hundred, that's covered, because we only do gig service, that's fiber. We, we're, but we'll also provide different options on speeds, and they have the different, different costs associated with them. But we can provide to the locations that serve a hundred hundred. But we can provide to the locations that are served 100/100. And to your point, how many are located, how many will be served? I mean, how many will we pass? Well, that depends on how many we can find to be served and unserved. There are three different sets of maps that we have to look at. We have to look at the new BE map that came out, or the fiber map. We have to look at the state map, there are faster fiber. We may have to look at our maps internally. So we find it ourselves in a difficult situation, that we have to sort of put three maps together, determine if we're served and unserved. I can't run this down, areas that are already served. I can run it by areas that are already served, but not overbuilt to underserved areas, and then we can put splitters on and go down the areas that are shown to be served, that we can provide on our own dime. So we use this as a path. We'd also go to the served and unserved. And we'd be judicious to cover as many opportunities as we could. I mean, we're in the business to be a business, and if we don't make money, we're just not going to be, we're not going to go forward as much as we can. So we look at this thing in the engineering way. How many of these homes or locations can we pass to serve beyond those served and unserved outside of the program? And that's what we're looking at right now. What's the best way to do that? Where are they served and unserved? And we would go to those areas that are overbuilt, that show to be served and underserved and unserved. That's what we would focus to. And like I said, we don't have that put together. We haven't had this in front of us for even 30 days.
So it sounds like we're not going to have time to make this grant cycle, is what it sounds like to me.
Oh, no, we'll make the grant cycle. We will provide a grant. We will provide a submission, and with or without the county. And we will put in our executive overview, that we've worked with the county, we've worked with LTPT, we've given presentations, and we have local people that have spoken about this to county officials and county members. What we'd like to do in a partnership with the county, I know in the Broadband Opportunity Grant, there are other providers throughout Florida that have put, they've had working relationships or have developed a partnership with the other counties, and they haven't even spoken to the counties. See, we would never do that. We've never put in an application that we have an agreement with the county without one. But we will put in the executive summary that we've worked with the county. It will help the, it will help the application if it's jointly with us and the county, because there's points involved with that. But still, we can demonstrate that we work with that, which is another industry that the application review will look for.
Thank you, sir. Commissioners, does anyone have any questions or concerns for Mr. Ward?
Is anyone here from anybody here?
So far, this is just a presentation from them, but yes, sir, we could.
I mean, it'd be more than one.
So we, yes, we've had workshops with others, but so far, none of them have wanted to make a presentation to pursue a grant or ask for a letter of support. This is the first one so far, Commissioner.
But I like to leave our options open, in case somebody do.
Yes, sir. Well, Mr. Ward's standpoint, if I didn't misunderstand you, is that the county can apply for three or four different ones if we want to, or for different areas. You know, so whatever area they're considering on working on, which is not determined yet, at whatever cost it's going to cost to the resident to have 100/100, which hasn't been discussed yet, that's what he's presenting. And, you know, unless I'm misunderstanding it.
Oh, no. But, Ms. Chairman, to your point, it's zero cost to the county, which means zero cost. We, the grant would cover that, whatever our part is. We're not charging the county anything.
What about the... Go ahead, Commissioner. Go ahead. Did you have something else?
If you're not telling the county, what about the people?
That's what I was asking for.
Right. Not charging the county. We're not asking for anything from the county, outside of wanting to be, set up a PPP.
But if you get the, if you come in, and you're going to tell the people something...
Mr. Ward, we're referring to, so if you receive a grant, your company receives a grant to build out any broadband in this county, what is going to be the pass-through to the resident, because you're basically getting the money to do it? It's not costing you anything. You're getting a grant to do it. It's also helping you build and develop your company and give you infrastructure you didn't otherwise have. So what's going to be the benefit to the residents and the citizens of the county? Is there going to be a three-year cost of $49.99 a month? I mean, that's the affordability part of the three legs that I was mentioning earlier. I think that's what the commissioner's asking about.
Right, okay, I understand. I get that. I can, I can forward you one of the pamphlets that we sent out, the LTPT has, that they've handed out to the public. And there is a cost to us. We haven't determined what that is, but there is a cost to us. We have to cover the cost of the drops. And in Franklin County, the average length of a drop is 1,000 feet, and that gets to be expensive. But there is a cost to us. The benefit to the county is wherever we go by, we can get a splitter on that fiber, on that distribution fiber, and go down streets, and we can do that. So, and I understand about the serving, I mean, the cost of it. I mean, I speak to my son, who's a professor at a university, and I asked him if it's speed or it's availability. He said, Dad, it comes down to cost. What does it cost me? What does it cost my students? So I understand about the cost.
Well, I've seen grants like this, but they have a target area where they don't charge the people. But the other area, they charge. And you need to know what you're dealing with, how much is it going to be affordable for the people out of the target area?
I'm sorry, I'm not hearing every word. I apologize for that.
I said, some grants I have seen, I don't know whether yours like this or not, they have a target area where they do not charge people in the target area, but outside the target area, they charge people. I'm trying to, all I want to know is, is you going to ever tell us what we're dealing with before we make a decision for the people, for the other people?
Once we get everything together, I mean, we're more than happy to share that with the county. What our applications be, like I would never put an application in unless I showed the county. Even if, even if you don't, even if we don't develop a partnership, you're still going to see a copy of the application. I would never do that without doing that. I want to know ahead of time, in case somebody from the broadband office calls you and says, have you spoken to these people? And do you know what their plan is? You would know what it is. We would make sure you would know.
Okay, so it appears that today we don't have that information?
No, and we're working on it. I mean, it's not an easy thing to do.
All right. So maybe what we need to do is not take any action today. When you get that information ready, we will call a special meeting if we have to, so we can consider writing a letter of support.
Sure. And just to let you know, we are, like I said, we're working with Gulf County, and we have presentations due on the 27th and 28th of this month. We can surely work one in.
If they don't answer some specific questions, it's just going to be another presentation, Mr. Ward.
Okay, so your specific questions are what's the least cost cost?
Well, how much of the county you're going to serve? Is it going to be 100/100? And how affordable is it going to be, and for what amount of time? Because at the end of the day, if you do receive a grant, unless I'm completely misunderstanding, if your company receives a grant award, it's covering the cost of the infrastructure and having the infrastructure put in place, so it's not costing us anything, it's really not costing you anything. Now, you might be using it to do your man-hours, or I don't know all that stuff, I don't run your company, but if you're receiving a grant, the grant covers it all. The grant doesn't have a cost to you either, unless they're telling you that you have to put a percentage up to be able to get the grant, which I don't perceive that's what these are.
And what I've said before is, there is a cost to us, because we don't put cost of the drops into our grants.
So that's your own personal viewpoint on it, but if the grant's available, the grant's available.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I'd suggest this. Number one, I keep hearing reference to the county's LTPT. I would like Mr. Ward to reach out and have a presentation to them, and then I think, I don't think a special meeting is needed, because if it's due on the 14th, we meet again on the 4th.
Yeah.
So at that point, we can have Mr. Ward to come back with a presentation with the meeting of the LTPT under his belt, and so we kind of have a joint discussion, and then we decide, you know, if, do we want to let him go this alone, or do we want to make it a public-private partnership? I think that would be appropriate. I mean, yeah.
Yes, unless I'm misreading, I think the DEO requires the county to have a recommendation from our local technology planning team before we give letters of support.
Okay.
I could be reading wrong, but that's the way I read it.
And I don't believe it'll be 100, huh?
I see the chairman, chairperson out there. I'd ask if that works for the chairperson? Yes. So that's just my recommendation.
All right, anybody have any questions or concerns for Mr. Ward? Mr. Jim, thank you for being here today. I'm sure we'll be in touch, sir.
All right. Thank you so much for your time. I appreciate it.
All right, Ms. Angela Lala?
Okay, I'm going to recommend a couple of things. You have a 10 o'clock public hearing scheduled for 10, which is the RV Camper. I don't know if you want to take a break, go through all your public hearings, and then come back to Angela. I'm sorry, Angela.
We'll have to do that. Let's do it that way. We'll take a recess for five minutes, and we'll come back and start the first public hearing.
Okay, thank you.
I'm a professional Realtor in love with St. George Island. My husband and I and our dogs moved here in 2002. It was the beginning of an adventure that has never grown old in a community that is amazing. If you're thinking about moving to St. George Island or investing in our world-class real estate, then this community will be as important to you as the sand and surf.
Well, Carol, to me, is much more than an agent. She's become a friend, and since we bought the house, we've needed work done, and she knows everybody there is that can help us with that.
One of the key elements for the historical growth in value of St. George Island real estate is the fact that it's a great place to vacation and to live. The beauty of the Gulf of Mexico with its white sand beaches and blue sky has always been a magnet for me. It was love at first sight. As your Realtor, I can help educate you on the various aspects of buying and owning coastal properties, from taxes to coastal setback lines to where to find the best oysters. It's all part of being your Realtor.
Too often, our friends tell us of it being a hardship to buy a house, and the agent was gone as soon as the closing. We've had quite the opposite experience with Carol.
If you're looking to buy or sell real estate on St. George Island, I'd love to work with you. Please call or text me at 850-653-7753.
Taking our beautiful piece of paradise, please make sure you visit our local shops, restaurants, galleries, and take some time to experience something different, and take a fishing trip or tour with one of our experience guides. Our neighbors and their businesses are the heartbeat of our community. Thank you for visiting, and remember to shop local, eat local, and fish local. This message is brought to you by the Apalachicola Bay Chamber of Commerce.
Fisherman's Choice Bait and Tackle has all you need for your day of fishing. They have fresh and saltwater bait, an unmatched selection of mirror lures, and a wide selection of Berkeley gulp, plus fresh and live bait, and all the rigs and tackle you need for a great day of fishing, including brands like Pin and Shimano. They are also the only bait and tackle shop in Franklin County where you can get a fishing license. And don't miss their wide selection of marine supplies, coolers, and more. Fisherman's Choice is located at 330 Highway 98 in East Point.
We understand that managing a healthy lifestyle while balancing life's other demands can be challenging at times. So the Florida Department of Health in Franklin County is dedicated to supporting you as you take care of your health. We offer many resources and services, including, but not limited to, COVID-19 vaccines, breast and cervical cancer screens, tobacco prevention and sensation education, and information on heart health, nutrition, and physical activity. Maintaining a healthy lifestyle can help to prevent chronic conditions like heart disease and stroke, diabetes, COPD, and obesity. Healthy lifestyle changes can also help you maintain a healthy immune system. Tips to good health include eating a healthy diet, being physically active, avoiding tobacco and excessive alcohol, managing stress effectively, getting enough sleep, and seeing your medical provider for routine checkups.
To find out more about how we can help you maintain a healthier lifestyle, please visit franklin.floordouthelp.gov or call 850-653-2111.
Fisherman's Choice Bait and Tackle has all you need for your day of fishing. They have fresh and saltwater bait, an unmatched selection of mirror lures, and a wide selection of Berkeley gulp, plus fresh and live bait and all the rigs and tackle you need for a great day of fishing, including brands like Pin and Shimano. They are also the only bait and tackle shop in Franklin County where you can get a fishing license. And don't miss their wide selection of marine supplies, coolers, and more. Fisherman's Choice is located at 330 Highway 98 in East Point.
We understand that managing a healthy lifestyle while balancing life's other demands can be challenging at times. So the Florida Department of Health in Franklin County is dedicated to supporting you as you take care of your health. We offer many resources and services, including, but not limited to, COVID-19 vaccines, breast and cervical cancer screens, tobacco prevention and sensation education, and information on heart health, nutrition, and physical activity. Maintaining a healthy lifestyle can help to prevent chronic conditions like heart disease and stroke, diabetes, COPD, and obesity. Healthy lifestyle changes can also help you maintain a healthy immune system. Tips to good health include eating a healthy diet, being physically active, avoiding tobacco and excessive alcohol, managing stress effectively, getting enough sleep, and seeing your medical provider for routine checkups. To find out more about how we can help you maintain a healthier lifestyle, please visit franklin.floordouthhealth.gov or call 850-653-2111.
Franklin County Commission is now back in session. We're going to our first of three scheduled public hearings. The first one is on use of travel trailers in Franklin County, Florida.
Mr. Chairman, this public hearing has been duly advertised and you're in a procedural position to move forward this morning if that is the board's wishes. I will tell you, I am aware that staff has some questions and concerns, I think, about this ordinance. And before we proceed with the public hearing, I just wanted to check with the board if you'd be ready to proceed or if you would want to table this public hearing and have me go back to staff and deal with some of the questions and concerns that they have raised.
Mr. Chairman, I'm okay with tabling this. I've spoke to the county staff. I've spoke to, I've actually looked over the ordinance myself and I myself have some questions and concerns. I just think there's a lot of variables and a lot of items that have come up that we may need to table this at this time, meet with county staff, maybe have a workshop with the community. That way they can be involved in terms of what they think needs to happen and go from there. But that's my opinion is I would like to table this.
Is that a motion, Commissioner?
Yes.
So we have a motion to table by Commissioner Ward.
I'll second it.
Second by Commissioner Amerson. End of discussion. I will echo what the commissioner said. I have some issues with some of the language. And knowing that this is going to be an ordinance, well, we already have an ordinance, we'll be updating one. But knowing this is what we're going to use going forward, I think we need to have all the language nailed down before we go up or down on it. So I agree with the commissioner.
Mr. Chairman, also the sheriff also gave me a call yesterday. He had a copy of it. He would like some language added for some concerns he raised quite a few months ago, you know, with it. So that would help on his end with enforcement. So I'd like to include him in these discussions. Commissioner Ward also had a suggestion. I don't know if she wants me to say it or not. But how does the board feel about running it by P&amp;Z at the next P&amp;Z meeting just to kind of get their feelings on it before you schedule your workshop?
Well, that's fine with me. I mean, I'm okay with that.
I don't have any problem with it.
I'm fine with that.
Why not do the workshop at P&amp;Z? Do you want to workshop before this board, Commissioner?
I mean, I think the P&amp;Z, I don't, I want to speak on behalf of the other board members, but I think the P&amp;Z maybe just put it before them and then have a workshop here with this board.
I think that'd be better. I do concur that'd be better. Because, you know, none of the commissioners are ever at the P&amp;Z meetings anyway. You know what I mean? That's by design and purpose, you know, so it'd be better for us told the workshop is the way I feel about it. Do we need to make a motion or amend the motion to add that?
I don't think so. That's more of an administrative detail.
All right. Any other discussion before we vote? All in favor? All opposed? So we have tabled that public hearing.
And you have maybe?
Since we're not tabling to a date, time, and certain, which I do not recommend, then we will re-advertise in the newspaper.
All right. Next is a public hearing for ordinance rezoning, 8.03 plus or minus acre of land.
That's Courtney. And she's, I just saw her running to her office. So I didn't know if you want to switch the order, the order of the two. Both were advertised for 10:30, Mr. Chairman.
Well, we can. If Courtney's not ready, we'll just go to the, if it's not a procedural problem. They're both advertised for 10:30.
They were both advertised at 10:30.
They're both advertised at 10:30.
Okay. So we'll go to the one on Serenity Seaside Resort Plan Development Amendment. We'll start that public hearing. We're waiting on Mr. Currenton, just so everybody's aware.
Okay, this is a continuation of our public hearing from a month ago. Okay, this is a continuation of our public hearing from a month ago. Not sure how y'all want to proceed.
Well, the only thing that's substantially different is we had asked about a letter from DOT, or not a letter, but correspondence from DOT. It didn't have to be a letter, about some issues that were raised at the last public hearing.
Yes.
And I understand we received that response?
Yes. Commissioner Ward had provided some questions to DOT about what actions they took in discussions with the developer. And if you won't, I can read those into the record if you would like.
That's fine.
Okay. She'd ask about, did the Department of Transportation provide a traffic study? And their answer was no, the department did not perform a traffic study. We rely on our access management criteria as stated above. Any studies requiring, required for proposed development is the responsibility of the permittee. Second question was, the crosswalk was built and constructed in 2018. This PUD was approved in 2019 with Island Drive being the ingress and egress. However, now it's been changed citing safety concerns. Why wasn't it an issue then? And the answer was developers may not come to the department for permitting at the same time they submit the PUD to the local government. I'm not aware of this development approaching the department prior to this submittal. The third question was, was Begonia Street ever discussed as an ingress/egress for the PUD? And the answer was yes, we did discuss them using Begonia Street as an additional access. The fourth question was, ingress and egress is changed from a state road to a county road. Is that so the county will be responsible for the upkeep of the road versus FDOT? The answer was no, access was changed based on the above-mentioned information. Fifth question was, although we realize South Bay Shore is a county road, was there ever any discussion about blocking off the north part of the Y intersection on South Bay Shore, making it a T intersection? We feel this is a safety issue as a new potential ingress/egress would be three curves, one from the east, one from the west, and one from the south. This could be dangerous for people pulling out of the PUD onto South Bay Shore. And the answer from DOT was, there was never any discussion on changing the alignment or configuration of South Bay Shore Drive. Any changes to South Bay Shore Drive would be the responsibility of the local government. And the sixth question was, FDOT stated that there were issues with Island Drive access as it doesn't meet FDOT's spacing requirements and has the potential to disrupt access for adjacent property owners. I believe the spacing has to be 440 feet. Isn't that the same issue that would present itself having the ingress/egress off of South Bay Shore? And DOT's answer was, I'm not aware of the access requirements on South Bay Shore Drive since this does not fall under the department's management. Based on the information from the PowerPoint that was presented at the public hearing, the proposed connection is approximately 590 feet from the split, the Y, at the intersection of State Road 300. This frontage is under the ownership of the development and would allow room for right-hand turn lane without disrupting any adjoining properties. And final question was, was this area looked at on a map? Or did the engineer or FDOT representative actually come and look at the area to see the layout? The answer was, I'm not aware of any department personnel visiting the location specifically for this development. However, we routinely travel all the roads on the state highway system and are familiar with this area.
You have any questions for Mr. Currenton or anything to address? That's procedural. What we're doing, correct, Attorney General? So we can ask Mr. Currenton questions before we take public comment, right?
That would be a way to approach Mr. Chairman. That's fine.
I will say, just to clarify, and we talked about this the last meeting, in between that Y, that's not all state property. Somebody actually owns that parcel. They do so to be able to rent billboard space to the billboard that's currently there. So that would be another issue with that Y and trying to make that a T. We don't own the property. And the state doesn't own the property, just to clarify. Anyone else have anything for Mr. Currenton? Should I do anything else before we do public comments, sir?
If there's no questions for the board for Mr. Currenton or staff, then public comment would be appropriate.
So at this time, we will open it for public comment. You do not have to fill out a speaker's card to be able to comment during a public hearing. You will have five minutes. Whoever wants to be first, please stand and come be recognized, state your name for the record.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
My name is Laverne Holman and I live on South Bay Shore Drive. This is a dangerous situation we are talking about here this morning. That is, of course, our connection to this resort from South Bay Shore Drive. We all know it is dangerous. It is ridiculous to know from the developer that Florida DOT refused an entrance/exit on Island Drive because of the danger of being too close to the Y. Now the developer wants to come right around the corner and do the same, close to the Y. There is a difference, though, a very large difference. You would be coming to a narrow two-lane road, not at all appropriate for this entire debacle on South Bay Shore. No one can pass on that road and there will be a traffic jam continuously, an accident waiting to happen, and the county liable, knowing full well the dangers when permission is granted to do this. It will not work and it is absurd to think it will. The only solution, if there has to be one, is to have a one-lane entrance only to the resort on South Bay Shore, and exit only on Begonia. This will cut down on traffic jams entering and leaving the resort, the overall traffic on South Bay Shore Drive, and consideration for persons living and visiting St. George Island. They were here first, before a development, and their primary road is South Bay Shore Drive. We already know from the Sheriff's Department what a dangerous road, South Bay Shore, is. In fact, the most problematic in the county, they say. This is a reasonable and sensible solution to a dangerous problem. I do not see how any of this can be carried out without traffic studies, road studies, and engineers to give expert advice. The developer wants a quick fix and we are not trained here to do that. This is a huge decision and experts are needed. This should not be treated lightly and quickly. After four years, now the county is expected to fix this for the developer. It is not the county's responsibility. The county needs to tell the developer how it must be, not the developer tell the county how it must be. The developer is responsible for this mess and a bit late also. If this must be on South Bay Shore at all, it can only be an entrance only with one lane in and exit only on Begonia. Example, here is an example of a two-lane on pass, with no passing on the road. One car on Bay Shore heading to the resort wants to turn left at the entrance. One car heading to St. George on South Bay Shore. One car coming from St. George on South Bay Shore. One car wants to turn left out of the resort to go to St. George. One car wants to turn right to go out of resort to 98. One car speeds around the Y curve to South Bay Shore. Everyone is stopped. Six-way intersection, traffic jam. No one can cut around cars on South Bay Shore. It is a two-lane road with no passing. Who goes first? As I've said, accidents waiting to happen. This is a danger to the public. Do you give the property owner access to his property if it endangers the public? I don't think so, and neither do you, because you are a board to protect the county citizens and the many tourists that visit here, our bread and butter. I am frankly quite tired of all of this and want it to end with conditions set in writing and binding and not ever have to come back here related to another item concerning this development. Thank you for your time.
Anyone else?
Pete Whitesell, Appalachia Cola. There've been several fallacies used to sway your vote on this issue and a broken promise on top of that. One fallacy is that because the developer got a letter from FDOT denying access to Island Drive, therefore it is your responsibility to fix this problem. Under no circumstances is it your responsibility to fix this problem. Another fallacy is that because this is costing the developer money and heartache, therefore it is your responsibility to vote for this change. No, you are not responsible for the developer's profit or heartache. That's not logically correct. It is not the commission's job to ensure the profitability of another county's developer. Actually, it's not even your responsibility to ensure the profitability of your own developer either. Put these fallacies together with the gross misrepresentation that this property will bring good, long-term, high-paying jobs to Franklin County residents, and you're buying into a development that is guaranteed to be a failure for this county and its residents. Additionally, the people of Franklin County and particularly the residents of South Bay Shore Drive area were promised that there would not be any access to South Bay Shore Drive. Shore Drive area, were promised that there would not be any access to South Bay Shore Drive. If access to South Bay Shore Drive was in the original plans, this PUD may have never been approved in the first place. I understand that three of you are not here and did not originally vote for the PUD, but there is an honesty in government factor that the county should adhere to, and when you make an agreement like no access to Bay Shore to get the PUD passed, and then it is incumbent on the county government to honor that promise, no matter that you were in office at the time or not. That's the right and honest thing to do. For the developer to go back on their promise to stay off Bay Shore Drive is just plain wrong, and you should not be complicit in that wrong."
Anyone else?
Hello, I'm Barbara Sanders. I live on St. George Island. I didn't speak at your first meeting because I didn't have all the facts, and I was very glad to have that email and the response from DOT Ms. Ward. When we evacuate the island, of course, that's our way, one and only way to get off of the island. What I thought was interesting about the DOT letter, and Mark, correct me if I'm wrong, DOT made us a suggestion that the developer negotiate with adjacent landowners to create access over someone else's property. So Brian Grenard has property, Diane Dodd has property, Mr. Howell, a CPA from Panama City, has property, Water Management has property. The developer's solution is asking government to take care of its problem, and we all know what happens when government takes care of private businesses' problems. It doesn't work. They can go to one of these other landowners. Will it cost them money? Will it adversely impact their bottom line? Probably. But you know, when the next hurricane comes after this development is built, he'll be lung on Sam, and I'll be trying to get off the island. So I would not allow the change. I would ask him to comply with the DOT's safety, go to a neighbor, buy the land, buy an access easement. There are other solutions.
Anyone else? Anyone else in public comments? Is anyone attending by zoom, sir? Would you wish to comment publicly?
Let me find out, sir. The chairman's calling for anyone attending this meeting virtually, if they would like to comment at this would be the time. You do so by raising your hands on your device. I have one, sir. I'm going to...
You do.
Okay. Mr. Duncan is unmuted, sir.
Yeah, hey, this is David Duncan. You know, as y'all know, I sit on the PNC, and I listen to these comments. As one of your board members planning zoning, and I may have missed this question, and this is my question is, did they ever get an actual refusal from DOT for the entrance?
Mr. Duncan, we're doing public comments right now.
Okay. Well, that's, I mean, my public comment is there, is they're asking to move the entrance, but as a citizen, I listened to them say that they didn't think that they would get it, that they didn't would get the approval from DOT, but you know, there was never any for sure they weren't going to get it. So my thing is, I feel like they're asking for something that they've never actually got a refusal on.
Thank you, Mr. Duncan.
All right, thank you.
Sorry about that. I was just trying to clarify that we were under public comments. We weren't under asking questions and getting answers part of the meeting yet. Attorney Shulman, is it appropriate for me to allow the developer to speak after public comment?
Was that the remainder and final public comment?
As far as I know, sir.
If I don't see anyone else, raise their hand to speak.
Yes, that would be fine, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Attorney?
I really just have, I offered all the Commissioners, I appreciate you doing your due diligence through this and receiving the letter from FDOT that basically did deny us. Just a couple of points. Even if we had, and we don't have the agreement from neighbors, but if we did, we still wouldn't be complying with the Y intersection and a crosswalk. It's not just any one simple thing. That would not be a solution either. Again, this is nothing that we asked for, it's nothing that we wanted to do. This is something that we took into account very seriously, very diligently, and the change is in compliance with FDOT. It's in compliance, I believe, with the county as well. I don't know what else to do. We do need safe access into the property for our patrons. And if you have any questions, again, I'm here to answer any.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Chairman, in reference to the question, this entrance to South Bay Shore that FDOT, you didn't, it was a recommendation, not flat-out, "No, you cannot use this access on Island Drive."
It was a flat-out, "No, we can't do it." And you have the answers on, from your inquiries, there's three reasons why we can't use Island Drive.
And, Mr. Chairman, I've got another recommendation, just going to throw this out there. Have you ever considered making just an ingress to South Bay Shore and the egress or the exit through Begonia? So in other words, to prevent the flow of traffic, have the entrance only to South Bay Shore, and then people leaving your development leave out through Begonia?
We did, and one of the things that we've discussed, and internally discussed as well, is that with the signage interior in the resort, we would, we could direct the traffic, for example, to go to Appalachia Cola out of Begonia. It would be the shortest way to do that anyway. But if you were going to St. George Island, it may make more sense to go out of the South Bay Shore entrance/exit. So we would allow it. I wouldn't want to necessarily restrict it that way. I don't know if that would make really any sense, but you know, if that's, if you think that's a proper solution, that may be what we need. But keep in mind, though, that Begonia is also going to be restricted to construction and the service. So now I'm asking patrons to go out of basically a service entrance, and again, that's, you know, there's a lot of residents on Begonia Street as well. And there's also residents on South Bay Shore, it's not just these few you're hearing, that are very supportive of our development. So I don't want to have just a bias that everybody on South Bay Shore is against it because they're not. It's going to be, and by the way, it was said before, minimum wage is $7. Minimum wage is $12 an hour. Just set that out. So it is going to provide good jobs. It's going to provide jobs for, I think, a lot of younger people who need jobs in this county as well. Good job in a nice environment. So that's, and that's our whole goal here, is to provide an asset, create an asset that everybody can be proud of and utilize. And I think a lot of these naysayers will actually be patrons to come and visit and enjoy the resort.
Mr. Chairman, I've got one more question. Have you ever considered or thought about considering the land ownership in terms of reaching out to other adjacent property owners for purchase to have an ingress and egress?
We did. The most, the closest one to us owns a water company, and he has no intentions of selling anything or doing anything with it. And that would be the immediate one. Regardless of anybody beyond him, it wouldn't make any sense.
Okay.
And again, even if we did, we're still not in compliance with the Y intersection and the crosswalk. So that's what I'm saying. It's not just any one, we could get rid of the crosswalk. That still wouldn't be a solution. We'd get rid of the Y intersection. We'd have to get rid of the Y intersection, the crosswalk, and get easements from everybody, and that's just not going to happen.
Thank you. That's all the questions I have right now.
Anyone else have any questions? Mr. Attorney? Commissioners?
Actually, I do. I do got a question. Whenever...
Mr. Chairman. Yeah.
All right. I'm one of the new Commissioners, obviously, but going back, whenever y'all got this putt approval or whatnot, I mean, and this may be inaccurate, we've seen that in the recent past, but according to the newspaper, you guys, the reason y'all got this putt approval was y'all took that entrance away from South Bay Shore. And let me finish, please. But in this article, it specifically states that Begonia was to be the new ingress and egress. Is that, and I'm asking you this, and my fellow board members that were here at that time, is that correct?
I don't remember it being correct.
I don't remember that either.
But I could, you know, we're going by what's written in the paper and not looking at minutes.
Well, I could say, you know, according to what's happened in recent history, obviously, people make mistakes. Now, I'm going to tell you, I've drove, I've circled that area so much, I think I've been called on, the law's been called on me for stalking, and I've been trying to wrap my head around this. And the idea of South Begonia is just some residential area, what it is, sir, is you have some low-income housing right there at the very, I mean, and I can understand, I mean, let's just call it what it is. You don't want to have an entrance to a resort and have them right there drive by and see residential, I mean, low-income house. I mean, it's not an attractive entrance. Let's just be honest. I mean, it's not an attractive entrance for something like that.
Well, to be honest...
Yeah, go ahead.
No, I'm just saying, to be honest, that's not totally correct. It's not, it's not an appropriate road to begin with.
Why not?
Well, first of all, South Bay Shore is a, is a public county road, 35 miles an hour, Begonia's a 25 mile an hour. It's more of a neighborhood. For me to do that, I'd be exploiting, to your point, bluntly, the lower income in favor of the minority upper income, and that has, that has some very bad optics to it. But the point of it is, across the street from the proposed entrance, and you've driven by there, there's absolutely nothing across the street from us. That's protected, there's nobody there. Nobody's going to be intruded upon. We are over 500 feet from the closest neighbor to the west. That's far in excess of compliance even with FDOT. So we're further apart from anybody that we'd be touching with on Begonia. We'd be 50 feet from the neighbor?
Yeah, but what you fail to realize is...
And we are using Begonia.
We're, exactly.
We are using Begonia for service.
But what I'm getting at is, is our main interest and concern is, is a safety issue on South Bay Shore. I mean, and I mean, honestly, the best ingress and egress would be Begonia. Now, I mean, I understand it's not, why not? I mean...
Well, I just said it. Number one, it's not a public street for 35 miles an hour. It's more of a neighborhood street. I'm closer intrusion to neighbors there than I am on South, there's nobody on South Bay Shore near our entrance. It's a bigger street. It's a wider street. It just makes more sense, and FDOT suggested that as well. Not to mention the property, we have 1,200 feet ownership that fronts on South Bay Shore, maybe 40, 50 feet at the most on Begonia. So you're telling me to take, or you're asking me to take, the smallest touch point on the entire 55 acres as opposed to the largest touch point on the 55 acres?
No, what I'm telling you is, is what I researched here, and I mean, you've got, you keep acting like Begonia is some little dirt road, and it's not. I mean, it's an improved road. Obviously, it can be more improvements, but it's not a bad road.
We're using it.
Yeah, exactly.
We are going to use it.
But then you turn around and say, but I mean, it is what it is.
Well, we need two ingress and...
Dodge around with this and just admit the fact that it's not an attractive entrance to a resort. That's fine, I understand it. I'm...
Well, that's part of it. I'm not going to say it's not, but I'm just saying, but we still need two ingress and egresses to the property.
I understand that.
So would you...
Now, also with that, going back to just what you said a while ago, and I'm going to tell you why it kind of worries me in a way, is because, you know, like the one, I'm a fan of, if we had to go to South Bay Shore and give that to you, I wouldn't absolutely be opposed to that, but it would be for an entrance only. Now, you say, "Well, we can just kind of throw it out there to where, you know, you know, we can direct traffic this way within the resort," and what you're doing is, is you're jumping around again, and you're leaving a window open to where down the road you can say, "Well, we need to do some exits there now that we've got it developed" or whatnot. The only way I would actually be, and I'm only one of five, but I'm that one that's going, the only way I would fall in line with that is if we had something in writing legally that would limit access only and completely take out the whole exit issue there. Because I'm going to be blunt, just looking at what I'm seeing here, it kind of looks like you're going to get a little bit and then come back and ask for some more, and that's not really what we're looking for.
I didn't ask for this to begin with, just so you know. For the record, I didn't ask for this.
You did due diligence and research beforehand.
FDOT took this away from us.
No, 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 no. What I'm saying is, is, I mean, and I asked you this prior, and I'm not, you know, picking on you, but I asked you if this was your first development, and you said, "Yes, but I've got people that are..."
Right, you're asking me, but I have a whole group behind me that has 80 years of development.
There should have been some experience and foresight there to go and make sure that this was, you know...
In the answer to that question that Commissioner Ward and Jones sent to Brian Pettis, he wasn't aware of it, but we did talk to FDOT prior to this. You can't make the application at the same time, but we did talk to them. Anyway, but just, but just from a practical point of view...
I'm sorry?
Since you know this here, from a practical point of view, I just want to make this one comment. The original entrance on Island Drive, if you were to leave that, the property on that entrance, and you wanted to go to Appalachia Cola, I even asked, I'm sorry, her name, but anyway, "How would you leave?" She goes, "I'd take a right and go down South Bay Shore." I said, "Of course you would." So there's really no practical difference, if that makes sense. If you leave, if you would leave the property from the original entrance and you wanted to go to Appalachia Cola, 99% of people would probably take a right and go up to South Bay Shore Drive.
No, not necessarily.
Well, you think they're going to cross the two-lane street and take a left across Island Drive?
Yeah, because that's probably where the GPS...
That would be really dangerous. Now, you're asking me to cross over a 45 mile an hour road. Anyway, but to, but to, but to make it...
You're going to dodge the point that you're here, so just, you know, it's what it is.
I'm not...
But I will tell you...
I'm not dodging, but to, but to your point, if that, if that works, we'll make it an entrance only.
But that's not, it's not up to me.
All right, but if, well, if that gets...
Like I said, I'm here just for the folks, but I'm just, you know...
So if that, but if that gets us, if that gets us off dead center, but I would like to have one caveat. If I can have another exit, I have to research this, I don't know, but if it's possible, I would like to have the ability to potentially make another exit to the north on the, I don't know who owns that easement, I think it's a county.
Wait, was that, where's that? I don't know.
It's on the north side of the property.
Coming out to...
I have issues with that. I'm not saying I can do that. I'd use, I'd like to use, if I do that, if you're restricting me from just an entrance only, then if I could have potentially another exit on the north side, but I have wetlands issues up there, so I don't know if I can even do that, but, so you're not saying I'm lying to you, I'm coming back again and again, I would just like to have a caveat that if that's available, that I would like to potentially use that.
But where does that road potentially come out?
Can we pull up a map? It would go on Island Drive. And the original, and the original entrance...
But if it comes out on Island Drive, why can't you just make that the resort entrance and egress?
All right, I, okay. I got to go. You're talking an entrance versus an exit, and I'm suggesting, I can't, I don't know if I can do that, but that's not an entrance. I think you understand what I'm saying.
He's saying the way that it's Island Drive is...
You can't, you can't make that an entrance. I don't know if you can make that an exit only. Entrances have, have distance issues. Exits don't, if that makes sense.
Okay.
Okay?
That's what he's saying. That's what I understand.
You understand? Okay. Thank you. Is that it?
What's your thoughts, Mark?
He likes South Bay Shore.
If you got, excuse me, if you got other ways of going, let's do that, because, you know, as, I'm like Commissioner Amerson, right now as it sits, I'm not going to go with it, because I'm in agreement with a lot of the people in the room that it's not the county's obligation to have to provide you an egress and egress. That's part of the PUD, and that should have been all the way planned out. And you can say, "This is only going to be an ingress, and this is only going to be an egress," but when, when people come and see a shorter route, they're going to take that shorter route.
But if it's an entrance only, you can't...
Yeah, yeah. But I like your idea at going back to the drawing table and looking...
That's not, that's not, that is, that is not what I'm saying.
Well, you didn't let me finish. You stopped me before I was...
Okay.
You're going to learn about this lady right here. I'm about respect. And we board members have to sit up here and talk it out, and talk it out with y'all, talk it out with the people, and talk it out amongst ourselves, and it doesn't do no good for you to cut these Commissioners off when they're trying to make a point. to make a point.
I didn't mean any disrespect.
Respect. What's your name?
Craig Dermody.
Dermody. It, it, respect, that's what we ask for in here. So, just go ahead and sit down and let me finish saying what I was going to say, if you don't mind. And I respect you.
That's a little much, Commissioner, but go ahead.
Huh?
That's a little much to tell him to sit down, but please proceed.
But no, he was sitting down.
I understand that.
He was sitting down.
Go ahead.
He was sitting down, that's what I'm saying.
Okay, go ahead.
I wanted him, now, don't call me out now, Mr. Chairman, because of what I'm saying.
That's the responsibility I have. I'm trying to run the meeting.
Hey, I asked him to sit down, because that's what he was doing until I said something, and then he jumped up catching me, you know, off guard. So, it is about respect, Mr.?
It is.
And, Mr. Chairman, it is about respect, that's why I asked him to sit down and let me talk to him. Don't stand up there, come jump at the podium and stop me from saying what I was going to say. Now, I represent the people of Franklin County, and I represent the people from Outlet Gate to Point, all the way to out there to Boxaw, just like every one of us do. And when I, when I see it, the board being disrespected, you know I'm going to jump on it. But what I was saying is, go back, you said just a minute ago, Mr. Dermody, you said that you might could look at other places to make the road, you just said that just a minute ago, didn't you? He didn't say that.
He was talking about an exit.
He was talking about exit only.
That's what I'm saying.
That's not an ingress, though, he's talking about exit only.
The exit only on the north side of the property.
Mm-hmm.
So, he's still going to have to have the South Bay Shore. Is that the one?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. It's, I'm going to apologize to you. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, ma'am.
One more thing, Mr. Chairman. With that, what we were discussing earlier about the, uh, the entrance only, exit on Begonia, you know, you, you said, "Well, how, how are people, people would rather access the island," such. If you go down on Begonia, there's a road right there that you can take a right, and it hits Island Drive one block. I mean, it's not even like you're going all the way back out to ninety-eight. So, there you go with signage, whatnot, SDI, there's a solution, and that's what we're trying to figure out here. And, and, and like I said before, planning is, is about ninety-nine percent of, and we all know the old, you know, poor planning equals poor performance. Well, that's what we're trying to avoid here, because it seems to me in the past that, that that's what's happened. So, going forward, we're going to look at this a little more in depth with more options. That's the best thing we can do for every citizen in that area, not just a developer. I mean, I'm not against your development, but I'm against the county, for one, having to foot the bill on maintaining a road that we, as a county, and, and thought that it was going to fall under the state. So, now, that's something, that's another expense for us, so to speak, of maintenance issues like that. That's why I said, you know, I would be for an entrance only. I like, I have rode that, that, that's not an area right there where it's going to be unappealing to a neighbor across the road, I understand that. But, but it is a safety issue when you have exits in that area. I mean, all you're doing is moving a problem, as far as I'm concerned, from DOT's lap, and you're putting it in our lap, you know, and that, and that's why we're having these discussions. I, I, you know, I don't want you to take it that, that I for one are sitting here and I'm just completely against my pug. I'm for developing, I've said that all along, we need, we're not going to be able to stop progress, but we need to have a say in how this progress is going to affect our community. And that's what we're doing at this point. And, and, you know, if you took it as though I'm, I'm, I'm in any way against or trying to shut you down, that's not the case. Just trying to look at this and aspect of everybody concerned, that way I myself can make one of the five decisions on this, on this matter.
So, I guess, Mr. Craig, were you done with discussing anything you want to discuss? Okay. Does any commissioners have any other questions for Mr. Dermody? So, I will say this, as a representative of this district, I'm fine with whatever discussion we do, as long as at the end of the day, they have access to the property. Now, I understand that, you know, they've had discussions with some of the property owners, they no way know how, want to give them access across their property to get to Mr. Dermody's property. And, you know, I have heard several times, people make the comment of, maybe they should buy another piece of property, have access, and I cannot think of any time in this county we've ever done that to anyone. Did they, did they have to buy another piece of property, residential or commercial, to have access to their property? I don't recall we've ever done that. So, as long as, at the end of the day, they have access to their property, to me, it matters not whether it's ingress only and egress somewhere else. I will say this, because it is my district. So, Begonia was one of the streets that I wanted to have paved. We had it on the list here a while back, but there was enough, not enough money in my paving budget to do so. So, if the board wants that to be the, the exit area, then I think I need some help from some board members to get the monies to pave that road and make it like it needs to be. So, it's not just a, anyway, what it is, it needs improvement. So, you know, if that's the pleasure of the board, then I'm looking for dollars.
You know, like I said, I was on this thing when we passed it. When I passed it, I voted to pass it, and I'm going to vote for the man to get a, to get in there, he got to have access to the property. Now, what we going to do? Go back and change everything, or vote it on because it's a new vote? Hey, let's get real here, let's get real. This, you going to be, it's not going to be no problem, but they talking about upkeep of the road. If you put a hundred room motel over there, they going to pay, somebody going to buy some Gas tank for sixty rooms.
Sure.
The other part where they staying in, somebody going to pay some, they going to be paying tax, they going to fix that road. That road should be fixed quicker with, with this development in there than it been fixed the whole time before we had the gas tank. Because people going to come. They going to buy to live there, and they going to rent them rooms to stay there. So, I know you've got public that don't like it, don't own it, you've got some own it, some don't. But it's time to let these people do their thing before you end up in coal again.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
This is not about the PUD. This is just about the ingress, egress. Am I right?
You could be.
Yeah, it's not about the PUD, because the PUD, y'all voted on that in two thousand nineteen, right?
Right. But without ingress, does it matter if there's a PUD or not?
Well, you've got to have an in and out.
That's what, that's why I said, what is it?
That's what I'm saying, you've got to have an in and out. I'm, I'm like Commissioner Amerson, it should have been looked at a little bit more than apparently it would look at. But has, has DOT, I'm, I'm like everybody else, has DOT said absolutely not, no way, no shape, no form, can they use Island Drive?
That's what the email was about, Mr. Chairman.
But, but what I'm saying is this, you can't dictate who uses what if it's a public road.
DOT can.
That's where I was, huh?
DOT can.
DOT can.
Yes, ma'am.
And they did.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, well, they, they're telling you, you can't use it. You can't use it.
I got, I got a question. Mr. Chairman, you mentioned about improvements on Begonia, but even, even still, would it be in a, a service entrance? Or, and, and still, we still might have to have some improvement there.
Yes.
So, I mean, so, whether it's a, an exit only or a service entrance, we're still looking at the same improvement, correct?
Yes, sir, you are.
So, I mean, that, so regardless of whether or not we make that an entrance only and exit there, we're still going to have the same amount of money invested in Begonia, regardless, basically.
Yes, sir, when we get to it. And let me clarify. So, the reason I mention that is because we did have some, and they're about to start soon, of the ones that I was trying to get paved in my district.
Mm-hmm.
Miss Aaron helped me add up what was available in my district's funds, because it's all separated by district, not by how, what shape the roads in. So, I live in a district where roads are in worse shape than the rest of the county, but I'm held to that twenty percent. So, I did the worst ones first, and I didn't have enough to finish Begonia. I'm just making the board aware of that fact, so it's not, it's not the way it should be if we were all honest with ourselves, you know, that we would want it to be paved for anybody, for the residents there or for any potential development.
Well, I guess my question is, is if, let's just say, if DOT gave them the access off of Island Drive, you still have to do the Begonia...
Oh, yes.
...improvement?
Mm-hmm.
So...
Yeah, that's why I was going to ask.
Wasn't we going to have to help you out when they're regardless?
Oh, no, but that's the plea to get help now, sir, as opposed to later.
I'm just saying.
No, no, that's just a...
So, regardless, though, I mean, we're back to where we, where we were earlier about that entrance. If we moved that entrance only on the South Bay Shore and have an exit only off of Begonia, and then they can turn down Kramer Street if they want to access the island quicker, uh, if they want to come to Appalachia, they can just go up there and hit ninety-eight and take a left. I mean, regardless, we're still looking at the same issue as far as funding, as far as Begonia goes.
Oh, yes. Oh, yes. No, that doesn't change.
That's, that's pretty much a no-brainer then, because I'm just sitting there looking at the intersection, looking at the Y, and I believe if you got, uh, if you have an ingress and egress at that point right there, you're going to have traffic coming out, trying to get across traffic, you're going to have traffic coming out trying to go right, you're backed up at the Y now, because you may have people coming back from the island, from visiting, uh, if we have that many people in the resort, which I hope you do. Again, I mean, I'm not against it. I mean, I, I, I can see the potential for jobs and, and generate revenue, like Commissioner Noah was talking about as far as fuel and property taxes and whatnot, but I'm just sitting there looking at it from a safety standpoint. If it's an, if it's an egress only, it would flow in. Obviously, I mean, it's not going to be a security gate there or anything like, I mean, like you're going into plantation, I mean, it'll flow right on through, correct? Uh, Mr. Craig? I mean, you're not going to have like gate, or it's not a gated community.
On the entrance, we, we plan to have a garden.
Okay.
On the entrance?
To go eat at a restaurant?
Well, you're right.
I, I understand. I was just making a slight joke. I was trying to make a little humor where we got a little heated, so we're back and forth here. But anyway, I mean, that, that goes back, it would flow much better if it was, if, if it was an entrance only off South Bay Shore. Like I said, I've drove around there plenty of times and looked at it, and I don't, I don't see an issue with that. I think that would, would, would settle a lot of people in the area down, and I, and I think it would make it a safer transition off that road. That's, that's my piece, and I'm going to leave it alone.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, just a procedural point, two of them. First, there, there is more to this potential PUD amendment than just the, the change of the entryway on the South Bay Shore Drive. So, I'll ask Mr. Carrington just to give the board a thumbnail sketch of the other changes that are being considered to, I think it's the motel rooms, but, but Mark, if you would give the board that, that information, please.
Okay. Excuse me. Mainly, in my opinion, these are minor changes, one being to add beach is the allowed, is an allowed accessory use under Section Three. That's no big deal. They will be changing, under Section Four, the acreage density, the percentage list. Common areas would go from sixty-eight point two percent to seventy-three point nine percent. Commercial, not changing the number of units, but the, um, acreage would go from four point one eight to, excuse, excuse me, from five point oh eight to four point one eight acres, dropping from nine point one percent to seven point five percent. The residential density, still having forty-four units. So, it would go from six point seven percent to nine point four percent of the total area. Infrastructure would drop from sixteen percent to nine point two percent of the total area. And before, we had talked about having different phases of the project, and now it will just be developed as one, one phase for everything.
So, Mr. Carrington, Carrington, what you were just saying, Mr. Chairman, sorry, is basically what they're asking for in terms of the PUD portion of, of the change is making more green space, allowing for more green space.
Basically, you would have more green space, and that mainly falls from, you know, before they had a forty-unit hotel and sixty cottages around the lake, and they're collapsing, doing away with those cottages, making one, one hundred-unit hotel in one building. So, that gives them the opportunity to have more green space in the overall development.
Okay, thank you.
And, Mr. Chairman, there are no other questions from the board. Mr. Carrington, the second procedural point, now that we've had public comment, and there's been the discussion back and forth between the board and the applicant, now would be an appropriate time. If the board had, or, excuse me, if the public has any specific questions that they want the developer to respond to, they can pose those questions to the board, and then the board will request an answer from the applicant. So, now would be an appropriate time to call for those specific questions from the public, if they have any.
Okay. Commissioner Lockley?
Yeah. And, you know, I didn't finish. When, when they came and brought their proposal, don't remember right, that era was on for trailers and everything.
From numbers?
It, it wasn't zone for no, it wasn't nothing in there saying you had to put new trailer in that zone. It just said it was on for trailer. So, back then, when they come with the developer, I said, "That'll make the place look better." That's what I see. And, but, me, if I know all this, I wish somebody went in and just went and got some of the third-hand trailers and just put them in there and fill it up. Wouldn't, couldn't that have been safe? I mean, so, that...
Yes, ma'am. If you're going, if you're going to speak, you're going to come forward to the microphone, please. Sorry. Thank you. We just want to make sure everybody hears you.
Yes, thank you.
Please state your name for the record.
Yes. My name is Josephine Puck, and I'm here representing myself and my husband Ronald. We live on seventy-two South Bay Shore Drive, where we have just moved in two months ago, where we built our brand-new house. I have a question for Mr. D.
If you address it. To the board, then the board will collect questions, and then we'll give him a chance to respond.
All right.
Okay.
Um, I know there's a lot, we're builders. I know there's a lot of preliminaries to these projects. We've been builders for forty-five years in this country and in New Zealand. And my question to Mr. D is, when, I know that he has to do preliminaries, but when does he expect to actually break ground if this is all approved by you people?
Okay. All right, is that your only question?
At the second.
Okay. All right, well, we're collecting the questions, and then we'll have him come and answer them all at one time, if that's okay.
Okay, well, I don't know of any I have read at the second, but in relation to his answer, I might have more.
Okay, well, that's fine. If that's all you have for now, we'll see if anyone else has any questions.
Okay, do I sit down now?
If you don't mind, ma'am.
Okay, thank you very much.
Good morning. My name is Wayne Gleisman. I live in Las Prisas subdivision, uh, just off South Bay Shore. I'm not at all opposed to the resort community. As Mr. Jones and Mr. Lockley have previously pointed out, it's a significant upgrade from the original zoning capacity for that plot of land. My question, uh, that I'd like the commission to ask is if you, uh, consider an ingress only on South Bay Shore, would it also include a deceleration lane as created and funded by the developer, including, uh, realignment of sidewalk, crosswalks, and preservation of the stormwater ditch in that location? Thank you.
Anyone else?
Okay, I want to ask a question about this Y, but if you'll let me go up to the map, I'll speak loudly enough you can hear me. Can you come inside right here and pull it up?
You could have.
So, you, you have the Y right here, right?
Yes, sir.
And you're saying there's a pad thing in the middle, and that's owned by the private. But why not cut out this top part of the Y, leave the bottom part exactly as it is without any change to it at all, and then let the developer come into that point right there and just take the asphalt out of this lane, cut it out altogether on the north side? That's my question. Why don't you do that? Then you'd, you wouldn't have to mess with, uh, buying the property in the middle or that private owner right there. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? Anyone else? Mr. Monk, does anyone in the room have a question?
I will, sir.
They'd like to have answered.
Anyone online attending virtually would like, uh, have any questions for the board or the developer? Please indicate by raising your hand on your device. No hands raised, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Mr. Durbin? I think the first question was about when you might potentially be breaking ground, sir.
So, I would tell you earlier, a month ago, but with the banking crisis right now, um, things are kind of delayed a little bit. I think the earliest we would break ground, because we still have some more engineering to do, as you know, with the East Point Water Sewer. Probably the earliest we would break ground, August, September, would be my best guess. I'm not, don't hold me to that, but that'd be my best guess. I forgot the other question.
Uh, the...
Oh, the, um...
Intersection.
Intersection.
Oh, the intersection, privately owned. I can't touch the intersection. Um, on the, on the, um, turning lane.
Yep.
I believe that's what it was.
Yes.
So, we actually already discussed doing that. Um, we would, we would have to come back to the county, get approval to put piping in, to close that drainage and cover that. We would do that to, for, again, safety reasons. I don't believe we have to do that, but we already thought about doing that. It'd be more of a, a, an easier ingress to do that. And we would have done that with egress as well, but if it's ingress only, it'll be even easier to do that.
And would it put a crosswalk, I guess, across?
We talked about doing a crosswalk if, um...
To do from sidewalk to sidewalk?
Well, there is no sidewalk on the north side, but across the, um, let's call it east-west, yes, we would. And we'd also have a stop sign. Well, we don't need that one now, but we'd have a, um, what do you call it, safety light?
Yeah.
For the entrance. Yes, we would.
And, uh, I think the other one was about...
And we would do the same thing on Begonia as well.
Part that's not your property, and that's, there's been some discussion, and people have asked me about it, about completely closing off, I guess, the road and making it where people could use the Y to come into you, but they couldn't go the other way. Uh, again, I don't...
That's not...
I'm, I'm not aware of any other area in this county we've ever mentioned taking a county road that actually is a good county road, and it is paved and is well-maintained, and somehow cutting that road off to the public to, just because you don't want somebody coming down your road. And I would remind, and I'm not trying to be remiss, but I would remind everyone at the last public meeting, Commissioner Amison brought up a traffic study that was performed by the Sheriff's Department last summer on South Bay Shore that had in excess of 8,000 visitors in a three-day span. And I also had a traffic study done on Patton as part of the, uh, push to try to get it repaved. It's on DOT's five-year plan, needs to be widened and resurfaced, Patton Drive. That in this, in a same three-day span scenario had 26,000. So, I understand that there's people on the roads, but that's kind of what the roads are there for. I just wanted to make that statement to, because there was a question about closing off or blocking the Y, so it will allow for, if you wouldn't allow you to continue to go down South Bay Shore Road, basically, so...
And that's not my road.
Well, that's, that's not you, sir. You can answer that. That's us, in other means, so...
Is that it?
Yes, sir. If I was a man?
Uh, there was a question, I believe, by Mr. Gleisman. He was speaking much quicker than I could write, but it was something to the effect of if, if the, um, the entry on South Bay Shore is entry only and not an exit, do you have any plan for a deceleration plan or any amendments or changes?
That's what I, that's what I discussed earlier.
Okay, all right. Then that was it, just those three questions? Uh, commissioners, unless y'all have any further questions for the applicants, you're in a procedural position to make a decision. You, you've, uh, had public comment, and you have allowed further questions for the developer.
All right, well, I'm not in a position to make a motion or a second today, but I hope the proceedings today at least give them access to their property. It's, uh, almost 60 acres of property. Uh, it's one of the, when it gets built out, it's potentially going to have as many homeowners in that parcel as there is on most of the rest of the road. So, I do believe he, he does have a right to have access. Now, what that looks like, that, I'm one of five, but that, that's my hope for today, anyway.
I'll make a motion we give them access to their property.
We have a motion to approve the access.
Ingress and egress on South Bay Shore, or ingress only?
I, whatever y'all want to do, as long as they get access.
I'll, I'll say if, if it can be an ing- ingress, uh, uh, egress, or, I mean, ingress.
Ingress on South Bay Shore only?
And it would exit only out, out Begonia. I believe that's the only way we're going to have peace on this matter. If not, we're going to be doing this again and again and again and again and again. And I believe that's, that, from some of the folks that I've talked to, I believe that, that's, you know, I think that would make some of the residents happy on South Bay Shore. But we need to make sure we do this where there's language in there, that there won't be any amending that decision, uh, and there's no room, there's no gray area. I see the attorney sitting over here wanting to jump out of chairs. I'm going to let...
No, not jump out of my chair, but I want to clarify two things. One, um, on, on the motion, the second, that includes not just the ingress from South Bay Shore. Does the motion, the second, also include the amendments to the PUD that were put on the record by Mr. Carrington earlier?
And they had to be on the same motion?
Yeah, yeah, be on the same motion and second.
I amend the motion.
All right, so we have a motion to approve by Commissioner Lockley, a second by Commissioner Amison, that we would have.
I amend the motion to what lawyer?
Okay.
Well, I just wanted to make sure what the board's doing.
Well, I'm fixing to state it, and you tell me if I'm wrong. So, they would give the developer ingress on South Bay Shore Drive to his property with the understanding that egress would be on, uh, Begonia Street?
Begonia or Kramer, or whatever public street to the north.
Yeah, yeah.
There was no limitation on what...
That's true, no, he did, he did ask for that, for possibility of egress somewhere else.
Correct, so there was not a limitation in the motion, the second, as far as egress. It's just that the entryway on South Bay Shore would be limited to entry only.
Okay, okay, that, I'm sorry, that was my question, because you want to keep, I'm wrong, you guys go. You want to keep Begonia as the service and construction entrance, because you don't want construction trucks coming in off of South Bay, Bay Shore. So, I, I kind of want to make sure we, we have all that in the back of our minds, too. So, basically, Begonia will be, um, entrance and exit, you know? And hence, uh, Chairman, that's why you're asking to widen the road and to pave it, because that's a two-way, that's going to be two-way, and that's construction trucks coming in that, and service trucks in the future, that people will be exiting, exiting at the same time. So, you want to make sure that, that road is wide enough to handle both. South Bay Shore will be entrance only. I just, I want to keep that construction entrance and the service entrance in the back of your minds as you, as you think about this.
But you've got to realize also, that's already a service road. It services...
Yes.
Uh, the, uh, businesses right there, which I know for a fact, whenever somebody backs into a dollar store, it's a semi, or, you know, they're not, they're not running up there in a pickup truck or, or Toyota Camry. But, uh, but also, uh, it, it doesn't, uh, doesn't Jason them access their back part from there, too? So, I mean, it's not like it's a one-way dirt road. That's what I would say.
Oh, no, but it...
Begonia is already an established two-way road. It's not in, in complete disrepair. Uh, I mean, it could definitely...
Take some improvements a little bit, yeah.
You know, get a little lipstick, but it's not...
Yeah, no.
Uh, it's not a bad road.
I, I just wanted to keep it a two-way, Commissioner.
Okay, well, I didn't want the rest of the commissioners sitting here thinking that, you know, we, we on a dirt road over here.
No, no. It's probably not wide enough, but no, that's, yeah, because it was done many years ago, and the standard was not the same width as, as it is today. You know, that's the reason I brought that up. So, let me clarify. So, the motion, Commissioner Lockley, is, if I, as I understand it, based on you saying that you're willing to go with the other comments that have been made, is that we're going to give ingress on South Bay Shore, and Begonia can be used for ingress and egress, is the way I understand it. Is that okay with you?
Yes, sir, that's...
Yeah, that'd be fine, as long as they get in.
And you as well, Commissioner Amison?
Yeah.
All right. Any more discussion before we vote?
Yeah, that, that, what we realize, this is the start of a banal in that area. That place, I mean, you, you, you're looking at woods that have been there more, longer than me, you know? I'm setting the club. You're looking at 100-year-olds, just bushes there finna, finna be re, finna be built up. And the way they building it, it's going to be built up in a business, and it's going to be good for the county. It's going to be good for people all the way around. Just, just wait till the end, and you'll see.
Any more discussion before we vote?
Just one clarification on Commissioner Amison's comment about written and sewn can't change. I mean, just, just to make sure we're clear on the record, this board cannot either tie its hands or the hands of a future board. So, if someone applies for an amendment, they can apply. Doesn't mean it'll ever be granted. Doesn't, I mean, it could, it might not. But the, the action today is not, you know, written in stone and immutable, and is not subject to consideration by this board for some future amendment. I mean, I don't have any reason to believe that, don't have any knowledge of any such requests, but just as a general matter, this board can always consider an application to amend an ordinance in the future. So, anyway, thank you, Commissioner and Chair.
All right. Seeing no further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That's your names. So, this public hearing is now concluded. Before we get to the next public hearing, let's take a five-minute recess. So, this is a, uh, ordinance re-zoning eight point zero three acres of land potentially. Turner Schuler, or who's gonna speak? Is that you, Ms. Courtney?
Yeah.
All right, go ahead, please.
So, this is, um, a property that used to be owned by the same owner. It was split out. He's going from R one A to R one. There's not much difference in the, the change, it's just the density. And he's going from subdivision to just single-family home. This is his piece right here.
All right. Commissioners, do you have any questions for Ms. Courtney?
Mr. Chairman, I just want to verify with Courtney. When I was researching this, I just wanted to understand the difference between what the applicant is requesting and the difference from the R one A to the R one. It's just simply, like you said, density, right? We're going from a different lot size. I just want to make a note for that for the record, for the public.
Yeah, so, are, the zoning that currently is allows for three per acre, correct?
Yes, in R one A.
Right, and he's zoning to put this all together into one under R one, so it's less dense?
Correct, less density.
Any other questions for Ms. Courtney, Commissioner? All right, should we proceed to?
Public comment.
Public comment first? Okay. Is there anyone in the room that wishes to comment on this publicly before we proceed? Anyone at all? Uh, Ms. Courtney, can you see if there's anyone on Zoom?
If there's anyone who has, wants to make a comment via Zoom, you can use the raise your hand feature.
No, okay. Yes, sir.
I was just.
He's the representative.
Okay. Well, I thought, you were standing there, I thought you had something you wanted to say. You're just dying to get it out, so I wouldn't go hold you back.
I can sit down.
He might be a little scared from the last one.
I am scared to be up here.
We don't buy, we just act like we do, Mr. Thomas. If you would, I do have a question though, uh, or just something to share. So, it's my understanding that on this property, you're planning on building one home, correct?
That is the current intent, yes.
Yes. We're not trying to hold you that, I'm just asking the question. And there was some discussion, because we've had several issues in Las Briesas with stormwater, and you had mentioned to me that you were doing something to direct stormwater to this property. Is one of the other reasons you were asking to rezone, is that true?
That wasn't actually the main reason. I mean, we did build eighteen homes in Las Briesas, so we're very familiar with that, that multiple issues over the last three years. This particular eight acres was originally going to be Phase Two, and it was three acres, three, three units per acre, but just in our evaluation of just the viability of it as a subdivision, it's got some wetlands on it. We just determined after speaking with East Point Water and Sewer, the cost of running, extending the sewer and all the other stuff with the subdivision, it just wasn't viable. So, we do a lot of building on the island and we kind of need a home base off the island to take a break sometimes, so I think we're looking to just do a personal home in the middle.
Yeah, and those, those costs have went up with East Point Water and Sewer, and everybody else is doing the water and sewer business. They have not, they've done, like every other industry, they've went up. The only reason I was asking and make sure we put that on the record is just, number one, so the commissioners would kind of know what's going on. I will tell you, we do have on our local mitigation strategy, an attempt to find grant funds to help with that area. So, it's not that we're completely unacknowledging it. It goes to a lot of history, and I'm just sharing it to make sure all the commissioners are aware of. That's all I'm doing.
And we appreciate that, and we've tried to work with the county as well, so we appreciate that, but I think the less density, I mean, if I remember one thing from the last meeting, there was, there was a push for less density. You know, so we're trying to, in this case, we're going to less density.
All right. Anyone else have questions?
I'm scared to even ask, but ingress, egress?
Well, I'll tell you, the, we are ingress, our ingress and egress is Las Briesas Drive, which is a public, it's a public road, so it's not a private road, and we had to obtain an easement, an access easement from the HOA Association, which we've done. So, we will, we will become, one house, people will be coming in on Las Briesas Drive.
Any other questions, Commissioners?
How is the drainage?
Sir?
How is the drainage?
On this, on this site, there's, actually Thurman might be able to speak better, there's about four acres, I think a wetland of four acres of upland, so there's, there's no drainage for us for one house. I mean, it's, it's about as good as you can get for one house. Subdivision would have been a little bit more challenging.
Yeah, that subdivision would have made the area a lot worse with drainage issues, because they are currently having drainage issues.
Right, one house, you should have a lot more pervious area, I mean theoretically.
Any other questions, Commissioners? So, now, will you, sir, what's the next step?
Public comment, and then no more comment from the board to the applicant, you're in a position to make a decision.
Okay. Pleasure, the board? I have a motion to approve by Commissioner Amison.
Second.
Second by two, Commissioner Sanders and Commissioner Lockley. Any discussion before we vote? All in favor? All opposed? That's unanimous, and that concludes our public hearings.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you, sir. Uh, sir, do we need to do anything to be able to go back to Ms. Lally, or are we good?
Yeah, she's gonna share her screen now.
Okay, cool. That's why I was asking, I knew she probably wanted to share her screen and like that, okay. All right, Ms. Angela Lally, Flood Plan Administrator for Franklin County, here to give us a FEMA flood map update. Please proceed, Ms. Angela.
All right. Oh, no, it's not on there. It's not giving me that one. Oh, okay, I see, thank you.
It is.
This one? All right. All right, good morning. Are we afternoon yet, maybe?
Close.
Close. Okay, so I'm here to give you guys an update on the flood maps. We, as some of you may remember, we had a flood map that presented itself in 2019, and we looked at it back in 2021, 2022, and we were, what are you doing? Anyway, we were concerned about the map that was the proposed map to change. So, I have a little, I put together this little slideshow that hopefully we can get pulled up here to hopefully explain it and answer some questions, and then if you have thoughts at the end that you want to chime in on. I'm gonna stop sharing and you try to reshare. See, that part's not even coming up, Michael. Her regular screen is not even coming up on the slideshow. I sent it to you yesterday, can I, can I use yours, maybe?
Where is it? Ms. Angela?
Yes, sir.
While they're looking to try to help you with that, I'll ask you a question.
Okay.
So, on the slides, it's got the orange shaded areas, or they're called unrated A flood zone?
Yes, sir.
And it said these unrated zones have not had a detailed analysis performed by FEMA.
Yes, sir.
But some of, still the same area that was reflected on the map that they did in 2019 that was very aggressive.
Right.
So, I'm wondering, especially land that's on airport property, that's by the runways?
Yes, sir.
How has that not had a detailed analysis performed if it was on the original thing that was all included?
I don't know why FEMA did not choose to do a more detailed analysis on it. I would like to be able to go through it on the slideshow, it would, it just makes it easier to understand. But basically, the, when you see that, all that orange shaded area that you're looking at on there, is, think of it like a giant question mark. So, basically FEMA feels like there might be some areas of concern, which I think I can agree on in some cases, but they haven't done enough study, they don't have enough data to back that up. So, they put it in this unrated zone, which, like you said, they were very aggressive with it in the 2019 map, which is what alerted me, you know, and I, I mean, when I found out that we could, we could have the conversation and hopefully get it amended, you know? We definitely wanted to jump on that, so, so yes, I agree with you on that. But the, the main thing that I wanted to demonstrate is the, that unrated area that we were looking at that was gonna be the majority of Commissioner Amison's district, I mean, the majority of it was going to be put in that unrated A zone.
Yes.
It's now mostly, most of that new area is removed. Most of that new unrated area has been removed.
Right, well, I know that it's not up to you to answer, but I guess the thing that's really concerning to me is, so they had this 2019 map, and they were all, that was it, they were all ready to move forward, they were gonna call it a day.
Right.
We asked them to look at it, we asked it to be, you know, verified or whatever, they come up with a new map, but they're still saying on the new map, there's areas they hadn't done research on.
Right.
I guess that's what's really, I'm like, so how many times do we have to ask them before they're gonna have a detail?
So, the, the new map was not where they, they did not go back and do more research. The new map was basically a compromise, because we went to them and said, hey, we have some concerns here, you know, you've got all this huge area that you're, you're basically putting a blanket of a giant question mark on for these folks, and, you know, it's gonna impact, there's hundreds of homes and properties that were gonna be impacted by that, and they would have, you know, most likely, most of those homes would have been considered non-conforming, because they would have been below that three-foot-off-the-ground requirement. So, you know, it would have had a major impact, especially for folks that have any kind of federally-backed mortgage, because they would have ended up, you know, with astronomical rates for flood insurance premiums.
They would have.
You know, so it had, it had a huge impact for the community as a whole, for individuals, but, but for the community as a whole, and specifically our airport property, you know? You know, anytime you have a property like that, that is vital to the community, you want to make sure that you, you're, you're planning ahead and you're looking at it, and, and, you know, trying to, the goal, and really one main goal I wanted to bring to you today, is planning ahead, because these map changes are going to come, they're going to continue as much development as we've had in Franklin County over the last several years. These map changes are gonna continue, you know? We can expect to see them roughly every five years, they can come sooner. So, that's something that we have to plan for. So, anytime we have a property that we think, you know, we might want to build something on, or, you know, in this case, it was the airport, you know, we might, we might need grants for some kind of future use out there, and anytime it's in a special flood hazard area, that's gonna have a really big impact on grant funding. Another thing that's very important, and they're really not specific to the airport area, but just in general, if you, if you have a property, say you, say you decide to build a new facility for whatever purpose, if you decide to build a new facility, you have to, you really need to think about the impacts of, if we have a storm, if it's a, if it's a critical facility and we have a storm, it's not just did we meet the flood requirements, it's can the public access that building after a storm? You know, I mean, if it has to be built up off the ground because we chose to put it, use this, okay. If, if it has to be built up off of the ground because we have to, you know, build it in a special flood hazard area, you have to think about the building access, you know? Did a ramp get ripped away? Did we have to have an elevator? Is it functional? You know, so you, it's really a good idea to build outside of the special flood hazard area when we can, and when, when a situation like the airport comes up, where they're looking to take what wasn't in a special flood hazard area, and they're looking to put it into that, you know, being, being proactive and having things like a topographical survey, having that information ahead of the game, so that when, when they come to us and they say, here's what we think, we can say, wait just a minute, we've got some documentation here that says that's not the case, you know? So, you know, protecting ourselves, having, having, making sure that we have a current and viable stormwater plan, things like that will really make the difference for future map changes. So, I, we kind of went over that, everything I think that I was wanting to talk about here, so, I don't know if there, was there any of the slides that you wanted me to, like, go over specifically, since we kind of capped over everything?
Commissioners, I've filed the slides, anything you want to know in particular?
I'd like for her, just, just so the, the audience can see, show them what, what the federal government wanted to go to.
The 2019.
Okay, okay.
Just so everybody can appreciate what you've done here.
All right, so this is the effective map, this map's been in effect since 2014. This is, now, this is just the, the greater Appalachia Cola area, this is mostly Commissioner Amison's district and a little bit of Commissioner Lockley's, but mostly, mostly outskirts of Appalachia.
And for the record, Angela, for, for the public to view, the A, the, that's the airport, for anybody that needs to know, the, the little, that's the runways of the airports, just to give them a generalized.
Yes, this area right here.
Idea of what we're looking at here on the map.
I can't do it with my left hand.
And I, and I hate to interrupt you, because you're the expert on this, but the orange, let them know exactly what they're looking at, that way they can.
Okay, yes, sir.
Appreciate the after or.
Yes, sir. So, this, this orange shaded area here is the, is that question mark area that we were talking about, this is the, the unrated zone. So, you'll see these shades of green and this unshaded area, that's all X and shaded X, and then you'll see some of these other colors down here, blue and purple. So, this blue is a rated A zone, that's called AE, the E means they have established elevations, and that the unrated A, it doesn't have that E accompanied by it, so it is not, doesn't have those established elevations. And then the V zone is the velocity zone. But what we're really looking at is these orange areas. So, if you'll notice here, there's a lot of the orange area here, but it's mostly in the woods, it's not impacting as, as much, you know, neighborhoods, it's not really having a huge impact on us now. And then these areas here at the airport, that's mostly drainage areas. So, if you compare that to, this is what they come with, to us with in 2019. So if you compare that to, this is what they come with, to us with in 2019. And when I realized the implications of this, how that was going to impact our community, I started doing a lot of research to see what we could do to slow this down and, you know, reverse course. So, um, here's a closer look of neighborhoods. Um, this is out the Squire Road area right here. Um, this is at the end of Brownsville on Thomas Drive, that area. This is Kevin Road right here. So as you can see, all of those orange shaded areas we were looking at, those properties were going to be moved into that unrated A zone, that question mark area. Um, and if that had happened, any house that wasn't built three feet above grade would have been a non-compliant structure. And it would have, you know, if they had a, a mortgage, a federally backed mortgage, it, it would have really cost them in insurance premiums. Um, so then this is the new map that, this is, this is the compromise after, after going back and forth and, and negotiating and, you know, them hearing our plea, this is what they came back with. And it's not perfect, um, but it's a lot better. You know, I mean, and I'll just do a quick, that's what it was. And this is what it is now. So I mean, it's, it's drastically different. Um, has much less of that unrated A zone. This is the same three neighborhoods that I had in that other slide. And as you can see, those homes, the majority of those homes are not going to be impacted the way they were before. So while we still see a lot of the, the orange area, that unrated area, uh, there's, it's not going to be impacting as many existing homes. And that's the main thing that we really were worried about. Because, you know, if these homes had flooded multiple times, then I would feel like that, you know, FEMA had a really good stance on it and, you know, maybe they needed to, maybe it needed to be evaluated and looked at. But these homes haven't flooded multiple times. This is not, this is not an area that, that I know of any flooding in. So, you know, that's worth noting. Um, so here's a closer look at the airport. Um, this is the preliminary map over here. So you can see all these buildings down here, all of the, um, all the hangars and everything, they, most all of them would have ended up being in that special flood hazard area. You know, that comes with much more insurance to the county for flood purposes. It also comes with, um, more, uh, regulations as far as future builds, future plans, whatever we might, you know, try to expand and all. And it, and it has some major implications with grants because grants don't really, they, they don't like to put money into a special flood hazard area. So, um, we worked with them and this, this is the, the new, um, map that they came up with. Again, it's not perfect, but if you'll notice, most all these areas in here, most of that's drainage. Most of that is purposely that way to have that water runoff go away from the runways and away from these buildings. So it was really done that way on purpose. Um, you know, it's, it's important for us to evaluate and, and make sure that all of our stormwater plans and our drainage and everything stay current. So, so that we, you know, if there's a problem coming, if there's, if there's something that we might have planned, that we go ahead and, you know, try to be proactive on it. And also for the flood map purposes, because they can change it at any time, you know, they, they, they were willing to compromise this time, but you know, they might come back in two years and say, okay, we still feel like your airport area is, is an area of concern. So we're going to throw it back in that unrated A zone. So if we go ahead and we are proactive and we, you know, we get a, I, I would suggest a topographical survey on this particular property especially. Get some boots on the ground. One, one part of the conversation with FEMA was that they're, they never put boots on the ground out there. Well, anybody that has been here for any length of time knows that airport's one of the highest properties in our county. I mean, that's a really high property. So, um, we all know if, if it floods, we're all in trouble.
Ms. Angela, I'll ask you a question.
Yeah.
Because, and I'm trying to remember, I've been trying to remember since you were talking. It seems like to me, and, and not only so here, that's all to make sure it's mentioned. It seems like to me that there was some big discrepancy between what FEMA was saying, the elevation was at the airport versus what the FAA was saying was at the airport.
There was, it was very drastic.
That's how we get grant dollars from them. So I just don't believe the FAA was off by seven feet.
Yeah, it was very drastic.
Sixteen feet, right?
I cannot remember the exact numbers, but I think you're pretty close to accurate there, yeah.
FEMA was saying it was sixteen feet above, sixteen foot elevation. But the FAA was saying the, the airport, the majority of the airports at twenty-three feet elevation.
I do remember something really close, yeah.
Seven feet. I mean, that, that might be something, and I agree with what you're saying, that if we had our own topographical survey done, we can put that to bed, whether it's sixteen foot, twenty-three foot, or nineteen foot.
Right.
And I think that would give us a leg up on any future discussions on, you know, increased flood zones or that area. Not just for the airport, but all the area around it.
Yes, sir. So it's also worth noting that FEMA does recognize stormwater plans. So not just for the airport, but for any property at all, um, that we currently have buildings on or that we might purchase in the future, or we might build in the future. You know, having, having the topographical surveys, having the stormwater plans, having all of that documentation in hand. You know, when, when a map comes through like this and we disagree with it, you know, we've already been proactive. We already have some answers and we can go have a conversation with them and maybe save some money that way because we don't have to do the back and forth as much if we already have evidence that we can present upfront. So that's just something to consider.
Ms. Angela, is that something we can put on a future agenda to consider ordering a topographical survey for the airport?
Yes, sir.
They told us, you know, about a couple, two, two years ago, said if some of this stuff wasn't going to be on that study. What you talking about, huh? It'll be on the next.
Yes, that's what they did. They delayed.
Yes.
Yeah.
They put it off.
But in between them coming back, I think we'd be better off to perform our own survey.
Yeah.
You know what I mean? Yes, it might cost us something, but there's a lot of potential future for Franklin County right there, so.
Absolutely.
Just have to look at the potential cost down the road if, if, if they're, uh, if they do designate that. I mean, that would be huge insurance wise, just to the county, not, not just to the county, which is on the taxpayer, but then the taxpayers are going to be in trouble, the ones that have mortgages that are federally insured.
Yes, sir.
Their insurance would just be, I can't even imagine. Like I told you the other day, I'd give you a medal if I could, but.
They do so much.
We might name a road after you.
They do so much and then they make sure they have a job later on.
Angela, is there any other parts of the county that had this kind of discrepancy with the flood map?
Um, no ma'am. So there was another proposed map change, um, for Carabelle. Um, I, I know that it, I know that Commissioner Ward's district was touched by that. I don't know if yours was. I don't think it was, but I could be mistaken on that. Um, but we talked with the city of Carabelle and we talked with some residents over there. And everybody seemed pleased with that, with the way that side of the county was, was done. Um, I'll be happy to go over that with you, you know, if you want to come in with me, meet with me one day. But, um, it was, it was positive on that side of the county. It was all positive feedback. We didn't have any complaints at all. So, um, the decision was made by, I think it was FEMA that made the decision to continue on with that, that plan. Um, so they'll keep the nineteen maps for that side of the county. But then they've got these updated ones that they've accepted that everything's greenlit on for, for now. So, so the map that I just showed you, which is this one. So this is going, this is the revised preliminary flood map. So it, it is in place, I guess now as far as in the preliminary stages of it. Um, if there's anything that anybody is not satisfied with, um, we do have the option to appeal it. Um, if there's any area of the airport here specifically that, you know, the county is like, I don't like that, I don't think that's right. Or alternatively, even if you do think it's right, but you want to put some extra stormwater planning in that area because you think there might be a future use for that spot, um, we have options here. So, um, you know, those types of things can be discussed, but, but there is a timeline on that. Um, I think this map will take roughly a year, year and a half to become effective. So, um, I, I don't remember the exact appeal process timeline there, but sooner the better. The sooner we start that train rolling, the better off we'll be.
Thank you.
Ms. Angela, if you, if you can find out for sure what that timeline is.
Yes, sir.
Send out an email to all the commissioners so we can look at it again, because I was unaware that we could still make any kind of challenge.
Yes, sir, we can.
We definitely need to look at it. But keep in mind too, that all the yellows still are unrated, correct?
Yes, sir.
You know what I mean? So that maybe a topographical survey would do away with that issue, but.
So we can choose to do, um, a topographical survey of the airport area, any, any county properties that are impacted. Um, additionally, um, individuals can choose to do that with their private property. So I would encourage the public, you know, if, if you own property in this area, you know, see how this is going to impact you. You know, reach out to the office, you know, the building department. You can talk to either of the permitting clerks or myself. And we'll be happy to walk you through the, um, you know, how to get your specific property. And, um, you know, if, if it's impacting you in a way that you're not satisfied with and you feel like, you know, you feel like it's not accurate, you, you do have a path forward to appeal it, so.
What do I challenge everything in orange?
I would definitely encourage that, yes.
Is that orange or yellow? You said yellow. My wife says I'm colorblind, so I'm just trying to make sure.
It's, what is the?
I don't know. I think it looks orange.
What is the rate for the flood insurance without rating it or not?
Do you mean with the CRS?
Yes.
Yeah.
So we're at a seven still?
Still at a seven?
Yes, sir. I had, um, the, the cycle visit I had in December and we stayed at a seven.
I got a quick question.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, if you don't mind, like going forward, anything that, that they, let's just say this, this flood map goes through in a couple of years and then we decide we want to challenge something, uh, we can, we can have that if, if we can come up with the right elevation.
Absolutely.
Okay.
So at any point. At any point, we, for a county property or any, any privately owned property, um, if you have evidence that the flood map does not really reflect the topography of your property, um, you have every opportunity to, to, um, typically you reach out to a surveyor to get that, the evidence. And then the surveyor would usually, I believe, recommend if they, you know, if they think that you have a good shot at it or not. But you can, you can have it amended. You can have your property amended. It's called a letter of map amendment or a letter of map revision. So yes, that's always on the table, even if you're not in a, you know, a period of, um, waiting on these maps to come through.
Thank you.
Any other questions, commissioners, for Ms. Angela?
What can we do to get it down below a seven?
Um, I'm working on it. I'm working on it. I actually had a conversation with, um, with the representative, with the CRS. Um, had a conversation with them in December when they came. She was great. And, um, she, she thinks that we probably could get below a seven. Really, it just requires more attention to the details. And, um, every, every day I learn something new. So, um, the more I learn about it and the more attention I can pay to those, those little details in the CRS, the better I'll get at it. And I feel confident I can get it down at least to a six.
You can do it. I got, I trust.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Angela. We appreciate your time.
All right, thank you.
Appreciate the update.
Do I need to exit out of?
You know, all you high country folks need to, you know, have a little special place in your heart going forward for District Four because we are a little, you know, for drainage issues.
You got to have a grant to address the drainage.
As far as Franklin County goes, y'all are high country.
Oh, Lord, I don't know if that's true.
Little sympathetic ears, all I'm asking for.
All right. So the next thing, sorry, we've flip flopped on the agenda a couple of times. We're doing the, the bid openings?
Yep.
Okay, commissioners, uh, we do need to request a, uh, waiving the bid formalities, um, if that can be allowed, because this is the third time that we have gone to bid for this project. And we finally have received a bid, but it came in ten minutes late, so. With, you know, of course, legal advice from Attorney Schuler if that is allowed, or if we can make an exception.
It came in ten minutes late. When was, sorry?
It was actually due by four o'clock.
When was it postmarked?
It was hand delivered. So they were ten minutes late. Uh, it was due by four.
Was there trafficking involved?
Yeah. And this is the only one.
They couldn't get down Leslie Street, so they had to go around the post office.
That's probably true.
He got confused.
Mr. Chairman, the standard, uh, language in all of your bids has a provision that says that the board reserves the right, in this case, to waive technical bid formalities. In this case, um, as Erin has said, it arrived ten minutes late on the day that it was due. And the board has routinely in the past waived the, the formality for the timely delivery and accepted the bid and opened it. So my recommendation would be that by motion of vote, you waive the bid formality, accept the bid, uh, that was delivered ten minutes late and authorize staff to open it and read the bid out to the, to the board and the public.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question. And just to clarify, Erin, this is, we've been waiting on this bid for a long time. We had to re, basically get rid of all the previous bids.
We've never received any.
Never received, okay. The only one that we've got.
Yes, yes.
And this has been going on for a while. Okay. I make a motion to waive the bid policy.
Thank you.
And this is actually the county's, uh, first project that will be fully funded by Triumph.
Triumph.
Hold on. So we have a motion to waive the bid formalities by Commissioner Ward, seconded by Commissioner Anderson. Any discussion before we vote?
Yeah, ten minutes. I mean, anything to them.
You're right.
I'm just excited we got to.
All right. All in favor? All opposed? Please proceed, Mr. President.
And you said this is out of Lakeland? This MDM Services?
Uh, this is MDM Services Incorporated. And let's see where, what their address is.
He said he came from Lakeland, that means from Lakeland.
Okay, yep, company name, MDM Services Incorporated, 1055 Kathleen Road, Lakeland, Florida, 33805. And let's see, and the scope of this project, I'll have to read that part. Myself, um, let's see. Okay, this project generally includes what is not necessarily limited to the following tasks. Construction of a new fuel farm with concrete foundation, a 12,000 gallon jet A and 12,000 gallon AB gas tanks, fuel system equipment, self-serve terminal, fencing, drainage improvements, and backup generator. And this is at the Appalachia Cola Regional Airport.
Got a bid, Ma'am?
While she's looking, commissioners, know that John Collins did a lot of begging and pleading to get this one in, so, yeah.
Is this our tardy bid?
Yes. Yes. There was only one, and this is the only one for the fuel farm. But, um, but I, no, I know your question's going to be.
This is, this is the only one?
Yes. And this is the one that John had to beg and plead.
I was thinking we had, uh, that he'd already turned that in and we had another one show up ten minutes late.
No, this is the only one. Know that, uh, John, I think there's someone from Avcon online. I think it's Matt Parfit, I believe. But, um, John said to let you guys know that FAA and FDOT will be good with just this one bid, especially with the history we've had, how many times we've sent a bid.
This is the third time, isn't it?
Third or fourth, yeah, somewhere. After the second one, I lose count, so, yeah.
Mr. President, is there a bid bond?
I'm actually looking for that. I don't, I can't seem to locate one. Okay, well, while we're looking for the bid bond, uh, the actual bid that was submitted is $1,992,725.90. Um, this is unfortunately more than what we had originally anticipated with the Triumph project. Um, but at this point, I would recommend releasing the bid to John Collins with Avcon for his review and recommendation. And then also to give us, uh, a chance to actually talk to the Triumph Board about that. Oh, okay, yep. And the bid bond is included.
Bid bond, yes. I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion when we send it over to John Collins.
Second.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Lockley, seconded by Commissioner Sanders. Any discussion, Commissioner?
I'm not approving.
Sir?
I didn't make a motion to approve it.
No, to approve what was asked. I'm sorry.
To give it to John Collins?
Yes, okay.
Come back with it.
My bad, Commissioner, I'm sorry. So to forward it to the review committee.
You got a second?
Yes. Any more discussion? All in favor? All opposed? That's your name, Miss.
Okay, commissioners, the next project is the Seventh Street West Dune Walkover. At your last meeting, you all authorized accelerated procurement for this dune walkover due to the fact that of the impending sea turtle nesting season, which will begin on May 1st. Seventh Street Dune Walkover, the project consists of the construction of a wood dune walkover at the end of Seventh Street West on St. George Island, specifically between DEP monuments R-79 and R-80. The pile-supported structure will be six foot wide by 146.5 feet long for an area of approximately 879 square feet. Bids were due yesterday by 4:00 PM, and we did not have anyone pass the due date or time on that, so...
Ms. Erin, before you start opening, I want to ask you a question.
Okay.
So in this, what was sent out, the scope of work, we're actually moving the dune walkover further away from the edge of the road to allow for perpendicular parking, correct?
We are.
All right, thank you.
Nobody from the county put in for it.
Yeah, and as part of the permit as well, the field permit, the county will be responsible for the demolition of the existing dune walkover. And then we had also specified that we were going to plant some sea oats, actually, you know, closer towards the end of the dune walkover, and also the addition of parking stops to eliminate encroachment of vehicles onto the dunes as well, so... And that will be bid separately. We're actually contracted separately. I don't think we'll have to go to bid. Okay? And the first bid is going to come from LAG Construction Company LLC from Lynn Haven, Florida. And they did provide, I believe, a cashier's check for their bid bond. Yes, that's correct? Okay? Let's see. The base bid is $144,441. Again, $144,441. And that was for LAG Construction Company LLC from Lynn Haven.
And you said they received the check, Mr. Chairman, sorry, you received the check for their bid bond?
Correct. The second bid is from North Florida Construction Incorporated from Clarksville, Florida. Total base bid, $67,009.30. Again, base bid, $67,009.30. And that is North Florida Construction from Clarksville. And let's see if their bid bond is included.
I have one of those. Bid bond?
Yes, their bid bond is included. And that is North Florida Construction. And the next bid, they did, this is from MKM Quality Construction Incorporated from Mexico Beach, Florida, and they did include a cashier's check for their bid bond, and their total base bid is $72,567. Again, $72,567. And that is for MKM Quality Construction of Mexico Beach.
You got a bond?
They included a cashier's check for their bond.
That first one must got some gold in there.
No talent, Commissioner.
And at this point in time, since we did receive three bids, I would like permission to release these bids to MRD Construction, and if the low bidder, which at this point in time is North Florida Construction Incorporated, if the low bidder does meet all of the requirements, and, you know, MRD has a chance to review, since we did an accelerated procurement, I would like permission for you all to go ahead and proceed with issuing the notice of award and also work on the contract documents once we receive an approval from him.
That makes Mr. Chairman's...
We have a motion to approve what Ms. Chris's comment, by Commissioner Sanders, it was seconded by two, Commissioner Amos and Commissioner Lockley. Any discussion before we vote?
Yeah, they're going to use two before, two for six, it doesn't matter. What are you, people?
Well, if you remember, Commissioner, a while back, we were doing another dune walkover. We had to actually rebid it. We rejected the first bid, because all of them were in similar fashion, and we rebid it, so...
Yep. And actually, the first time that we bid that one, we only received one response, and it was much higher than what we had anticipated.
We hired a cookie player.
It looks up there, but we'll see.
One's using screws, one's using nails.
What was your question?
I was just making a joke. One's using screws, one's using nails. It's a cheap one.
Oh, there's no talent.
They are supposed to all use the same, because we did have about a 100-page bid specification packet that Mike Dabrowski assembled for the project, so...
All right. So pleasure of the board, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That's your name. We'll turn it over to the review committee.
Okay. All right, commissioners, the next one is the Womack Creek Bridge Repair CEI Services. This was a request for qualifications. Let's see here.
There'll be no bid, no amount of this. It's just a qualification, and then goes to the review committee.
And we choose the review committee. I don't think we discussed that previously, so we do have to... Okay. We are seeking civil engineering services relating to the construction, engineering, and inspection for the construction of new head walls, cleaning and repairing the arch CMP culverts, and the addition of barrier walls to replace the guardrails over the culvert. The existing culvert crossing consists of three 142-inch by 91-inch arch CMPs that allow Womack Creek to flow west and east under CR-67. Consideration will be given to only those firms that are qualified pursuant to law and that have been prequalified by FDOT to perform the indicated types of work.
So I would recommend committee, because Mark is the best person, but you, me, and Steve, we'll turn it to Mark.
Okay.
He'll tally it.
Okay. Yep, and this is yours. Okay. Okay. And the first firm is SNME Incorporated from Mariana, Florida. And again, there's no bid bonds or amounts on that, because that's based on qualifications. And the next one is EXP US Services Incorporated from Tallahassee, Florida. The last one is AECom from Tampa, Florida.
You just need a motion to turn it over to the review committee to bring back to us.
That's correct. Bring back a recommendation.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Sanders, seconded by Commissioner Ward. Any discussion, commissioners?
Yeah. Local people getting their information.
Yes, so as best as we can. I mean, we advertise on the website, local paper, yeah.
We also have, they're notified by...
Oh, that's right. Yes. And there is a... Commissioner Lockley, they're notified, once I get a new bid from anybody, I have a notification, said I sent out this mass email to everybody that's registered with the county, and they get an email saying that there's a new bid. I give them a link, and they can go there and look at the bid.
All right, as long as they give...
Yeah, best we can do.
Yep, there's typically four ways, and we also advertise on Panama City News, Herald, and Demand Star, which is a government bid platform.
Yep.
All right, did we ever vote on that, or we just have a motion?
I would ask for a vote. I don't think we voted.
We didn't vote, did we?
Clerk is saying no.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That's your name.
Mr. Chairman, before you proceed, can I ask that our, you know, our friends from Alligator Point have driven all the way there patiently waiting. Can I just go to my report, page 12 or 14, and bring up the Alligator Point public hearing for the, not 14, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Where am I? There I go.
Glad that we're not alone in this, sir.
Asking for a favor, trying to know where I am, and...
Page 11?
Please, somebody help me.
Oh, number 10.
Thank you so much, my friend from Alligator Point.
There you go.
Go ahead.
Okay, there we go. Item 10, I just went right by it. Item 10, page 12.
About Alligator Point while they're here.
I was looking at page 10.
Yeah, item 10. Okay. So, you know, Commissioner Sanders, Attorney Schuler, staff, we receive a lot of emails from Alligator Point, Ballpoint residents, asking the board...
A lot of them.
Go ahead, Attorney Schuler, say a lot, a lot of them, too. Asking the board to consider golf cart ordinance for that area. A few years ago, we did do a traffic study, and for the purpose of a golf cart ordinance, but most residents were not in favor of the engineer's recommended speed reduction, so that kind of ended that process at that time. Commissioner Sanders would like to restart that process, if she'd like to use the city of Caravelle's recently adopted ordinance, and I know I say attached, but I didn't, I apologize, as a starting point for proposed golf cart ordinance for Alligator Point, Ballpoint area, and we'll discuss this matter with the board this morning. Our intent is, if the board agrees, is to have Attorney Schuler set up, schedule, advertise a public hearing, so the public can be heard on this, and then we proceed with a possible golf cart ordinance for that area. Ma'am, correct? Okay.
Mr. Chairman, what it is, I went spoke with the city coordinator, Ms. Courtney Gancy Melander, and she let me have a copy of it. Well, it shows on there that no speed limit had to be taken down to 25, whatever, that it was a basic 35 mile an hour speed limit all the way through, and that the only way that they had to have state involvement in it was on 98, because it did involve 98. So 98, and DOT and the city of Caravelle's going to be doing crosswalks for the golf carts. But she said that she didn't have to notify the county, because they were not lowering, like Ryan Drive and all that, to go to 25, because it was 35. Way back, 10, 15 years ago, we decided to try to do a golf cart for ordinance for Alligator Point then. And I'm going to just go out with it and say the whole truth about everything. Everybody was for it, and then there were some members of the ACTA group that were not for it, and I'm saying it, and you know I'm right, Mr. Edwin, that was not for it, and so that killed it. They would have had golf cart ordinances back then. And let me reiterate, golf cart ordinance, it's not UTVs, not ATV, it's golf cart ordinances. And that needs to be the understanding. The reason why I asked for this is because I think it's high time that we let Alligator Point, the roads start and get better and everything, and I think it's high time that we start letting Alligator Point have some amenities down there that riding down the road and stuff, and doesn't have to fear the sheriff writing tickets. And because every time one of them gets on the road, they're going to get a ticket down there, because the sheriff's been doing his job down there, right? So this is what it is. Now, in the interim, you've got, the way it looks, you've got, right now, you've got 55 going in from 98 down to Pine Street, and from Pine Street, it's 45 down to around the Ballpoint Road, Welcome Garden. So if it comes to a public workshop, and the people up there around the Sun and Sands area wants a golf cart ordinance there, too, we're going to have to come down the speed limit there, because I don't want to see no golf carts going 45 miles an hour. And that's the way it is. So this is what it's all about, is trying to accommodate the people that wants to ride in the golf carts, and I can understand why, and to be able to do this. But I want to make it clear that we're going to have to find a way to make sure that everybody, the majority of folks are in favor of it. So the ball, and the people of Alligator Point's court, y'all have got to get a lot of strong favor, you know, favoritism to it, so, you know, a lot of good stuff, but I want to let you know, I'm not backing nobody or nothing. I'm just seeing a need there, they need to have it, and we're going to have some opposition to it. There is going to be some opposition to it, I can tell you. But I hope that the need is better than what the opposition is. And that's, I would like for the board to support me on moving forward.
A public hearing.
On the public hearing, and let's go ahead and get this thing taken care of and get it better, whatever way the people wants us to. But I just wanted to bring it up, because I've been waiting to the right time, and by me meeting with the city administrator, I was able to do that. So I make a motion that we direct Mr. Schuler, I make a motion that we direct Mr. Schuler to move ahead with creating a golf cart ordinance and starting the workshops and public hearing.
Second.
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry, I've got a question. Do we want to authorize a workshop first, then a public hearing? With the workshop, how do you want to do it?
Workshop.
Okay, workshop, then a public hearing.
Yeah, because, and it may take a couple of workshops.
Well, so you do want a workshop before the public hearing. I'm glad you clarified.
Yeah, because I don't want to do a public hearing, and that's kind of going backwards.
Because we need to find out how the Sun and Sands people or Pine Street people, that community out there feels. If it is, then we're going to have to go through the procedures of bringing down that speed.
Okay. So you don't want the public hearing until we've had at least one or two workshops to get a feeling of the people?
One or two workshops, and then we'll set a public hearing. It's not like he's going to set the public hearing today. You know, it's not that. Let's work through it, let's get a good thing that you feel comfortable with, because, you know, at the end of the day, the liability is going to fall back on the county, so, you know. I just want to make sure.
We need a motion to, for a workshop first?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Yeah, so that's what my motion was.
Round motion, the second, Commissioner Sanders made the motion. Commissioner Lockley made the second. So we're moving towards some workshops with the intent that we will potentially schedule a public hearing on this matter.
Yes.
Yeah.
Any more discussion before we vote?
I will make a note, Mr. Chairman, that study that was included in this, that I guess you included, Mr. Moron?
Yeah.
Was back in 2017, and that's been six years ago. So obviously, things have changed a lot since then, as Commissioner Sanders said, so... And I also have been contacted by people of the Alligator Point area for a golf coordinate, so I echo Commissioner Sanders' request with this. I think it's a good way to start the process of trying to get a golf coordinates for the area.
All right, any more discussion before we vote?
Just one thing.
Yes.
The one thing that we didn't agree with, the board didn't agree with, and the people didn't, was the expertise that we had, which was county engineers. They wanted to drop the speed limit all the way down to 25 all the way through there, and that's what the opposition was, dropping it so far down. So I just want to clear that up. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You mean from start to finish?
Yes. So we still have, we have to vote, correct?
That's right.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
And the only other item for Alligator Point, it's on the county's website, it's being advertised at both the radio station and newspaper. There'll be a public information meeting regarding the upcoming construction of the Alligator Drive multi-use path from East Harbor Circle to the S-Curve on Thursday, March 30th, at 5:00 PM at the Mission by the Sea Church. That's located at 772 Alligator Drive, Alligator Point. The route of the path and the construction schedule will be explained, and any questions will be answered. If you have questions prior to the public information meeting, please contact Mr. Kurington at 850... If you have questions prior to the public information meeting, please contact Mr. Currington at eight-five-zero-six-five-three-nine-seven-eight-three, extension five. That's my...
Mr. Moron, before we proceed, I do want to mention something about that, because it's a constant question I get, but please make sure that they, somebody needs to, Mr. Currington, whoever, make sure they mention when they have that meeting, these multi-use paths that are done with grant funds are shared use, non-motorized.
Shared use.
It is not a golf cart path. So, you might be making a golf cart ordinance for that area, but that is not the golf cart path. That's something I continue to struggle with in my district, so they need to make sure they mention that at the outset.
I'll let him know.
They gonna do it, though, they gonna do it.
All right, anything else, sir?
Not, as we relate to Alligator Point, and you can...
So, Commissioners, y'all...
Mr. Chairman, pretending these two issues are...
Not a problem. But do, do, what's the pleasure of the board? Do y'all want to do the Plans on Adjustment Board Report? Break for lunch and come back and do all the reports? What do y'all want to do?
I want to eat.
You wanna...
I don't really, don't really matter to me.
Just have two or three things on the P and Z agenda. I would like to do that first when we break and lunch, if y'all are good with that. And then, when we get through, we will set a time that we're coming back, if y'all are good with that. Yep, take recess, we'll sort this out.
I've got a lot to do.
Franklin County Commission is now back in session. We're moving to our Plans on the Adjustment Board Report. Ms. Courtney, please proceed.
Good afternoon. So first, I have on the agenda, I have two variants requested for the same applicant, but we had to split it up because they're two separate lots. So the first one, and I've got it pulled up here, is for 200 West Pine Avenue with consideration of a request for a variance to encroach 20 feet into the 25, the front 25-foot setback along Second Street West on Lot 15. I request to encroach five feet into the 10-foot side setback on Lot 15, and a request to encroach five feet into both 10-foot side setbacks on Lots 10, 11, 12, 13, and 14. I propose located at 200 West Pine Street, St. George Island. The request was submitted by Thurman Ronberry for AHA real estate. I don't want to say AHA because I don't know if that's what it is. Thurman, you want to come up in case you have any questions?
Ms. Courtney, is that, that's putting five lots together? Is that what it is?
This was, how many lots, Thurman?
It was nine lots.
Yes.
Well, it is nine lots, and we're going, we're going to break it down to seven lots, so we're going to decrease density.
Yeah, five here and then two back here.
Yep. We had six lots on the front and three lots in the back, making nine lots, and now we're going to have seven.
So this first request we're looking at is which one, Ms. Courtney, do you have on the screen?
Yes.
Okay. I will say the only thing, it is valid, so we're in the process of trying to do a stormwater management plan for that island, kind of snapshot. We did not get to it before this summer season, and it's going to be very busy. We're hoping that we will be able to start to address it next fall, actually get the work done. So going forward, we, we might need to be considering, even though it is residential, I know another county is also talking about a fear ordinance, the, making sure that we're not going to create another flood hazard or another flood problem or water problem by, even by residential development in the center part of the island. And I realize it's C4, so in some senses it is actually commercial property, but the county's never required stormwater, so I don't think we can require that today. But something we might have to address going forward. I just want to make sure the rest of the board knows that. I'm not opposed to doing what's asked because we've run it several times over, but we do have to find a way to address and make sure we're not making the stormwater worse. I don't know that this is prepared to do that. I don't know, I was having some discussion with Ms. Griffin before we come back into, from recess. I don't know that the current thing we're working on with stormwater, it basically was a snapshot in time, so it's not going to address future development. So anyway, I just say that to make sure the board's aware. There are different things there. We definitely need to make sure what we know we're doing, and we definitely need to make sure that we find a way to address them going forward. We, it's not unfair to this applicant to have them be the guinea pig today, but there are issues going on, and the board needs to be aware of that, so.
I understand.
So, Mr. Chairman, Courtney, the PZ B O A Board, they recommended approval of this?
Correct. Correct.
Mr. Chairman, I can't, just clarify, during the, the Advisory Board meeting, when I reviewed the application, it was clear that the five-foot variances for the interior lots needed to also be requested, so on my recommendation, a modification was made to the application agreed to by the applicant and unanimously agreed to by the Advisory Board to recommend approval to this board. Just I'll just want to get that on the record. Then the only question I had, because it just occurred to me during what Mr. Thurman was saying, these nine lots, the platted lot lines, my understanding have already been reconfigured into the existing, was it six lots?
It's just a proposal now. We haven't, the lots still exist as.
So there hasn't been a, a lot line reconfiguration done at this point?
Not, I don't believe so.
Okay, I thought there had been.
But they may have, I may be, I may be in, I may be wrong.
Well, let's confirm that. If there, if it has to come back to the board, it can come back to the board.
Okay.
But my understanding during the PZA meeting was that, your Advisory Board meeting was that the lot line reconfiguration had already been accomplished previous to the request for the variance application request, but he can confirm that, and if he has to come back for a step two for a lot line reconfiguration, he can do that, but there's no reason not to move forward with today's variance application.
Yes. Mr. Chairman, for clarification, and this may already have been specified, if it has, just correct me, but the two, these two, the, what's on the variance request are one and the same essentially, but we're just approving the one on West Pine first, and the second one's going to be on the Gulf Beach.
Correct.
So same applicant, same request essentially, just different.
Yes, ma'am, that, that's correct, Commissioner Ward. Same applicant, two different requests. It was split into two because technically they're on.
Two separate streets, yeah.
Thank you for the clarification.
So what's the pleasure of the board? Motion to approve by Commissioner Lockley. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, second by Commissioner Ward. Any discussion before we vote? It's not, it's not procedurally allowed, sorry. I had the same thing, same thing when I went to the school board. They didn't let me talk anytime I wanted to talk. Yes, ma'am. So, any discussion among the commissioners before we vote? All in favor? All opposed? That's unanimous. Please proceed, Ms. Courtney.
All right, so the second one is just, the lots right behind it. Consideration of a request for a variance to encroach 20 feet into the 20, the front 25-foot setback along Second Street West on Lot 16. I request to encroach five feet into the 10-foot setback on Lot 16, and I request to encroach five feet into the, to both side, 10-foot side setbacks on Lot 18. And this one's at property 215 West Gulf Beach Drive, and I did amend the various requests to reflect, just like I did on the first one.
Would they recommend?
Ms. Courtney?
Oh, they recommended approval, I'm sorry. The board did recommend approval for this variance as well.
Any other questions, commissioners?
I got a question, Mr. Chairman. It says, I guess on both of these, some of them about a two-hour fire rating construction.
Correct. They did do a contingency, I'm sorry.
Okay, all right.
With the walls being that far, only five feet or 10 feet in between, they had to increase to a two-hour fire rating on the buildings.
We can't really approve the one without the other, so, so moved for approval.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Ward, second by Commissioner Lockley. Any discussion before we vote? I think that's what it is, just a street in between.
Yeah, this is a street in between, alley in between.
Commissioners, since we have an adopted, a rules for decorum for our meeting, or for our rules that people can expect us to do, we've talked about, we never adopted them. I want to let Ms. Sanders come and speak. She's asked to speak publicly. You know, it is what it is. We haven't adopted it.
Thank you. My only question is, I would like for you to talk to your staff about that five feet because what I learned when the county had granted other developers the right to have the setback lot, you know, work into the setback, that they're cantilevering items even further. So is the setback from the ground to the sky? Or are we going to be allowing pool equipment and stairs and cantilever decks? Do you see what I'm saying?
Yes, ma'am, nothing should be in that, in that last five feet.
Okay, so nothing, nothing. Okay, that was my question, and I do think the stormwater won't run up because it is still commercial even at C4, so we're going to have to deal with. Oh, one more thing. Are they coming in on the alley? I know the other development we were worried about, Gulf Beach Drive, are we going to have five driveways? Which you don't have a driveway ordinance, so your driveway can be your entire yard if you want to, and which then prevents anybody from parking on the right of way to go to the beach, but are we going to be coming in on the alley? Or are we going to be coming in on Gulf Beach Drive?
Ms. Courtney, was that asked in the PZ meeting?
It was not.
About the, where the, where their access in the property?
It looks like the proposed driveway is on the front end. On these back ends, you can see here, proposed driveway is on the alleyway on this side. On.
It's on both sides, Courtney.
Yeah, it's on both sides, and so both of the entrances are in the alleyway.
So when you're approving this variance, are you approving that plat versus later on it can be something else without asking permission?
Whatever's presented in the variance is what we approve.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sanders. Any more discussion from the board before we vote? All in favor? All opposed? That's unanimous.
Thank you, commissioners.
Thank you. Ms. Courtney?
Next, we have Commercial Site Plan Review. This is for, the board to consider an action on beach cottages located at 2118 Highway 98 East, Lanark Village. It's currently zoned C3 for recreational. This application was submitted by Edward Golson, applicant, and the board did motion for approval. Make sure there's no contingency on this one. Yeah, so they just, they, they approved, sorry, without any contingencies. They motioned for approval. I'm trying to get these pulled up on the GIS map so you guys can see them.
That's St. George.
Is that what it says on there?
Is that St. George Island?
Huh?
Where are you at now, St. George?
No, this is St. George Island, I'm sorry. I haven't even pulled it up yet.
Oh. We were looking. We wanted to see, Courtney.
That was the first one that was pulled up. This is the property here.
Okay, what's, what's the site plan look like?
It's next, it's next to Ho Hum, try to, a campground out there at Lanark.
Right.
And it's that piece of land before you get to the house, before you get to Ho Hum. And I've been concerned about it because I just saw where the, I've been concerned about this particular project because of the curve in there that comes from Lake Meralti.
Mm-hmm.
Goes, and then you go around that curve right there, but she said that they have addressed everything.
Yep, so they're just building in that, I'm sorry, Ms. Courtney, they're just building in that, east, the easter side, easterly side of it?
Yes.
Is what it looks like?
Yes.
And the rest of it's going to be left alone for four units?
Yeah, because there's a house right in, right in, right in this part, there's a house.
Right here.
There's that two lot there, but there's a house right there.
Yeah.
Okay.
The man that owned it was Malibu Bama.
Is Mr. Golson here?
Is applicant here, Courtney?
I don't think so.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay.
Then, board needs to be aware that Mr. Golson told the PZA Advisory Board this was phase one of two. It's supposed to be.
Yes, he did.
Supposed to be two more of these units coming on a phase two site plan, is what he said.
Where is that going to be at?
On this area over here on this side.
The two that you're looking at on the diagram.
On that side, yeah.
I'm not saying that's not a reason to move forward, but I just wanted the board to be aware. I mean, his, his, essentially his density on that property, or, or four area ratio will be determined by the zoning code. So whether he can get two more, or one more, or three more would be determined by the code. I just wanted the board to be aware of it.
Yeah, as a, as commissioner of this district that this is in, if you don't mind, could you please let me table this? Because that concerns me, right there on that curve. Let me get with Courtney and see what all it is, because I didn't, I wasn't aware of this. I thought they were going to put, that was going to be an extension of the Ho Hum, and I had not talked. I had not talked. Yeah, I'm going to make a motion to table this until next month.
Well, the applicant's not here anyway, so you typically you table in the ordinary course because they didn't show up.
I make a motion to table it.
Motion to table by Commissioner Sanders, second by Commissioner Amerson. Any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? That's unanimous.
I imagine I'll hear from him now, so. But I'm concerned because it's four units and then they're going to do.
That's my recollection, Commissioner, so I, they need to be here.
Ms. Courtney, go ahead.
Okay. The next one we have is, we have some rezoning and land use applications. The first one we have is for 243 East Gulf Beach Drive. And I was smart enough to add that one to this one, the map. Here's the location of where it is. They are asking to go from C2 to C4. This request was submitted by Carol Thomas, agent for a whole house on S, St. George Island. And for this one, they're pretty much going to, this one is zoned C4. It's a lot of that C2, C4 in that area. Most of these lots are owned by the same person, so they're just trying to get them all zoned the same.
And all the other lots are C4?
Um, let's go to the map.
That are around it?
Was that 243?
Yes.
And all he's asking is for a public hearing?
Yes.
And actually, Commissioner, while she's looking it up, both of these, both of the next two are asking for a public hearing, so we could consider them in one motion.
Are you, I'll let you finish what you're saying, Courtney.
Okay, so basically, well, the, the other one, commis, Ricky, is for Patton Drive. That's for C1 to C3?
Right.
Okay.
But still, they're asking for a public hearing.
Correct.
That's what I'm saying.
Yes, and the board did a motion for approval for both of these to go for public hearing. Second. Correct.
So a motion to approve, send the both of these to a public hearing by Commissioner Lockley, and second by Commissioner Ward. Any discussion, commissioners? All in favor? All opposed? That's unanimous.
And all I've got are you guys, unless you've got anything for me?
So commissioners, do y'all want to go on through? Do you want to break for lunch? It is 1:20.
I'm okay with going through, but I know some people may, may have sugar issues.
Doesn't matter to me either. Maybe the rest of this will go faster than the first part did, huh?
I think.
If y'all want to go through, I'm good with that.
Yeah.
Because if we do break for lunch, we're not coming back to at least 2:30.
Yeah.
So, you know.
I'm ready to get it done.
All right, commissioners, first item, this past Monday, the county received notification of availability for different federally qualified projects through the Congressional Community Funding Program. The county was given a short five-day turnaround period, and the applications were due this past Friday by 5:00 PM. Construction of the county's new emergency operations center, for which design work is nearly complete, fit within the Homeland Security Program application. Franklin County received $1 million towards this project through last year's funding requests, and another $1.5 million is available through the Gulf Consortium for this project. Construction costs have risen dramatically, and the latest cost estimate now exceeds $4 million for the robust 5,748 square foot building. This funding request is for the balance needed to complete the project. Requesting board action to grant retroactive authorization to submit the attached community funding request and letter of support for the EOC construction community funding request through Congressman Neil Dunn's office.
A motion to approve by Commissioner Amerson, second by Commissioner Lockley. Any discussion? All in favor?
May I ask Karen a quick question? This is dependent on the appraisal coming back for the land swap at the airport to determine the location of the new EOC construction, or is that unrelated to your?
Actually, it's kind of unrelated. Yeah, this is strictly for construction of the building, so.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
No problem. Please proceed, Ms. Karen.
Yep, next item is item number two. Construction of the county's proposed EMS ambulance station in Lanark Village. The draft design is attached, fit within the Transportation, Housing and Urban Development Program application. The proposed site of the permanent EMS station, which will replace the leased location in Carabelle, will be located to the west of the existing Lanark St. James Volunteer Fire Department on Oak Street. The project will include construction of approximately 1,792 square feet of fully functional staging and staffing space for EMTs and paramedics, and an attached 26-foot by 48-foot enclosed garage area for oxygen tank storage and refill, and ambulance parking. The county is pursuing modular construction options currently for the building, and intends to add storm resilience features such as impact windows and/or shutters at the location, a concrete stem wall foundation, metal roof, two-by-six exterior walls, and plywood sheathing in lieu of OSB. Board action to grant retroactive authorization to submit the attached community funding request and letter of support for the EMS ambulance station through Congressman Neil Dunn's office.
A move, Mr. Chairman.
A motion to approve by Commissioner Sanders, second by Commissioner Lockley. Any discussion before we vote? All in favor? All opposed? That's unanimous.
Okay, next item is item number three, and this is the Restore SGI Stormwater Project FDOT Right-of-Way Agreement. On May 9, 2022, Franklin County sent a formal request to the Florida Department of Transportation requesting a transfer of ownership of the state's right-of-way areas along Franklin Boulevard for the county to be able to finalize the design and permits for the SGI Stormwater Project. The proposed design necessitates routing the stormwater drainage pipes for the areas near Franklin Boulevard to the two existing retention ponds and the creation of a third north pond. On February 1, 2023, you know, just to let that sink in, that's one reason why the project has taken so long, the county finally received the formal right-of-way transfer agreement from the state of Florida. This agreement was then sent to Attorney Schuler and Dewberry Engineers for review. Engineers needed time to review and assess the agreement, as the state will maintain a perpetual right to a reserved amount of treatment capacity for the stormwater drained from the top of the St. George Island Bridge south. Stormwater from this area flows to the existing ponds via two inlets at the base of the bridge piped beneath the road on the causeway. Two weeks ago, Dewberry met with Northwest Florida Water Management District, which will be the permitting agency to clarify what capacity or treatment will be required for issuance of the county permit. And just last week, engineers were able to finalize calculations and confirm that the existing ponds and the proposed creation of a third will meet the county's project needs and the reserve capacity needs of FDOT. The county will be responsible for the maintenance of these pond areas in the future, and the state will still be responsible for the roadway surfaces of Franklin Boulevard, which is slated for resurfacing on the state's five-year work plan, which is attached to begin in 2025. Actually, engineering is beginning as early as 2023, and the, in the state's budget, it's actually budgeted at $748,000 for engineering those improvements. And in 2025, the construction cost estimates for resurfacing Franklin Boulevard is $2,276,714. So fortunately, that is, that project will remain on the state's five-year work plan. And then I just kind of want to go through just some quick, quick stats on the project. The preliminary four-and-a-half-million-dollar design calls for the installation of approximately 1,400 The preliminary four-and-a-half million dollar design calls for the installation of approximately one thousand four hundred eighty-nine linear feet of eighteen-inch piping and three thou-, three thousand one hundred eighty-six linear feet of twenty-four-inch piping, and three thousand two hundred seventy square yards of asphalt patching and resurfacing, sod improvements, other required piping and restoration activities, all to facilitate the drainage of stormwater in the commercial district of St. George Island. I would like to now turn the floor over to Engineer Caleb Brown with Dewberry, as he is on hand to answer any specific design questions relative to the project.
Morning, sir.
Morning.
Afternoon, sir.
Yeah, it's all good.
Been waiting patiently.
Do I?
You've been waiting patiently.
I'm here. Um, I'm here just in case y'all have any questions. Essentially, what we found, and do you have the maps to pull up?
Oh, yes, Michael, uh, can I, can I share screen with?
So essentially, the proposed piping that we have thus far, I mean, it's still in the conceptual phase, because we didn't have all these approvals, didn't know what y'all wanted to go with. But there's three actual areas of improvement, or three systems, rather. You have the westerly portion, which drains to those DOT ponds. Then you have two easterly portions that are separate, and they have direct drainage to the bay, as proposed now. Um, which, when she gets that up, we can point that out. But essentially, the westerly portion, if we want to be able to do anything with that and meet any kind of Northwest Florida requirements, which is gonna have to happen to make the project work, we're gonna have to have somewhere to build an additional pond. Now, with DOT's, um, agreement, they wanted a set amount of volume left over. That volume amount is in the two existing ponds. There's, there's a slight difference, but we're pretty sure we can reshape those existing ponds to fit all of their requirements into existing ones. And then we should be able, for the westerly portion, meet all of our additional treatment requirements in the third pond that we're proposing. Which you can see here. The two existing ones are on the left-hand side of the page, the posed ones on the right. Um, so that is the westerly system, all the blue pipes you can see coming through. Um, and then, if you go to the next page.
See, it'll take it just a second to kinda clarify, so.
And so the, the remainder of it, um, you have one, it's kinda hard to see from here, but you have two other systems. That's your easterly systems there. That one's off of, uh, I think it's Third Street, and then the other one's off Second Street, or First Street and Second Street, I think it is. So those areas may require some additional design as far as trying to figure out, you know, to meet Northwest Florida's treatment requirements for those areas, um, which we could probably do through, you know, re-establishing ditches, or, um, there's some other areas where it looks like we might can put in some small treatment swales. But for the purpose of this, of agreeing, or essentially whether you want to go along with the FDOT agreement or not, we can't do anything on the westerly portion without having somewhere to put an additional pond. Because DOT is not allowing us to connect to their system without y'all taking it over. So that's where the whole agreement came to stem from, to my knowledge.
What kind of piping you talking about?
Um, I, I believe it'll probably be either, um, RCP, so concrete piping, or maybe, um, ADS piping. It'll probably just depend on how deep we can bury it, and what the requirements are at that, at each location. RCP is always preferred, but.
Mr. Caleb, and the pipes themselves, some will be eighteen inches, some will be twenty-four, correct?
Um, to my knowledge, yes. I haven't, I'm not part of the actual design team that's doing it. Um, but I mean, they'll, they'll size the system accordingly to what's draining to it. So if all of the pipes are required to be eighteen inches all the way through, and it can handle capacity, then it'll all be eighteen. Then you just step up from eighteen to twenty-four, even from twenty-four up, they would do so during the design.
Yeah, and actually, Commissioners, it's probably hard to see up there, um, but in the preliminary design documents that are on screen, you can actually see which ones are specified, um, in the preliminary design, which ones are twenty-four inch and which ones are eighteen inch.
Mr. Chairman, if I can, um, I've reviewed the agreement that has been sent to the county by FDOT, and as with, our agreements with the state, uh, is a, uh, heads they win, tails we lose type of an agreement. When they transfer this to us, I just want the board to be aware that they are transferring the ownership of the ponds to us, but they're also transferring all the permitting obligations, all the maintenance, all the repair, any future expansion, which is in their interest, and it's not a reason not to move forward, because otherwise, I mean, there's really no way to move forward with the stormwater, uh, home management system on the island. But I just want the board and public to be aware, uh, that they are transferring all of the cost and obligations to the county as well, and including the need to purchase future right-of-way. I think Caleb had mentioned a potential for additional ponds in the future. We would have, we would be responsible for that as well. Um, the only part that really, um, really got me, because I was expecting them to transfer the liabilities and the expenses, and I think you were too. But keep in mind, we're, we're, we're both going to be discharging our stormwater into the system, and they're going to be discharging their stormwater into the system. And the issue becomes, if there's a contamination issue, and there's been mixing and co-mingling, then, you know, who contaminated what? Um, a- and they have proposed a, a process, which in itself is okay. We meet, we discuss, we try to resolve it. The part that really got my attention, and probably not much we can do about it, but in the event that we can't reach a consensus on who's responsible for what contamination, they want us to agree that the FDOT secretary essentially resolves all disputes. Um, I would at least like to have a conversation with them to see, you know, if we can't reach an agreement, then, you know, that's why we have a court system. So perhaps they would consider making that type of amendment to the agreement. Um, but otherwise, I just wanna make sure that we had a record about all the liabilities and responsibilities being transferred to the county. Uh, and again, those were not unexpected, they, they were things I was expecting to see in there. I just wanna make sure that the board was aware of it efficiently. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Would you rather me beat? I mean, we, we've been a vote on this?
Yes, sir.
What do you recommend?
Subject to me meeting with DOT's representative and making, uh, the change that I'd suggested to you on any potential contamination liabilities, because I, I don't think it's inherently fair for one of the potential contaminating parties to be the one to make the decision who's responsible for the contamination. Uh, seems to be a little, little bit of a self-interested, uh, position on their part. Uh, and there's some other language in there regarding, uh, the limited waiver of sovereign immunity. I, I'd like for us to have the same protective language for Franklin County on that limited waiver that they've reserved for themselves. But subject to those two things, Commissioner Lockley, I'd recommend approval.
Okay, I'm gonna make a motion and, and subject to all you checking with them, getting it.
Okay, so we have a motion to approve by Commissioner Lockley?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Sanders, any discussion? I have some discussion. Um, knowing the timeline we have for this project, and being it took us almost a year to work through the thing with DOT, I am not good. At the end of the day, we're probably not gonna get them to change their stance, their DOT. We're either gonna make an agreement and move forward with the project, or we're not. I would just as soon approve and go forward, because they're probably not going to agree to what we want them to agree to. Not the legal mind, but I just, I, I perceive that's gonna delay us even further in trying to do this project. We have a small window to do it in. Needs to be the fall of the year, the winter of the year, it cannot be during the summertime. So I don't wanna move this into twenty twenty-five. That's my only thought about it.
Okay, well.
I'm in my second.
Well, well, you still want him to talk to him, huh?
He can talk to him, but I don't wanna hold everything up until they agree to what we say, is what I'm saying. I'm still fine with the discussion, but I perceive, and I could be wrong, that we were giving him the ability to kinda hold it until we got the answer we were looking for. I don't know that we're gonna get the answer we're looking for. You know, that was my only discussion. Please correct me if I'm wrong, sir.
Um, yes, I mean, typically, if we have a condition that says we would like this to, to be changed, then we don't move forward until it is changed. But again, I give them a couple of weeks, so we, I don't know what the timeline is on, on the project. I'm speaking without that particular level of information, but a couple of weeks. I mean, if they can't get an answer back in two weeks, then two, silence becomes an answer at some point, you know?
So, just to clarify, so you ask, would you rather us readdress the approval of this two weeks from now, when you've had the chance to engage by vote of the board? And ask them to clarify those two, and if they don't, then we'll move forward?
I would say go ahead and approve with the contingency, and then if we're, we arrive at the next meeting, then you've got the authority to sign as is or with the, with the change.
That's all I was asking.
And that's what we've got then.
Okay.
That's what's on.
All right.
My second stand.
Sorry, I wasn't trying to muddy the waters, I was just trying to make sure we're not gonna back up the timeline for the project. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That's unanimous. State to Mr. Caleb. All right, Ms. Griffin?
Okay, uh, next item is a financing proposal for the wheel loader at the landfill. At the last meeting, the board approved the purchase of a new twenty twenty-three John Deere five-four-four P wheel loader for the landfill to replace the two thousand and eight model. All quotes for financing had not been, been received, but at that time, the purchase was approved. The best rate was five point four zero percent from Cadence Bank, which was less than John Deere at five point nine nine percent, and leasing to at five point five five percent. People South has since provided a quote, and they were able to beat the other lenders at a five percent fixed rate with an annual payment of thirty-seven thousand, six hundred eighty dollars. The budgeted payment funds are available at this time from the landfill tipping fee fund, as the twenty sixteen compactor was just paid off earlier this month. Board action to approve the attached financing proposal from People South Bank for the twenty twenty-three John Deere wheel loader.
Uh, so move a comment.
I have much to approve by Commissioner Ward. Second by Commissioner Amos, and Commissioner Ward, please proceed.
I, uh, at the meeting, before this was brought up, I was blown away at the amount of interest. So I appreciate you going and trying to make sure we get the cheapest interest available. Um, so I, I wanna thank you for, for doing that. I'm glad we're able to get it lowered than what it was.
Any other discussion, Commissioners?
People South was the only one that offered a fixed rate?
Uh, they were all fixed, uh, but People South was the lowest.
I didn't really see that there, that's why I was curious.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That's unanimous.
Okay, Commissioner, uh, board information. I have a project update for the Bruman Park Ball Field Lights. Vendor Musco Lighting has scheduled the tentative delivery of the new ball field lights for Monday, May twenty-second. The date has been cleared by Parks and Recreation Director Fonda Davis, who has confirmed that this date will not conflict with any events or games scheduled by the sports leagues. Musco Lighting has also been notified of the active osprey nest in one of the existing poles, and the project can move forward without disturbing or removing the nest pole, which can be removed later when the nest is abandoned. Um, and I did reach out to, uh, Ms. Anita Grove with Aner, and she did confirm that the active nesting season runs until August. So we should be able to pluck the pole out at that time, you know, once the nest is abandoned.
They got one back there.
Yeah, and Musco Sports Lighting, too, they said that that was not irregular in Florida, and it happens all the time, so.
So they're used to it.
Yep.
Thank you.
Good.
Awesome.
Okay, and next item, board information, project update, Carabelle Beach Wayside Park. Aris General Contractors has issued a preliminary construction schedule for the Carabelle Beach Wayside Park project. All necessary bonds and contracts are in place. Material is on order, and the contractor plans to be on-site going full speed on the project in about thirty days. The county asked for the project to be done in two separate phases, whereas the public could still enjoy the park throughout construction. The first phase will include the complete restoration of the seven eastern picnic pavilions and the exterior of the restroom building. And the second phase will include the restoration of the balance of the picnic pavilions on the western side.
Erin, I got a quick, Ms. Chairman, I'm sorry, a quick question on that.
Okay.
Thank you, because I'm excited to see this. Um, I did look up DOT, and we're supposed to be getting that crosswalk.
Oh.
And they are supposed to start in twenty twenty-three, but it doesn't specify a, a month.
Okay.
Here we are, twenty twenty-three. So I, I'm hoping that they kinda coincide together. But, um, I did mention before, the safety railings, when you go to exit to the beach? Is that something, I guess we can't cover under this grant, but that's something that we were looking at doing?
Uh, actually, uh, I've contacted Jason White Construction, and he is supposed to be handling that for us.
Thank you.
If he's getting a bid together right now.
I appreciate that.
So use, use the Commissioner Ward, if you're looking on DOT's website, you can, once you find the project, there's another place that'll show like the details. And if it shows you a letting date, that's the date they're actually gonna start it. You know what I mean? That's what you're looking for, there's something that says a letting date. Anyway, that's what I determined from talking to some of them.
Yeah, I don't, I don't remember seeing that date on there, so, but I know the, the guy that's in charge of the project, I'll, I'll probably make a phone call to him and kinda get, we get a, a month of wind this, this year, so.
Please proceed, Ms. Griffin.
Okay, uh, next item, uh, the tentative delivery date for the playground equipment for the, uh, playground at Lighthouse Park on St. George Island has now been moved up to May fifteenth, twenty twenty-three. If the May fifteenth date holds true, the county will need to begin site preparedness efforts, uh, on May first, twenty twenty-three, which will include the disassembly of the existing swing set. The playground installation will occur first, and the other project elements will follow shortly thereafter, such as construction of the shade areas and the landscaping. Um, and comments on that.
That's a, when did we start talking about this, Ms. Erin, trying to get this done? Twenty twenty-one?
Actually, yeah.
During the COVID? Eighteen, yeah, it's been, been a minute.
Yeah.
But it's been tremendous, and it's come together really nicely. We've had very good support from the communities, the community on the island especially, and private donations to make sure that some things that maybe were outside the amount of funding the grant was gonna provide can address and help. And, you know, I, I just couldn't say thank you in enough ways, because, uh, eighty-two thousand? Yeah, I know there was some big checks the other day, but-
That's great.
So, just so the community's aware, eighty-two thousand private dollars are going to this public facility. And, uh, I don't, I just don't, we might have done that before in Franklin County, but I can't remember when it's happened. And I'm very thankful for it.
Big deal. Yeah, and Commissioners, another thing which, um, I wanted to show you all, I mean, actually, just used it to be able to retrieve the design for the SGI Stormwater Project. Um, the County Projects Portal is now active. Uh, now, unfortunately, it is not real time. Um, I did reach out to the vendor to see how often the site updates, because I did upload a lot of-
Twice a day.
Okay, twice a day. Uh, so I did upload a lot of items this morning, and I don't see them out there yet. Um, but just to kinda show you all how the public will navigate to the County Projects Portal, um, if you go over here to Resources, and you can actually click County Projects Portal there.
Don't worry, this consolidated this much.
This goes back to that broadband infrastructure.
Okay.
Okay, and you can actually see the projects that are listed. Um, I do have about fifteen more projects that I'll need to get uploaded, uh, where we can actually have kind of a complete snapshot in time. And we, I am beginning with all projects that were active for, uh, this current fiscal year, instead of going back.
Right.
Um, let's see, and if we'll actually select one, so let's see, for example, where I, uh, selected the SGI Stormwater Project. You actually highlight that. And click up to the top view project details. Um, you'll then be able to see, uh, kind of a short project description and, uh, primary image. And then also, you can see on here, um, different project updates, which actually has particular dates. Um, and you can actually see in there, uh, May ninth, twenty twenty-two, Franklin County sends formal request to FDOT for right-of-way along Franklin Boulevard. And then, for example, up here in the project files and attachments, you can actually see right here Franklin County request for right-of-way. And if you'll actually click that. And just a little bit of a delay with download speeds. And you can open it. And you can actually see the formal letter of request that Franklin County submitted to FDOT. Um, let's see if I can get it to actually increase in size where you all can see it. And there is the official letter that was sent, um, along with, you know, once everything else downloads, actually, uh, some of the history of the right-of-way, uh, where it moved back and forth from Franklin County to FDOT and such. Um, and then also, let's go ahead and visit another project here.
Erin, Ms. Chairman, I saw on the, the main page, you can, like, with the minutes, go and type in, say, for example, like, uh, Island V Park or Bruman Park.
Yep.
And go there specifically, instead of having to scroll through all the-
Mm-hmm. Yep, so here's-
I really like that, I, I, that's good.
Yep, and then one thing, too, that is also exciting, is if you click this button here for project images, um, you can actually scroll through, and you can actually track the progress that way, where you can actually see how a project looked before reconstruction. And then now that it is reopened to the public, what it looks like now.
That's really cool.
And you can see that for every single project that will be uploaded out here. Um, let's see, here's another one. Let's go ahead and click, uh, the- see, here's another one. Let's go ahead and click, uh, the C30 Gulf Avenue Wal, uh, actually West Washouts. Let's do that one. Here's the West Washouts and project images. And you can actually see, you know, some of the damage caused by Hurricane Michael. Um, and it looks like the other photos for that one did not stick, so that's unfortunate. Or actually, here's Alligator Drive. That's a good one. Okay? So there's Alligator Drive, and the download speed's got us again. Of course, the consolidated guy. Okay, um, and you can actually see images of the road before, during construction. And here's the road now.
Until the next storm.
That's tremendous.
Yep, um, and let's see here, I believe, actually, one more project. Let's go ahead and look at the airport. Oh, here's Giant Fuel Farm Project, and we just discussed that one today. I did upload quite a lot of information this morning, um, project overview. And you can actually see there, um, here is the fuel farm replacement, uh, bid documents, and here is the task order with AVCON. Um, let's see here, you can actually see, oh, here we go. Here is the second construction bid advertisement, which was posted to the Appalachia Cola Times, so, uh, once that downloads, we can actually show that to you as well. And this is going to be the, the public's portal to, um, the capital projects that the county is undertaking. You know, I also plan on, on including the Dune Walkover Construction Project, um, also the replacement of the Scale House. I mean, so it will be, essentially, all of your projects will be in this portal.
That's good.
I like that.
Ms. Griffin, that's very comprehensive. Uh, I think it's even more than what the, than I know what I expected. And I think it's very good, because at the end of the day, uh, you can tell people where you're spending their dollars, but now they can go and see for themselves. The, the stuff the board's trying to get accomplished on their behalf.
Instead of me calling you, sorry, Mr. Chairman, instead of me calling you, asking where we are, I can just go to the website and have a look on. What are we, uh?
All those things that benefit the residents benefit the Commissioners as well. We're, we're still residents, you know, go to our county website and, and do a keyword search of all our agenda, uh, agendas and minutes, you know, to find stuff. That's, that's good. You know, we're, we're doing our best to work with the smaller county staff on purpose, so we don't have more money being spent than what we have to, so. Thank you, Ms. Griffin. That's very nice. Anything else from Ms. Griffin before we proceed, Commissioners? All right. Mr. Moore?
Okay, Commissioners, uh, page 10, item two. Already addressed item one. During the last two meetings, there was discussion regarding changes to the guardrail system on the John Gory Memorial Bridge causeway between East Point and the bridge. The board wanted FDOT to consider moving the guardrail on the south side of the causeway closer to the rocks, so that there would be additional space if a driver needed to pull over for emergency purposes. And consider changing the guardrail system to the traditional style rather than the cable, cable barrier system that is now in place. FD, FDOT response was that these requests would be reviewed and considered during your 2025 paving project. That's all the board asked for. I want to be very clear about that. That's all the county commission asked for. I'll continue. There was a third request made by the sheriff to restrict access behind the guardrail to discourage drivers from making U-turns that could cause accidents on the bridge. Apparently, there was some miscommunication as to where exactly the barriers should go, so a request was made to FDOT to remove those barriers placed that day. The barriers were placed that day that block access behind the guardrail. I was able to get the barriers removed the next day. In the future, any request of this nature will be made to this board directly to avoid any further miscommunications. With all that said, are there any changes or restrictions on the bridge or causeway the board would like FDOT to consider? Anything, you have to answer it today, but if you think about something, you want to meet me on the bridge, let's do that, and then I could get with, uh, with, uh, Warner, they've changed Benny, and basically.
It's Weber, isn't it?
Weber, yes, Weber. They've changed the Weber curve. Thank you.
Mr. Moore, I think some of that would be resolved in both ways, if and when the DOT does consider moving that guardrail back closer to the water.
Mm-hmm.
You know what I mean? Uh, because then it's, but it's still going to allow people to park, and they just want me to behind the stuff.
Yes.
So I don't see that issue. I will say on my part, and I went back and looked at the meeting and listened to it again, so, and it could have been, if it was misconstrued what I said when I, because I didn't mention doing both sides. But what I was talking about is if we're going to continue to go down this path that DOT is wanting to block getting under the bridge, that we don't need to just do the East Point side, we need to do the Appalachian side as well. Because I don't know about you, but I've been coming across the long bridge toward Appalachian, and somebody's stopping to do a right turn to go under the bridge, and it creates an equal problem. So maybe I didn't specify that during that meeting, but that's what I was intending to say.
Okay.
When I was talking about it, so, just so the board's aware.
You guys have any, anything, just let me know, and then we can meet with Benny, meet on the bridge and actually, uh, try to work it out, whatever is needed. Um, we already addressed item three. Item four, for some time, the county discussed the possibility of engaging a lobbyist. But except for back in 2009, when the county hired a consultant to assist with state and federal economic stimulus services, that total retail cost was 20,000, the county never took any action and engaged in a lobbyist. Chairman Jones would like the board to discuss and consider engaging a lobbyist to assist the county at the state level with securing funds, there are other requests, and protecting home rule. I'm stop right there. By protecting home rule at 2:30 this afternoon, the legislature will be discussing term limits for the Board of County Commissioners as well as the school board.
The school board.
Yes, uh, so that is something that, uh, now the House only had school board members. The Senate, at the last minute, they kind of added, added county commissioners. A lobbyist is, would be the person that would be fighting for you, Commissioners, God bless you, on that matter. The chairman believes that we are still early enough in the legislative process to benefit this year, and would like to discuss a more permanent funding plan during this year's budget workshop for lobbyists. Mr. Chairman, I turn it over to you, sir.
Okay, well, I will say this first, Commissioners. So I did, when I was trying to find a way to possibly have this discussion, I first talked to Attorney Schuler. Our current policies and procedures allow for us to try to do this without an RFQ process. It's, it's basically in the same sentence that we would be hiring an attorney. It's something that can be done by vote of the board. So there's no RFQ we have to entertain to do this process. Now, the legislative session's already started, so here's a couple of things. Number one, in my estimation, and, uh, you know, most of us here have visited Tallahassee more than once, uh, we're just not even at the table. We're not even at the table. We're a small rural community, so we don't, and I, I don't, I'm trying to be positive, not negative today, we don't have enough votes to move the needle our way in anything to do with appropriations. So the only other way you can try to influence the legislature is the normal means and methods that they're already using. And that's having somebody that's already got their cell phone number on their phone, that they're already meeting for lunch this Saturday, and playing golf together this Sunday, talking on your behalf. Now, I will say from discussing, uh, I understand that most of these contracts are, are year-long. I think if we do decide to do it, we need to ask the company that we might potentially hire to not only work through the appropriations, uh, phase of getting things put in appropriations and getting them approved, but working through the governor signing them, and knowing yet, it's kind of late this year, but I don't want this year to be a complete loss. So if we get one thing funded through the legislature by our act today, it'll well have been worth it. It will have paid for itself. Because I've been here a couple of years now, and there have been years where we've got goose eggs, absolutely nothing. Because at the end of the day, I don't want to belabor the point and make it worse than what it is. So if, if the legislature's looking at 4,000 appropriations requests across the state, what makes them, what, in, in my estimation, and this is my, my issue with it, what's going to make them favor approving something for us? Where, where do we fall in on that list? Well, if, if nobody's talking to them on our behalf, I can tell you where we fall on that list. Nobody's talking to them about us, so therefore, we're not considered. Now, this is not negative toward the legislature. This is the way they commonly do business. Now, I will say, and I don't know how the board feels about it, I've tried to do my own research to come up with a potential firm that we could try to hire, and we could do it today. We have it on the agenda to do. It would probably be at a cost of about 75,000 for a year. But again, if we get one thing that we're asking for funded, it's paid for itself. But it wouldn't be a year-long contract, so it's already preloading us for next legislative session, so even what we don't get done this year, we have the potential to already be having that discussion, having that push, so next year, when we address it, it's already ready. And it will have to be something we, we would address for our next budget as well. So, you know, that's, that's the pitch I make to you. I think we need to do it, but I'm one of five.
Mr. Chairman, I got a couple of comments, if you don't mind. Um, as some people may not be aware, Commissioner Sanders, Chairman Jones and I went to Tallahassee last week, two legislative day. And I'll be honest, and I'm not trying to call anybody out, but there was a particular, no, I'll just say it, the senator kind of just shunned us.
Blew his style.
So I was disappointed. I'm going to be honest. And, and I'll, I'll be happy to welcome his staff to contact me after this meeting if they watch, but, I mean, we're sitting there, we had a point in time to talk about the appropriations, and I get it, they, they have to go to the floor, they have to make votes, I get that, they're rushed, I get that. But he didn't even acknowledge, we were sitting in the chair, his staff barely acknowledged us, we were, three of us were sitting there, Chairman Jones was doing, doing the gentleman thing and letting this lady sit, so he was standing. We'd been there, it was almost four o'clock, our appointment time was 3:15. I just got off the phone with you guys to confirm what we were asking, and then nothing. He walked to us, turned his head, and walked right on out, not even say, hey, guys, I'm sorry, I'm in a rush, um, try to get my staff, let's, let's make a meet, let's try to get another meeting. Nothing. We had to meet with his staff, which is not a bad thing. The staff was accommodating, the Steve, uh, his assistant was accommodating, but, but this is, and I echo Chairman Jones, because we can't be up there every day advocating. I, I, we can call, we can go, but obviously, we went, and we weren't even given the time of day. Could we go back up there? Sure, absolutely. And meet with them? Sure, absolutely. But again, um, I think, I think that having someone up there fighting for us every day would be beneficial, and even if we do get one appropriation, I think would be worth it. Um, so I, I agree with, with what Chairman Jones has said. We did meet with, um, Representative Schoeff, he did make time for us, and it was a long day. It was a late day, but I feel like we did get some things accomplished, but I think that this would solidify that even further.
So, so before we go very much further, I do want to say that the, the company that I think we need to try to partner with at least initially, and kind of see how it goes, is Capital City Consulting. Here's the reason why. They have a vast range of people that they serve, and there's not anybody on their staff of people, there's not a issue that's going to come before us that they don't have somebody that knows how to address it. So there, uh, I know, like, the city of Appalachia, they, they hired a consulting firm, but it was basically for a DEP issue. Well, Capital City Consulting is going to be able to handle any issue the county might ever come up with, from water to appropriations to government function to healthcare to whatever. They're, they're going to cover it all, you know what I mean? So, anything to do with water issues, that, that will be covered.
Commissioners, let me tell you what was really interesting. You remember Legislative Delegation Day, when they were, were here, sitting here? If you guys remember when they talked about the East, the East Point Water Sewer District and getting it back up and running? You had Billy, a couple of other people, but you know who they talked to? They talked to their lobbyists that were sitting right there next to them. They never even addressed Billy or any of the staff. They talked to the, I mean, when I say they, I meant Representative Schoeff and, and the senator. That's who they addressed, and the whole crowd that was here that day. That, that told me a whole lot, just sitting right, right there. Because I was in the back. Commissioner Jameson was, he was right in the opposite corner, you know, and I just, yeah.
And Mr. Chairman, I will clarify, too. I'm making, making note, you know, and in, Senator Simon and his staff's defense, they, they get bombarded. It's an all-day affair. They have these meetings, they meet hu- hundreds and thousands of people, and not only from the, the elected officials' perspective, from the just community, uh, public members, too, that want to talk things with, with them, but, I mean, when you've got your, your people that represent you, and I know Franklin County, they think, you know, is a redheaded stepchild, but I'm tired of being the redheaded stepchild, you could at least shake their hand and say, hey, you know, I acknowledge you're here, thank you for coming, I'm sorry, I got to go, but can we meet at a later date and time? And, and again, that, it was a long day, I'm sure. They were probably over it. But I think, too, that for the legislative process, and we don't have anything to do with that, but I think that, and not to demean anybody's reason for being there, but I think that the elected officials that make time to go up there to talk about, uh, to, to defend home rule need to get precedence over, you know, I don't know, it's just, it's.
For that day.
For that day, yes. And I know that's something we can't probably control, but again, having a lobbyist up there every day is not just going up there one day asking for a bunch of stuff, going up there every day, being there, being active, um, and then having them come and update us about what's going on and, all right, give us, give us updates on what's, what's going on up there, like with this 2:30 vote and any appropriations. I know that we were looking on our phones, looking at the appropriations bill, the Senate and House bills as they were coming through, you know, that's something that we do on our, on our off time. I think it'd be nice to have the lobbyists that can sit up there and watch all that stuff and give us, uh, uh, give us, send us back the information of what, how they voted and what we got, what we didn't got and all that. I have a friend up there that just happens to work for the Senate, and she was texting me about, um, the East Point Water Sewer thing when it was on the floor. So, but we got to have somebody better that can be specific for that purpose.
Yes, ma'am.
Well, in addition to that, Commissioner Ward, you also can have somebody that can maybe find out the answers to the question of why. So if you have something that doesn't get funded in a cycle, or why did not get funded? What can we change?
Yeah.
What, you know what I mean? It makes a difference. I think there's discussions they have that we're not a part of.
So what, what action do we need?
So I think the, the cleanest way to do it is to allow the attorney to have the discussion with Capital City Consulting, to have a contract not to exceed 75,000 to be a lobbyist for Franklin County. Again, addressing not just the session bill, which is the signing of the governor, but I think it's a year-long contract that needs to be confirmed anywhere.
And bring the contract back to the board at the next meeting for approval, or are we going to approve it and then I just review it, and if there's concerns, I bring it back to you for review?
I think it should be contingent on your review, since they're already in session.
Okay.
Uh, if we wait, then we probably won't get anything, because appropriations discussion started yesterday. The real discussion started yesterday.
Yeah, these discussions started back in November.
Yeah, but I'm talking about what they're going to appropriate and what they're not. They're, they're solidifying it now. So if we could do it based on your review, I'm good with that.
Yes, sir, that would be fine.
You did go and talk to one?
Yes, sir, because if you're trying to talk to five or six, you're just slowing yourself down. Again, I tried to find one that, that, I got this advice from people in our neighboring counties, people they've dealt with, and knowing that, looking on their website and seeing all the different things that they are able to handle, I just think, you know, to start out, we can always change it.
We can always, you're about to revisit it.
Yes, always.
If they're not giving us any return for our money invested, we can fire them and rehire somebody.
Always.
They're more, they're more, I don't know, Plod Association, they're supposed to be lobbying, they don't do nothing.
They do, but they don't, none of them are, and this is not negative toward the association counties or small county coalition, they're not set up to lobby for our needs individually. Anything to do with appropriations, they're not lobbying on our behalf, sir. It's not the way it is.
I've said it many times, I mean, years before I even thought about setting up here, is, uh, if you can, if you can hire somebody, let's just say like 75,000, and they're going to bring you a million dollars to the table, that's the best return on your investment you're going to get. You need to start. And I've told the city, I've told them all, you need to get a lobbyist. We're too small, um, and like, uh, Commissioner Ward said, we can't all run to Tallahassee. We have, uh, we have jobs. I mean, that's just, let's face it, that's where we're at. And, and that's the best thing we can do, is get us lobbyists that can get out there and get us some, uh, get busy and get to work for us, so we're not getting left in the wind, because that's exactly what's happened to our county, that's what's happened in the Carabelle, that's what's happened in Appalachia Cola. And until we start picking it up, that we're going to continue to lag, and that's just the bottom line.
So please, the board?
Um, I'll make that motion that we discussed, I don't remember where it worked for, but basically, make a motion to direct Attorney Schuler to contact
Capital City.
Capital City to entertain a contract.
Yes, sir, my recommendation would be two two steps in the same motion. Motion to approve the hiring of Capital City Consulting as a lobbying group and authorizing the attorney to negotiate a contract, return it back to the chairman for his signature. If I see something that creates undue heartburn, I will bring it back to the board at the next meeting.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, ma'am.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Ward, second by Commissioner Amerson, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That's unanimous.
I'm number five, Commissioners, I was a little light with information on this. I I was, I just went straight to the point, Williams is asking for authorization to engage Carl Riggs and Ingram to perform their hospital annual independent audit. Carl Riggs and Ingram was selected by Weems through RFQ, I can't remember how many years ago.
Gosh, it's probably, I'd say possibly three to five.
Yeah, yeah, wasn't it before, um,
Several years.
Several years. I I think it was even before, um, Alliance joined the management. So they've been there, they've been doing this independent audit for years. At some point, Carl Riggs and Ingram was the county's auditor, I believe, Commissioner Sanders, is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, so yeah, so they've been doing this for years. So usually, I I I believe this all stopped after COVID. But usually, they would, you know, you guys would approve the engagement letter, they do the audit, they bring it back, and and Mr. Brian Hall makes a presentation to Board of County Commissions, you get to ask questions about the audit. Um, I know Commissioner Ward had talked about a different type of audit at the last meeting. I'd recommend we do this first, based on the the Q and A you have with Mr. Brian Hall when he presents that audit, Commissioner Ward. Then you decide if you wanna proceed with a more, um, a different type of audit.
More complex.
Yeah.
Well, I will say, Mr. Chairman, that I personally don't think Weems should be involved in picking and choosing who they want to do the audit anyway. But you said this is not them, it's the county.
Who was the review committee?
No, we did it through RFQ process.
Yeah, yeah, actually, it was a review
Review committee.
Yeah.
I have to look up for the minutes, Commissioner Ward, to tell you who was on the review committee.
I think it was more of a county-based review committee, if my memory serves correct.
We didn't have nothing to do with it. We didn't have nothing to do with it.
No, they didn't have nothing to do with it. And the reason we're talking about the day is because it's over fifty thousand dollars.
Yes, it's eighty-six, eighty-six thousand dollar, I think, uh, contracts to get the audit done.
Right.
They do it every year.
Yes.
So move.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Lockley.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Sanders, any discussion?
I will say, Mr. Chairman, I I will, I'm gonna be honest with you. It'll be interesting to see what this audit says, but I think I, me personally, I think we just need to do the other one too. But we'll, I'll wait, we'll wait, we'll see what this one says.
Any more discussion?
I agree with Commissioner Ward, but I wanna look at what we got now with them and then go deeper. We have to. I think anybody would agree with that.
All in favor?
Just just so we're clear, we're contracting this audit, not not
We are.
Yes.
Sorry about that. Any more discussion? All in favor? All opposed? That's unanimous.
All right, item six, uh, earlier, Commissioners, you know we've been discussing about removing those trees. I'm gonna start to summarize here, that were impeding the approach to runway one-eight. Ted, it was runway one-eight? Ted said yes. Uh, at the Appalachia Cola Airport, Commissioner Amerson did a lot of footwork on this one. He was able to contact the property owner, who agreed to allow the county to cut whatever trees are necessary to clear the approach to the runway. And he also assisted staff with locating a tree removal land clearing contractor, which is Douglas Clearing and Land Development. They agreed to remove all the necessary trees and haul the debris for a total cost of sixty-five hundred. They would like the county to waive the tipping fees that's able, they're able to then keep the price down by doing that. Um, Ted and I talked about this yesterday. We're not sure how much they're going to, they might get some good lumber there from what they cut down, so I'm not sure how much is actually going to go to the landfill, but that'll be up to them. So it'll be part of my motion for you to waive the tipping fees, and also part of my motion, I did not say tipping fees there, to have Attorney Schuler write up a liability agreement. That's that's my term, Commissioner, Attorney Schuler, not yours. Liability agreement with the property owner for this project, whatever the agreement is.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
Does the airport have any money?
Yeah.
Okay, so
The Jinkoli money.
I mean, it's not amount, it's not the amount of money, because it's not a lot of money. Why are we waiving tipping fees when anything we do at the airport, we gotta pay market value for? I mean, it's not like they don't have money.
I know, I was trying to keep the price down, because, you know, because I know we're gonna have, we wanna buy all the equipment and stuff with that money at the airport.
It's probably not that much money, but I'm I'm talking about the principal, not the amount.
Yeah.
Well, just keep in mind now that, what's that lift's gonna go up, what's what's the lease on that lift there? I'm just, I'm aggravated.
I'm just asking.
Yeah, I mean, I, Mr. Chairman, I hear you, I mean, I I do, but our argument with the with the with the fair market values with FAA more so than it is, you know, about this, I've I've, you know, I I like to save money when we can, let me just say that.
I'm good with that, I'm just making sure we know what we're doing.
And there was also a time when the airport fund was not self-sufficient, so, and that was not that long ago.
Yeah. So my motion, actually, I'm asking for, uh, allow us to engage Douglas Clearing and Land Development LLC, waive the tipping fees, authorize Attorney Schuler to come up with, uh, whatever document he needs to to get this project done.
Please, the board?
Same move.
Motion to approve?
Something to put
All right. Motion to approve by Commissioner Amerson, second by Commissioner Lockley, please proceed, Commissioner.
Yeah, see, if if you don't waive them tipping fees, I mean, the contractor gonna go up. He gonna get it, he he gonna get that one way or the other. Yeah, yeah, the bidder, you're the one who bid, he's gonna need to come out of there.
Can I
Yeah, I understand that.
But but that, granted, Michael didn't really do it in any just, sorry.
No, it's fine.
But this is not just going in and taking a couple of trees out.
Oh, no, I didn't, I didn't take that.
They clearing it all.
Yeah.
And I mean, at that, when he, when he told me that price, I was, you know, trying not to grin and, you know, that's my first place. But I mean, they are gonna probably, they are, uh, using that timber. Uh, they're gonna resell it, and that's that's probably a good justification for keeping it, uh, the the bid down low. But a lot of that hinged on the fact that that the tipping fee could be waived, and the fact that he's, like he said, he he wants to try to, uh, help the county, actually pays taxes in the county too, he don't wanna sit there and and and, you know, overcharge us. But the bang for our buck is tremendous, I mean,
Oh, it is.
Uh, it it's, I quit counting at about twenty-something trees in there. So, I mean, it's this, it's a huge, uh, task that he's taking on. And then, like I said, I was trying not to grin.
These trees have never been cut around the airport, have they?
No, these are all virgin pines, I mean, they're huge.
Yeah, and I was, wanted to make sure we could use airport money for it, so wink, wink, every tree cuts, we'll have some to do with runway one, the one, so, yeah.
Sounds good. Any more discussion before we vote? All in favor? All opposed? That's unanimous.
More more, uh, airport action. Um, I I got two time extensions, or requests, uh, from the, from FDOT, FAA, FDOT. Um, the first is for contract for the stone warning improvement project, and the other is for the purchase of the backup generators. Part of the backup generators is supply and demand, they're having a hard time getting a generator. So we wanna make sure that both projects are, uh, set to expire the end of June. But we wanna make sure we have another year just in case. So I'm asking for time agreements, that they have no, FDOT, FAA have no problem with the time extensions, as long as the board agrees to it, and again, it's for those two projects.
So you want to do these in one motion?
One motion.
Okay.
So move, with question?
Motion to approve by Commissioner Ward. Second by Commissioner Amerson, any discussion?
I just got a quick question, these generators, they're gonna have that house in a, in a, under a building or in a facility where it's protected from the inclement weather, right?
Oh, yes.
Okay, because there's no sense in spending money on stuff if this is gonna get messed up
I agree.
two years down the road. Okay, thank you.
Any more discussion before we vote? All in favor? All opposed? That's unanimous.
Okay, Ta- oh, Tasha, I'm not sure if it is. Uh, Task Order Ten is from AFCON, um, it's for grant coordination, it's, uh, for FAA, FDOT, the development of the FAA-compliant bid documents, bid phase ser- bid phase services, get it together in construction administrative services. This is for AFCON to get your complete application together for phase two of the obstruction removal project at the airport. Um, AFCON is anticipating FAA will fund six hundred thousand dollars, and FDOT will give the sixty thousand dollars to cover the ten percent local match, so no money coming out of the airport. And AFCON will only invoice the county if these services are approved by the FAA, I mean, for these services, if FAA grant for this work is successful, the application is successful and funded. So I need approval for them to go ahead and start the ad application process.
Much to approve by Commissioner Amerson?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Sanders, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? All opposed? That's unanimous.
Item nine, uh, Commissioners, are we ready to to proceed with the airport, um, board? The procedures, the guidelines, and appoint members this morning, this morning, this afternoon, I apologize. The only things I would ask the board to put in writing is, one, that we make the airport manager the, basically, the Courtney of 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 the airport board. That Ted will be responsible for the advertising, the meetings, uh, doing the agenda, make sure they meet in a, in a ADA location, accessible location, and doing the minutes. That basically is like a board administrator.
Right.
The other thing I would ask for is to go a little bit further than what Commissioner Amerson said the other day. Make sure it's in writing somewhere that this board does not have any oversight over Ted or the, uh, centric, that they're all basically, what Commissioner Amerson says, he expects them all to report to him independently, so one could provide a check and balance for the other, basically, what he was saying, I hope.
Yes, but one thing, though, with the, when the, uh, um, manager reports to us, I'd like, just like, like with Weems, for instance. When when, uh, Mr. Walker's here, there's usually a representative from the board
Yeah, the chairman.
that's in the crowd. That way, if we need clarification on something that the board, you know, uh,
Yeah. I agree with that. No, I agree, that's that's the way it should be done. Ted, one other thing, I mean, you haven't appointed your your members yet. Most of the ones I see on the list are are airport, um, more airport people, not really economic development people. Mr. Kirshenbaum, you know, it could have been a few years ago, but he does have some promotional, well, not some, he has a lot of promotional experience under his belt. I say all this to say, would you mind changing the name and dropping the economic development part of it? And the reason I say that, I don't want Opportunity Florida, Florida Great Northwest, any of those other agencies to think that these guys are the county's Economic Development Board, you know, because that, there's a different direction I think we need to go in that, so if you got
The only thing about that is now, now it's gonna start looking more like, well, you know, we're not looking at the airport from an economical standpoint as far as that goes. I don't see where the name's gonna be that big of a cluster. And I've had this, uh, because I've got all the pro aviation guys wanna have two separate boards, and I'm like, look, we're not there yet.
Okay.
But we can, I mean, we can marry the two with this, and and that's not gonna, I don't see that stopping us from, uh, from getting any, uh, you know.
It's just the name.
Yeah, and you know, and if this grows one day, we might be here ten or fifteen, well, y'all will, I'm not, but, uh, ten or fifteen years from now.
Well, at two-thirty, we'll find out.
Based on two-thirty, you'll find out.
You never know, honey.
I might not want this job for three more years, but but, uh, but seriously, though, um, then if it grows, then you can always break down, you know, you, there's, this is, but I I'm all for, I'd make a motion to go ahead and let's let's get this done.
Okay.
So we, I wanna clarify I wanna clarify what your motion is. So we're going to create the board, do we, do we know, would we appoint people like, are three of them gonna be for a three-year term, two for a two-year term? I don't know that we have any bylaws or anything, and I'm not trying to slow it down, I'm just
No, that's that's a, that's a good question.
How are we doing?
I would, I would say a two-year term.
Okay, I'm good with that. I'm completely good with that. Uh, the other thing is, we have several really good applicants, and we've talked about a board of five. How are we gonna whittle down from those nine or ten people to the five?
Right now, I think all we have is eight.
Okay.
Because we just had a late addition.
Okay.
Yes, I got it, thank you, I did.
So, yes, so are we going to
But
put names in and and do, you know what I mean? How are we gonna go about doing that?
Well, why don't you, I mean, has has everybody looked at the applicants?
I have.
I have, except for the one you just mentioned, the new, the new applicant.
Um, I mean, I'm fine with with moving forward, because, I mean, if we've looked at them, we should know, you know, roughly. Now, with that being said, like I I'd stated earlier, I'd like to do five permanent and then two, uh,
Alternate?
Alternate, and then that way, we have quorum and whatnot. Um, so that would really leave us, you know, putting one applicant to the curb, so to speak, or nine. So, I mean, it
Who do you wanna pick your own? I got one I'm talking to out of my district. But he ain't putting no outbid in it, so. I was trying to wait to get an ounce from him, kind of like.
Are they in business, or are they, they got any kind of flight experience or anything like that? I mean, there was guidelines on the, uh, on the, the
They military, ex-military business.
On the advertisement, that's why we kinda advertise, we can get people that that won't, and and no offense, I'm not, but obviously, if he, if he's kinda on the fence, we won't do it or not, is he gonna show up at the meetings? That's why I wanted to advertise it, so to speak.
I'm waiting, that's why I'm waiting, he has to go out of town for take care of some business. But, uh, he acts on airports, I don't know. Well, I can look, I can wait and look into it, if you don't mind.
So in the motion, you all wanna go ahead and start the airport board, but we've not named members yet. I'm fine with, and I think that's what we need to do in the motion. I just wanted to clarify, I wasn't trying to make it worse, Commissioner. I was trying to clarify.
I'm just trying to get this thing started, it's like my phone quit ringing.
So, so, Mr. Chairman, for clarification, the motion that we're wanting today is just to get the approval for the Airport Operations Economic Development Board's procedures and guidelines, not appoint any members. Is that, is my understanding?
If if that's what you're doing, and just, I'd just like to add to your motion
That's what you want, though, right? That's what your recommendation is.
At least, yeah, to include, that's like Commissioner Amerson said, we wanna move forward. Just include the the request, the language I I just requested about, because I wanna put it in writing about the airport manager is the, is the administrator, and, you know, et cetera, et cetera.
And we don't have a motion on this yet?
We do, we do have a motion on the floor, do you want to amend your motion to reflect that language?
I will amend my motion that with stipulation that next meet, two weeks from now, we're gonna get this board established and get this going. If people wanna apply, they better get it in there and and let us look at it and let's let's get it going. Because, I mean, we're three months now.
So we're picking members at the next meeting, is what you're saying?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, I got mine right here on my device, I'm good to go. But I wanna pick five, I didn't know we were picking seven, but we
Are we, um
It's a public phone.
No, I'm just I'm just saying, we we, I mean, we got a lot of things happening, we got, uh, contracts, we've got, uh, you know, we just, we need to get this going and and get going with it.
Commissioner Amerson, do you want them to be alternate or at-large? There's a different, alternates only basically take part in the meeting when the quorum is, they need it for quorum. At-large takes part, they take part in the meeting all the time, which, whichever is your preference?
An alternate.
Let me know next week, okay, we're good. Five and two, five with two alternates, okay.
Did we have a second?
I think Commissioner Lockley, do you, you made the second correct, first time, okay. All right, do you amend your motion to reflect Commissioner Amerson's amendment?
It'd be fine.
Okay. Any more discussion before we vote? All in favor? All opposed? That's unanimous.
Commissioners, the the whole broadband RIF, RIF application, I I just passed that out to you in an email. That's information, I just wanted to let you know that the, uh, ARPC did submit it, as the board had authorized it before, the chairman did sign it. Any information, that's from Quentin, in case you have questions. The last thing is more information. Finally, your HHRP program is closed. Lori Switzer submitted the report up to Florida Housing, they accepted it yesterday, so that's it, we're done. That's, that was the program, you know where they replaced the mobile homes, uh, that is done, so, thank you. But anyway, just So, thank you, but anyway.
I have something before we proceed, sir, for you.
That's my, that's my end of my report, Commissioner.
I don't know what we can do about it, but I think we do need at least having a discussion, try to find if anything can be done. So our current CBG program, we just started out, and this is not reflecting negatively on anybody, we got to find a way to make it work. We probably had 12 or 13 submissions so far, and only three, I think, are going to be able to get help.
Three?
Yes.
The full list?
And here, let me tell you, they're a real good one. So a couple of them that are really in need, and most of them are, they're single, they're widows, they overqualify by like a thousand dollars for a year. So, I mean, I don't know that we can change the parameters of the program, but I think we at least need to have a discussion and make sure, you know, because I, here's the thing, and I can say from talking to the applicants, both of the ones that I talked to that didn't qualify economically by like a thousand dollars on year, they're, when they're asked, they're telling them everything that they think might apply. They're not wanting to lie about anything, okay? If they received any kind of money from a pension, from, you know, their husband that passed, they're telling all their business to make sure that they're not lying, you know, and then to.
Because of being honest.
They do, and then just to come within, you know, a thousand dollars, that's not even a hundred dollars a week. It's like 40, 50 dollars a week. And it's not a, we can help you to this amount, it should get help, you don't get help. I just think we need to have that discussion, you know, with our CBG people and see what we can do out of it, you know what I mean?
So you want to hear the next meeting is what you're kind of telling me to do?
Not if we don't have an answer, I don't. We need to find an answer. And then when we can answer, then come present it to the board. I don't want to tell them they need to come to a board meeting just to talk about the fact that we got a problem.
To say, wait, you just.
You know what I mean? That's just going to, anyway. Felt like we're sending them out just to talk bad about it or something, it's not, it has nothing to do with them, it's the program. I just need to know if there's any leeway.
And Mr. Chairman, I'll reiterate that, because I had an applicant that he's elderly, he's on a fixed income, he can't afford property insurance, or house insurance, not property, house insurance, because, you know, that's the goal of this program, is if you, they replace it, that you have to pay for, you have to get, and I understand that, I get that, that's probably a lot of reasons why a lot of them are in the position they are now, but you, some people can't afford that, they can't afford that, and I don't know. And I did, I will say this, I did meet with Angela Webster with CD, Community Action this past week, and I've got some ideas on how we can move forward in the future to help with our housing crisis, but it is going to take, I don't know how my fellow board members feel about it, but I'm going to meet with a couple other people before I present it back to you guys, about maybe changing some things of how we do things. But just, just keep that in mind, that I will be coming back with some ideas that we can maybe change from the board's perspective, but it may also require from a state level as well. But that is something, in order for us to be able to provide housing and helping people in our community, that, we're going to have to probably make some changes, so I just want to put that out there.
Three out of, how many?
I had four or five in my district, three or four in my district.
And again, it's not, it's not directed negatively toward the people that are missed from the program.
No, it's just the program.
The program is the program. I still say that there are several issues that kind of throw our income thing out of whack in Franklin County, and it, every time we try to do something to help people, it hits us this kind of way.
Well, that insurance is going up everywhere.
Yep, it is. Anyway, that's all I had, sir, I just think.
I'll reach out and have a conversation with them.
See if there's any leeway. Anything else for Mr. Marone? All right, Attorney Schuler?
All right, sir. Appraisal update, it's not on my report, but I wanted to give the board an appraisal update from Mr. Matt Carey. He sent me a text message during today's meeting, frankly, my request, that the airport appraisal for the land swap should be received by the end of next week. The other two appraisals for the potential purchase, the property from Mr. Gander, and the potential property purchase from Mr. and Mrs. Barber, both in East Point, I will have those appraisals emailed to me by the end of this week. So I am told. The first action item on my report has already been taken care of, which was the public hearing that was tabled for the travel trailer ordinance. The second action item is a request that I have received from Attorney Christie Banks on behalf of Mr. Jimmy Moskonis, requesting a public hearing for the board to consider a request that the board consider abandoning 0.15 tenths of an acre of land at the end of Bay City Road in Aflacola, Florida. I have attached to my report a copy of that request, which includes what's like at least part of a survey, I'm not sure who prepared the survey, but it gives more of the details on the request for the abandonment, it shows the end of the paved road of Bay City Road, and it shows where a portion of an existing building that was reconstructed, I suppose, I'm not sure how long, many years ago, probably 10 or 12 years ago, that was reconstructed within the footprint of the Bay City Road. The procedure that the board would go through is if you were to approve this, you would adopt by resolution. They notice that at a certain date, time, and place, that the board will conduct a public hearing to consider the request for the abandonment of this road, there's some publication notices, but you do have to adopt this by resolution, which I would prepare. And if the board is inclined to grant the request for the public hearing, so you can consider this petition to consider abandoning part of the end of Bay City Road, it would be at your next board meeting, which is April, when is this?
Fourth.
No, second, we don't do public hearings the first meeting anymore. Yes, so, let me look at that.
Eighteenth?
Where is it? There it is. Well, I guess I would make it the 18th, but let me just double check. Yes, April 18th at 10:00 a.m.
So you're asking to set a public hearing?
Just set a public hearing.
So moved.
Much to approve by Commissioner Lockwood, second by Commissioner Sanders. Any more discussion, commissioners?
No, just Ms. Banks has been standing, sitting here patiently waiting, do you have any?
Christie Banks, I represent the property owner Jimmy Moskonis, and I just, if you had any questions, I'd be happy to hear them.
I know about that.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Sounds like we're having a public hearing.
Sorry, Mr. Chairman, she's been sitting there.
I will prepare a resolution.
Thank you very much.
The next item was, I will say kindly to myself, inartfully worded on my report board, but the chairman and I have been discussing the recent closure of the beach access pathway, one of those eight-foot pathways on St. George Island. In that discussion, we thought that perhaps it would be a matter for the board to take down the fence, let us continue to work with not just this property owner, so that they don't take out any more vegetation, but also work on a plan to inform the public, because it seems like, you know, one of the issues was a position that the public was insufficiently informed, that only the county is supposed to be the one opening up these public beach access ways. And so that's what I'm asking the board to do today, permission to take down that fence, let's work with the public in general, this property owner, so they understand going forward that you're not supposed to be opening up, and it's not just the hundreds of eight-foot walkways between these golf front lots, I mean, we have unopened beach or street ends there, I mean, people think they have the right to go and open up the street end, I mean, I don't think so, but I do think that going through an educational program, and I will speak a little bit for the chairman, then he can weigh in, but I believe the chairman is in favor of moving forward with this public educational process, and perhaps as a gesture of goodwill, opening up the, removing the fence, and you know, that may entail some more vegetation going in there, it may entail using the beach path that's already open 50 feet to the east, I mean, who knows where it will end up, but that is a request for the board, and again, I do apologize for how it was so inartfully worded on my report for this meeting.
So basically, we've had an issue back and forth at this one particular access point, and, you know, however we got there, that's fine, but it had been cleared at some point in the past, through this board, Attorney Schuler had sent a letter, asked them to cease and desist, they've still cleared it even more. So the only reason we put up the thing to block it to begin with is because they were still clearing county property. Now, it's public property, because it belongs to the county, that doesn't mean you can do what you want to. And there were starting to be ecological concerns, because there, now there's no sea oats or none of that stuff in an eight-foot stretch right there on the beach. Not to mention, you know, there's dunes and other stuff there, so it was closed, not in an effort to say the county's now, doesn't care about the public access to the water on the island, that's not what it was about. These were about two property owners on opposite sides of the fence, literally about the issue, so that's why we had temporarily closed it. I think the squeeze isn't worth the juice, if the county looks like it is trying to block off public access, we are, we might not lose it in court, but we're losing that battle in the court of our public perception. So I think, I'm hoping, and I work with Attorney Schuler, that we can get the neighboring property owner that has been doing the clearing to agree that they will cease and desist, and any future clearing will only be done by county employees. So that's what I had, ask him to bring to the board to consider, because it was closed by an act of the board, so it needs to be by a motion of the board to open it back
So that needs to be a motion?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
Our motion.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Ward, second by Commissioner Sanders. Any discussion?
So we opening something we closed?
Yep. But we closed it, because I guess we were trying to find a way to get their attention.
Yeah, but the bigger thing too with that is, and the people everywhere on the island need to understand this, I mean, I got hit with this, but that's the people's land, it's the people, but just because that's the people's land, doesn't give them right to go in there and destroy sand dunes and whatever vegetation's there. At the end of the day, yeah, they're right, that is the people's land. Well, I'm part of the people, and I might not want to see that vegetation trampled, and, you know, we got erosion issues when storms come in, you know, it, like Attorney Schuler said, we got access 50 feet down the road, I mean, I hate to inconvenience them, but there's reasons why, we can't, we can't have accesses on every county, on all the people's land, let's put it that way. So going forward, they need to be aware of that, and, you know, it's just, it's ridiculous is what it is, but, but I'm, I'll be willing to bend a little, you know, but not going forward.
And the other thing too, Commissioner Amerson, it's, there's over 200 of these accesses from 12th to 12th on the island. I don't think this board or the county staff have the capacity to open every eight-foot access, that's not, that's not the intention.
What I'm getting at is, if we start allowing, you know, everybody, because it's the people's land, to go in there and cut these accesses down, look at the vegetation, look at, like I said, we already have erosion issues when we have storms, we're just adding to the problem. Not just that, that is the people's land, so that means we have to maintain the people's lands, and if they create a bigger mess in the future, then they're sponge on the people's money. These same people that complain about us not being, us being complacent with their tax dollars, and we, you know, misuse it, we spend it wrongly, they're the same ones that run around and create problems just like this, for us to have to spend our public dollars and our public help to go and fix. And I said it, I don't, you know, I don't make them mad, I really don't care, but that's exactly the problem, and I'm just a frustrated young commissioner.
It's been a long day, sir, you're getting angry, I know what's going on.
I will say, Mr. Chairman, I will say, you know, it's all about education too, and I will say that, and I'm not saying anything against anybody, but, you know, some people may get told and promised certain things and said, hey, well, you know, with this piece of property that you purchased for however many millions of dollars, you have this property, but you also have this property that you could access, which they may not be told or aware that it's county property, so they think it's their property, so therefore they proceed with doing what they feel is right, and making their own private access, especially if they're advertising it as a VRBO or rental or whatever. So, you know, we got to give public benefit of the doubt too, for knowledge, but to knowingly do it, you know, I don't know. Anyway, that's my two cents, five cents, 10 cents.
Anyone else before we vote? All in favor? All opposed? That's unanimous. Anyone have anything else for Attorney Schuler?
I do. Been waiting on me. I'm like these people out here. I asked you a question last week, Mr. Schuler, about the MSBU's, and you come back with the essential services thing, you know, on there. This is about the fire department down at Algo de Point, I was questioned about, could they use the MSBU's for the building, as a new building? So Mr. Schuler looked it up for me, said essential services, but he really didn't know what that meant without an AG opinion, right? Am I right? Or do you know?
May I?
Yeah.
The question was initially whether or not the MSBU ordinance authorized the use of MSBU funds, because that's where we would ordinarily look, is our own local ordinances. The MSBU ordinance from 2013, which is the most recent version of the MSBU ordinance, is silent one way or the other, it just simply creates the fire districts, it creates a trust fund, it authorizes the use of the funds essentially for fire and rescue services in emergency, or EMTs. The AG opinions deal with the use of, frankly, it's just one AG opinion that I found that seemed to be on point, and it was interpreting one of the Florida statutes which authorizes county government, or the powers of county government, which is in chapter 125. My memory is, the statutory section is 125.1 sub-paragraph A, sub-paragraph, I think it's R or Y or something like that, which deals with MSBU ordinances and the use of those funds, and it makes reference to, that authorized use of the MSBU funds as essential facilities. Now, ultimately, the, according to the AG opinion, and frankly, I do agree with it, the ultimate determining governing body of what is an essential facility within the meaning of the MSBU ordinance addressed with this county commission, because in this case, you're talking about a fire and rescue MSBU, and the question at hand is whether or not a fire station would be, would or would not be considered an essential facility related to that MSBU authorization. I don't think y'all are being asked to make that decision here today, but that is the question, and that was my response to Commissioner Sanders.
And the reason why is because they're saying it's a municipal service benefit, so it needs to be connected with services provided with that money. So, I mean, I'm just, don't shoot the messenger, I'm just bringing it. And the other thing, can you, can you, because Landarc is coming up online pretty soon, I'm pretty sure, and if you don't mind, Michael, we need to have a report from them at the next meeting, okay? But could you start looking at possible contracts that other counties may have with their fire departments and see if we need to fall in line with that? Because y'all have been worried about the Landarc, and I was, so if you can do that, I sure would appreciate it, and let's get moving on it, so we don't want to be caught with, you know, not have anything when it comes time.
Yes, ma'am. I've been listening to Mr. Marone's efforts in that regard, he's taken over the role six or seven months ago of working directly with the Fire Fighters Association, that's helping stand Landarc, St. James VFD back on its feet. They seem like a good source to request a contract form that's used between the VFDs and counties, so I've listed Mr. Marone to help me get that content.
Okay.
And then we'll use that as a baseline, and then we'll get a couple different versions, use that as a baseline, and then present something back to this board.
Okay, well, that's my question.
Anyone else have anything for Attorney Schuler? I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Earlier, when we were discussing the shared use non-motorized paths, we have one such path on St. George Island, and I'm not sure if the state has weighed in on it, or if there's anything in the statute, but where would an e-bike fall in on that? It's technically a bicycle, but it's got a motor.
I think, with the ward, and I've had that conversation relative, not to the bike path on St. George Island, I'll report back to you, Mr. Chairman, but my personal opinion in reading our ordinances, is I think our ordinance captures the definition of an e-bike, but seems that state law may not dis- but seems that state law may not disagree, or may disagree with our local ordinance.
Well, we can always be stricter, we can't be more lenient, though.
Well, we also can't, if, if they give a authorization for, for public use on public facilities, we don't have the ability to counter that either. But, um, I, I might be willing to test that theory in court.
No, you did not just say that.
I've done it before.
What a day, everybody's getting angry.
All right.
No, no, that's, that's fun time for me, are you kidding?
All right. Uh, any commissioner comments today?
Yeah. I wonder why these meetings getting to be so long?
'Cause we got a lot of stuff on 'em, Commissioner.
I'd just like to congratulate that you, that you made it. Gold possum sandwich.
Anything else?
I'm missing all my possum sandwiches.
We're finna go to the running.
I thought I had four notes from you to break Commissioner Amerson in writing. Isn't that what you, what guys are talking about?